No. Trevor's fixing it. There we go. Thanks, Trevor. All right. So welcome everyone to our meeting, a special meeting, staff, council and staff retreat for today. And I think it is Monday, the eighteenth of March two thousand twenty-four. So I hope everybody had a good weekend. And for the record, excuse me, all members of council are here and all indicated members of staff are here. So we are good to go. Our agenda consists of an active agenda. We're going to start out, start out with item one, city vision. We've got our vision statement on our uh, agenda packet. City of Sunnyside is a vibrant, safe and clean city that offers great business, employment, recreational and lifestyle opportunities to its diverse population. So as we take a look at that, and I don't know, Rob, if you've got a bunch of stuff prepared or?
I don't. I just wanted to make sure the vision statement was still relevant with councils. I think this is the direction that we're taking the city. And as a new council comes in, they may want to make some adjustments. So I think this is probably uh, the, the first couple items are going to guide the rest of the meeting. So.
Okay, so this vision statement was adopted. Uh, let's see, it's not even listed on here what year it was adopted. Was it in fifteen? I know I was in council when it was adopted, but it's a couple of years old now. It's nine years old. And so as we looked at over, is that vision statement still consistent with the vision that we have as Sunnyside City Council?
I, I think it needs a little bit more oomph. Um, it, I, I think we definitely could use some different words to really cover most of our bases and aspirations, you know? And really what currently exists. I mean, just a clean city. I mean, what does clean city mean? Um, you know? Does it mean you go to the streets and don't see garbage? Or does it mean that? Um, I mean, what is, what did it mean to people when you, when they created that specific language?
What we had in mind at the time, if I recall, was um, yes, it did involve garbage, but it also involved um, many things that would be, would fall under code enforcement. So we have um, municipal code that regulates um, vehicles parked on yards, you know, they're not supposed to be, if it's non-functioning vehicle, it's supposed to be behind a fence and those kinds of things. So that was all involved in that too. So um, I don't, Trevor, if you've got any more comments on that?
I don't at this.
Okay. Um. You, you look like you wanted to say something, so.
I could get more into that if there's questions about it, but um, I don't. As we get more into this, I'm happy to answer questions as we go into code enforcement apps.
Okay. And um, obviously vibrant safe, we were coming off of a period of time with a lot of gang activity, a lot of struggle. Um, citizens were bothered and rightfully so by all of the gang activity, the violence. Um, there had been several years prior to that, some significant um, incidents that had happened, one of them involving a, a shootout right there on Sixth Street. And so we wanted to emphasize that we didn't want that kind of a city. We didn't want that kind of headline about Sunnyside. So yeah, a vibrant, safe, clean. Um, it's a city, it's a community that people feel comfortable in, that we're outside, that we're doing stuff together as a community and that we face, feel safe out there. So that's, that's what we had talked about. Obviously, business, employment, recreational and lifestyle opportunities to try to really you know, make those opportunities out there, make it visible so that businesses would want to either relocate into Sunnyside or as community members would want to start a business in Sunnyside and get involved in recreational and other ac- activities. And you know, for its diverse population, we wanted to recognize the diversity of our community and make it very apparent that as council, we were there for everyone and that we wanted to make that clear, not only to ourselves, but to the entire community. So that's kind of where we were coming from, Mr. Rasta.
I think uh,
Go ahead, Ms. Hart.
Uh, vibrant also meant that we were had a good, strong uh, business base, economic base, um, that knew businesses, the businesses that were here were strong and were um, and they felt like that um, that, that, there was a good place to have your business, a good place to raise your family. Um, it's hard when you're writing a mission statement to put every single N, so each word as Ms. Vasco has indicated, needs to be as precise as possible with a clear, clear meaning. Um, so those, at that time, I wasn't actually working on the, I happened to be in the room when you guys were working on this. So I sort of remember that vibrant had to do with our, our our making sure that we had a good, sound, economic uh, ba- uh, base.
Other comments? Go ahead.
So where it says that offers great business, what exactly did you guys mean by that?
What we're talking?
Well, the, it was great business opportunities. I think, you know, it was um, wasn't just great business, but opportunities. So um, setting up a business, running a business, um, location for business, we have, we had different areas, the port, we were working with the port pretty heavily already then. Um, as far as business development and their business incubator model that was, that um, had been going for a couple of years, but we were starting to see some good results from that. So now I think that's what we were talking about is opportunities.
Can we change that to great business ventures or? Um, and so, I don't know, I feel like it just needs a little bit more. Um, I know we're not going to write a page long for our mission statement, but I mean, I think it's all, I mean, especially if this is nine years old, I mean, nine years old in any city lifetime is a, is, is a long time. Um, I don't know if we want to do that here, or if we want to take the time to maybe submit some.
Um, I don't know if we want to take necessarily the time for it, but at the same time, I think staff would like to know what our vision is. And so if we're not in agreement with this and then indicate the areas where we're not feeling comfortable with it. Um, you know, I guess I have a little bit of a problem with saying great business ventures because that's going to
Sounds like they're not going to.
A business venture is something that the businessman gets involved in. He steps, he or she set forward and, and launches their business venture and um, these are opportunities for them to launch that business to, to hopefully prosper. And we can't guarantee that they prosper either. That's not something the city can guarantee, but we can certainly try to provide the opportunities. I think that's something that's within the city's purview.
Could we go back to the vision statement after we, we talk about, have more discussion about some of the other visions and priorities we have?
I, yeah, we can go back and revisit. And, and the thing with the vision statement as well is it can be revisited at any time. I know this is not something that is written in stone forever and ever. If we say, you know what, this is not suiting our needs right now. We need to change this. We can do that in two weeks if we want to. We can do that in two years. We can do that, you know, day after tomorrow, we say, hey, I, I, I have some things I want to bring up about it. So this is something that's very fluid.
That's what I was getting at, Julie. It's tend to revisit their mission statements pretty often. So that's something that we're open to.
Yeah, absolutely.
I move to do that.
Okay. Any other comments? Mr. Beeler, you've been sitting there thoughtfully look, looking our direction, but.
Oh, you're covering everything. That's what we talked about back then. Uh, we were talked about weed control. We talked about the looks of the city. We talked about, you don't want it, like you said, a paragraph long, but you just don't want a three sentence statement. So there's a lot you can do to change this or leave it. Um, we can go anywhere with it. And like you said, we can change it at any time.
For sure. Okay.
Can I just, for the purposes of today's discussion though, can we um, perhaps agree that we want to be a, a city that offers business, employment, recreation and lifestyle opportunities for our diverse population? Just for the discussion today, can we agree that those are the things we want to see happen in our community for discussion? I'm just throwing that out there. Do we not want to have a city that's clean and safe and vibrant and offers great opportunities?
We can get to that after we discuss.
Well, I'm, I'm, I just want to have an agreement to start.
I, I think, Ms. Hart, at this point, we're going to operate from that perspective. And as our discussion goes on and see where we can either add something or, or rephrase something. I don't think that anybody is going to say that we don't want to offer opportunities to our population. I don't think anybody's going to say we don't want to recognize that we have a diverse population. And I don't think that anybody's going to say that we don't want a safe city. So I think we're going to operate under this for the time being. And as things progress and somebody says, hey, we need to make a, make a change here. Can we be a little more specific here, a little less specific there? Um, we can be open to that. But we're going to start at this point. And keep in mind that our interpretation of our mission statement or vision statement is going to impact our department heads here in the way that they operate their department and the goals that they set before us, or the opportunities they set before us. And our purpose here today is to help um, staff work with us better. Give them a, give them an idea where we're going, what our dreams are for, for the city of Sunnyside. Excuse me. So we're trying to be helpful to the people who are in front of us here today. And as helpful as we can to make their lives easier is, is what I'm envisioning here for for today. So if there's no more comments on our vision statement and please take notes as we go. If you need to do that in order to remember where you want to make changes, that's absolutely fine. We're going to go into our council code of conduct, which is a, just scroll down a little bit further from that. Um, I'm assuming everybody's had an opportunity to read through this over the course of the weekend. And on a beautiful day, I'm sure you took your laptops outside and just sat out and enjoyed the beautiful weather and studied our code of conduct. Is there anything that jumped out at anybody? On, on any of these, do we want to go through this line by line or, or section by section? Or do we want to talk about certain areas that are of concern to individual members? I'm open to either way.
I think we can start if you guys have concerns, you know?
Right, okay. So I'm going to go through each section then. And I'm not going to go word by word, but just read the, uh, the dark print there and then we'll answer any questions or comments that people might have. Okay? And this is talking about council member conduct with one another. The first one, uh, this council is composed of individuals with a wide variety of backgrounds, personalities, values, opinions and goals. Despite this diversity, each council member has chosen to serve in public office in order to preserve and protect the present and the future of the city of Sunnyside. This common goal should be acknowledged, even as council members may agree to disagree on contentious issues. Is there any confusion on that statement?
That is perfectly written.
I think it was very well done myself and I was not a part of that, so I'm not patting myself on the back. Okay, we need to recognize that we are all, we are seven unique individuals from different areas of life, at different stages of life, different experiences and different points of view. And we are not always going to agree, and that's okay. But we need to make sure that when we do disagree, that we do so respectfully. So, because our goal is to make Sunnyside the best possible place we can at this time. And another council in the future may come back and say, well, we want to change this, just the way we are looking at our vision statement, thinking maybe it needs some adjustments. Okay, we thought we'd done a pretty good job back in two thousand and fifteen. But a lot has happened since then. So let's take a look at in public meetings. Item one, practice civility and decorum in discussions and debate.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
You said back in two thousand and fifteen, but this is, uh, this is approved August two thousand and eleven. Is there a different version that?
No, I just had it in my head. It was two thousand and fifteen because that's when our vision statement came from. Sorry about that. No, this was approved in two thousand and eleven. This is prior to my time on council as well. Thank you for pointing that out, sir. Okay, so no questions on item number one there, paragraph number one.
I think we want to remember just, if I may, that this does not allow, however, council members to make belligerent, personal, incertain, slanderous, threatening, abusive or disparaging remarks. Shouting, physical actions should be construed um, or physical could be, that could be con- construed as threatening will be tolerated. I think, I don't think that we're going to get out our pepper spray or our bear spray and, and go after one another here, but it's been known to happen in other city councils.
It's been known to happen in this council. Um, in this, in these chambers, not pepper spray, but there's been shouting and physical actions and, and all sorts of things. We do have to make a change here. Um, chief just noticed that um, that last line there says, will be considered, you know, that could be considered as threatening, will be tolerated. We need to add the word not.
Not. Good thing, good thing we read that out loud.
So we
Say quick, we'll take care of that, right?
We, yes, we will. We all make a commitment here to be very respectful towards each other. And that's
Yes.
Okay? And these types of documents exist because there has been a problem. There's been a reason for it to exist. So in the past, council members have shouted at each other. They have made disparaging comments to and about each other. And that has been deemed as inappropriate and we as council don't want to engage in that either. You're perfectly allowed to disagree with a fellow council member. That happens all the time. But we need to be respectful about our disagreement. And nobody's expecting us all to be friends necessarily either, although it's great when we can be. Okay? All right. More comments on that one. Let's look at number two, the honor the role of the mayor in maintaining order. Does the responsibility of the mayor in this one, um, kind of they, as the mayor, it's, it's something that I need to pay attention to. It's responsibility of the mayor to keep the comments of the council members on track during all meetings. I know there's been some question about that in previous meetings this year. Um, council member should honor the efforts by the presiding officer, that's who, whether it's the mayor or the deputy mayor, to focus discussion on current agenda items. If there is a disagreement about the agenda of the presiding officer's actions, those objections should be voiced politely and within reason, following procedures outlined in parliamentary procedures. Okay, so I am quite often during a meeting making a judgment call. And I'm sure that's the case for anybody else who's ever served as mayor as well. Um, if I feel like the discussion is going off track, then it is on me and I have council members who are happy to remind me that it is on me to bring that back into focus. And so it's not an attempt on anybody to belittle anybody or put anybody down. Um, if you feel that is the case, however, I do invite you to talk to me after the meeting or outside of the meeting and um, if I am wrong, I will certainly apologize. Any questions on that one?
Also, I have a question regarding, I think it's, might not be pertinent to this particular paragraph, but it is one that I've, that I've seen happen. When we have people come up to the podium to speak, it's generally on the mayor to say, thank you for your comments.
This is correct.
And the rest of the council doesn't need to really be saying anything because you're speaking for us.
That's been my experience in this council. I don't have experience in other councils. You may be right. Um, but typically, yeah, when, when members of the community come and speak, then I will tell them thank you or that sort of thing. We don't typically as council make comments um, at that point. So
What was I thinking?
I'm not sure. It's not necessarily part of this paragraph.
But I just wanted to wonder if it ought not be somehow understood. Maybe put in there to act, this seems like it just, it's confusing when more than one voice is going at any one time. So perhaps it would just be as you're the mayor, you're the voice.
Right.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay. Other council members commenting on this?
Um, I'm gonna add to that, since Julie, I mentioned you are the mayor, you are the voice. Um, and I sent out uh, an email to this and I copied the council members, I copied the attorney and I, going back to number one about decorum. Um, there were some instances where um, I felt like yo, um, there was interruptions during the time that I was giving a comment and was stopped in my tracks and um, I think it's been happening and public has actually been reaching out about it, about Ms. Hart reaching over to you and stopping you in your tracks or telling you and signifying that you should do something to interrupt. And that was already said in my email. Um, but it's something that we should consider, especially if we are reiterating that you are the voice and you are the person who brings to center, who brings a discussion to center, um, who uh, is able to speak to the public. I think then we will have to figure out how that's gonna how, and, and I think we've been doing a better job at it, but I think we could still improve in, in that sense.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Raus. So I do remember your email on that. Um, and I will say that uh, with prior council, there were four of us on council who had served as mayor and um, I received input from all of them at one time or another throughout my, my first term as mayor. Ms. Hart is a former mayor as well and has served in these meetings. And every once in a while, she will call my attention to something that I've overlooked or that I should be made aware of. And so um, I am one who is attempting to learn from others. And so if somebody calls my attention to something, I know uh, other counselors have also called my attention to things. Um, I can think of several specific instances that I'm not going to bring up right now, but who have from anywhere on the das called my attention will say, Mr. Mayor, this is, you know, we have a thing here, this is an issue here. And I appreciate that. Um, sometimes I feel a little embarrassed that I overlooked it, but nevertheless, I appreciate that kind of um, drawing my attention to something where I am not quite doing exactly the right thing. So I understand what you're saying. And at the same time, I'm trying to value the input from others to make sure that I'm doing a better job. And so I'm trying to balance that. Um,
Yeah, and so thus define the boundaries then, because I think it's something of, there's, it's one thing to call your attention and, and I get it. I mean, we all learn from one another. Um, his heart has been a former mayor. Um, but then it's another thing to direct you to do something um, on the spot. And then it goes back to the lack or practice civility and decorum. Um, are we really pa- practicing to decorum and fol- and following parliamentary procedures in those instances? So I mean, we have to consider boundaries. Um, I, I understand that some of us might jump in and say, well, no, no, I think we're right or no. But I think it's a different thing when someone is telling you how to direct.
I
And that's been my experience.
I understand what you're saying. And I think as we go through this conversation and, and, and look at this document, um, there's something that probably we can learn from each and every one of these uh, paragraphs. One of the things I do want to uh, help us keep in mind that we are all amateurs at this, especially me. And so we're kind of learning in process. I know there are professional parliamentarians, the people who are doing the training for us. They, they live that. And I know I personally do not. Um, I am doing the best I can to chair these meetings and try to keep things orderly, but um, I will miss things. Because this is, you know, I, I chair meetings, what, a couple of times a week or a couple of times a month? And so this isn't my life. I have the business where I spend a lot of my time. And so reminders, that kind of stuff, I, I appreciate that. If I'm doing something wrong, if somebody says, hey, Mr. Mayor, this person's out of order. That's a legitimate statement. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you can't allow somebody to say what they said. I appreciate that. We've had members in the audience threaten the council member before, and we had a council member speak up before I could even get my mouth open and right away protested that. And so yeah, I try to, I try to balance that. And Karen, you had a question?
Just out of curiosity, how long have you been mayor?
So I was elected mayor two years ago, so or twenty-four, so twenty-two. Yes, my second term as mayor. So I, I was sworn in again for my third term in January twenty-two. And at that meeting that I was elected mayor. Okay, moving on.
Actually, I, I have one more point that I think we could add and consider.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know if this goes into number one. Um, or if there's maybe another area where we talk about this, but um, how, how about a technology in front of us during during council meetings? I know that we all have our laptops. It was the first time I bring out this iPad, actually, probably one of the few times. Um, but of course, this is for our work business. Um, but I, I do realize that some of us do have our phones out. Um, what's the rule around that? And I know sometimes I see people texting during um, during council meetings, so. Um,
Never happen, right?
So yeah, technology has taken kind of a huge role in our lives. And so I have received texts from members of the public who are listening to the meeting or watching the meeting on Zoom. And I've received texts from somebody who's wanted to make a comment. I don't know if you recall, somebody was on the Zoom, excuse me, Zoom meeting and wanted to make a comment. And I received a text from that individual saying, hey, I want to make a, want to make a comment. And I saw, they had made the chat on the Zoom, but I hadn't noticed that. But when I did see it, it was my phone lit up. So yes, we occasionally get texts. I don't respond to them. I don't know what other members do. I think um, generally speaking, it is considered disrespectful to the rest of the group to be responding and, and texting back and forth. And I strongly discourage that. I know at the moment, Ms. Hart's got her phone in front of her. She's also got the agenda on the screen in front of her. Okay, so we sometimes, myself included, will use our phones for the agenda or for looking up things. I've been known to look up something from, you know, A W C, M R S C during a meeting to uh, to back up some things. So that yeah, I, I would discourage you from texting back and forth. I don't think that's appropriate behavior. As a council member, it's not any more appropriate than if I were to get a call and answer the phone call this morning during their meeting. That would be inappropriate as well. So I don't know, council members, any other comments or questions on that? Mr. Beeler?
I run a business and my phone's always up here because I could get a call and have to leave. I also get every once in a while a text from the wife, pick up hamburgers on your way home, I'm hungry. But I don't answer, respond to them. I've also taken my phone and put the YouTube channel here of us and watched it. And one time we forgot to, when we went to executive session, the YouTube was still live and I had to pour in a boil order and had And I had to pour in of oil order and have it shut off. So I use mine, but. I don't text or, like you said, call people in the middle of a meeting.
So, any other comments, Karen?
So just like sometimes write our notes, we write notes. And when we're writing notes, when we're here, it can be open to public requests.
Correct.
So wouldn't it be the same if we're using our personal phones? Isn't that the whole purpose of?
Our personal phones can be, um, yeah.
They're being used up here.
If you're being, if you're using your phone, um, they can be requested those records as well.
For any business.
Yeah.
You're doing for the city.
So that's exactly why we, well, personally, I think it's pretty, let's be wise with how we use our phone, especially up here, because anyone can request it.
Right, and you know, I don't do anything in secret. Somebody wants to see my text messages from somebody, then there they are. You know, there are, there are members of the public who I remind regularly, I keep all text messages I get from you. I have a file for those text messages. Um, certain members of the public need to know that. And. Somebody wants to see those messages, they're welcome to it. But I only have one phone. I know some of you have a phone for city council and some of you have, and and separate phone for private. And that's great. I have one phone because I'm not, I I can barely keep track of this one sometimes. If I have two of them, I'm guaranteed to lose one. And so we'll do it on there. Somebody wants to took at, look at the records on my phone, you're welcome to it. You're gonna be bored out of your mind, but you're welcome to it. And, yeah, we do have to be careful how we use that. We also have to recognize. And we've had council members in the past who have texted some personal things or some some things that don't belong on a private phone. And we've had to have meetings with our legal department telling us, this was several years ago, telling us, you can't do that. Be really careful how you handle your personal, your phones, your texts and that kind of stuff. You may think you've deleted your text. But you haven't. It can be accessed, so don't uh, don't be incultuous.
I make a comment on.
Yes, you may.
I want to ask Jackie a question too, because she might know. I, when I was at um. Uh, municipal clerk school, I remember them talking about public records and especially. Electronic devices. And so if, even if somebody thinks, even if somebody, a citizen thinks that they see you use your personal phone. They can request it through public records. And what you may have to do is turn it over to a like a, and a le- a third party that's gonna review it. For any business. And then if they find something, then that opens the phone up to the, to the completion of a public record. Do you remember any discussion on that?
Yeah, we we always review the records. Um, just like that, we just received a records request and you have an email out. You respond and let us know if you have records. We can also review and see if those would fall, be responsive to that request.
So like right now, the mayor just mentioned creating files, separate files, even if it's requested by someone, they could review everything on the phone.
Right, because because somebody could say that there is a violation of an open public meeting act. Or they can say that the city has failed to release public records. And so. If we get a lawsuit, what we, what they can do is we could have a, an attorney force you to give over your personal cellphone. And they would have an independent reviewer go through every single thing on your cellphone to determine whether or not. There was something on or on it. And that doesn't mean that we would have access to it. Or that the public would necessarily get it afterwards. But it's just something to keep in mind, just be careful, you know.
And I keep a file on particular individuals who have sent me some pretty direct and ugly texts. And I keep a file on that for my own protection later on. If um, if that has to go anywhere, then I've got that available. That's, that's, that's for my own self. Okay, there, there are people who have said some stuff to me via text or via email. That's just absolutely mind boggling. So. Um, but yeah, be aware uh, that your phone is, can be deemed as a public record and that it can be seized and gone through. So.
I just have the code of conduct right here. That's all I'm doing, guys.
All right, let's uh, let's carry on then. Number three, avoid personal comments.
Yeah.
We did, yes. Avoid personal comments that could offend other council members. All right, this one is also a, a real temptation to let go. And um, so I don't know if there's any comments on this one.
I I just want to say, you know, sometimes we've, and I I'm guilty of this myself sometimes. And I try really hard not to do that because you get a kid, you get excited up here sometimes and a little passionate about whatever it is you're talking about. Um, but I do think that this is one we really want to be as particularly careful. Because regardless of of what we think of each other. Um, the public needs to think that we are in unison, or at least we're putting on a, a face for the public. I don't know if that's exactly how I want to say that, but the thing is, is that. Personal, personal remarks to each other that are maybe uncalled for. We don't need, the public doesn't need to see that. Does that make sense? We, we need to try to always remember that we're trying, we're, we are leaders. And if we're not projecting um. That kind of an image to the public, then that's how you get, that's how you get voted out of office. Of, you know, but it's, you know, you can address on a question a personal privilege and that should be limited to whatever. But I don't think that it's integrity or character motives should be a sale or question or impugned. And I think that uh, it's, words are, words are very powerful as, as we've learned here. And and sometimes uh. I I'm as guilty as the next person of sometimes wanting to say. Something that's, that's, that's uh, out of order. So I'm working on that too. We're all learning and working because you never can learn too much.
Other comments or questions on this one?
Also need to watch what you say on Facebook too. That goes clear out there.
Does. And that kind of goes back to the technology thing that we just talked about, right? Once you put it on Facebook, once you put it on the internet, it's there. Even if you delete it, somebody will screenshot it. It's out there.
And as we've come to learn, people like to hang on to those and repeat them whenever they get a chance. So.
In or out of context.
In or out of context, and that's.
But I think as council members, I think this one, this comes more to how we talk about each other um, in public meetings at this particular point of this document. Um, the temptation to call somebody out. Um, can sometimes be overwhelming and we need to be very careful. Um, calling somebody out by name, um. Some strong words can be used when maybe something a little less direct might be appropriate. And again, um, this is something that we all struggle with, um, especially when some of the discussion gets heated and we're, you know, we're. Disagreeing strongly back and forth on a particular item. Um. The, the temptation is pretty strong, but we need to be really careful how we talk to each other or about each other in public meetings. Um, this is recorded and people can go back and listen. And that. Sets in people's mind a tone that maybe, maybe it would, it backfires on you, maybe it backfires or it goes against the person that that you've called out. But we need to be real careful about that. We're, we're up here trying to do our best. And we all believe that we're right and the other one's wrong. And sometimes we're gonna win the debate and sometimes we won't. But um, to uh, to to look. Angry about it, to 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 look like you're at a war with each other, doesn't, it's not a good look. And we want to avoid that. And mostly we do really well. Any further comments or questions on this item?
No, I think Ms. Hart um, mentioned a, a, I I hear your point, you know, Ms. Ripley. Um, added hers, you know, I think, um, I, and I know that one's just alluding to how we talk about each other. Um, but I know that, you know, there has been instances where we've, you know, there's been comments that have been made out to, to the public. Or have been in response to a public comment, or even just to the work that some of our department heads have been doing. Um, and that didn't come off too respectfully. Uh, so you know, that's just another point to consider of how we are addressing the public, um, or anything that has to do with public business.
And and we're all human beings and we're all guilty of it a little bit. And sometimes we're guilty of it a lot, each of us, and sometimes less so, but we're, we all. Struggle with that one. All right, then the next item, number four, demonstrate effective problem solving approaches. As a reminder that we are on the public stage. How can we work together? That means negotiation. That means sometimes we have to give up something. In order to get the greater good. Sometimes we have to compromise. Questions there? Okay, hearing none. Code of ethics, item five, council members shall conduct themselves as to bring credit upon the city as a whole. Questions there? Or comments? I think the line here that really struck me as I read it again. Says, should refrain from actions benefiting any individual or special interest group at the expense of the city as a whole. Okay, I think we've all got friends. I was reminded in my first term, somebody came up to me and said, we got you elected. You owe us this. Right to my face. And I said, no, that's not how it works. And fortunately, I had the presence of mind to say that right away. And the problem from that particular individual. On that subject went away. But sometimes we feel beholden to individuals who really got behind us in our campaign. And. We have to be very careful to look at the benefit for the city as a whole, not just for that particular individual or group. And that can be a real struggle. It's hard. You feel a little loyalty to these people who really got behind you. And you don't want to let them down.
I think that. One, one of the things that, that um, I had this, I've had this happen to me on a number of different occasions where people helped me with my campaign. And uh, and then they thought that they, they, again, that they, I owed them some loyalty of some sort. There was one particular uh, supporter uh, who just was livid. That my first thing that I did was vote against something. That this person was really, really passionate about. And so I was like, it took a long time for me to convince him, look, you voted. Because you trust me to do the right thing. You didn't trust me to do the right thing for you. Because my, my view of what I do here as a councilperson is for the entire community, what is best for the entire community. Not just one entity, not just one thing. Um, you know, zoning, for example, I vote to pass a, you know, zone, changing a zoning, I. One gentleman was so mad at me, he's still, still mad at me. Um, he's old, so that could go away sometime. No. No, he's a very nice gentleman. He really truly is.
Personal privilege.
Yeah, right. Should have said that, right? But no, uh, no, but he, he was, he was still really mad at me, but he still fed my cats when I was gone, so I guess he got over it. But that, but that's true. You, you run into that. And it's really difficult because people kind of take. When, when they think that they've done, done something to owe you, own your vote, you have to remind them, no. My vote is my vote. I will vote for the good of the community. However, I think that's best. I hope to be in concert with the rest of the council whenever votes come up of significant and major. Importance, you know, but it's still, you're, each one of us has a vote. And we, we have to own our own vote. But I think that that on the code of ethics is something that, you know, we need to remember.
Further comments, questions?
Got one comment.
Yes, sir.
Sometimes we vote on an issue. And it doesn't go the way we voted or wanted it to go. But after the vote, you have to change.
Yeah, you have to just accept.
Because not one person makes the decision. We as a group make a decision and after that decision's made, we back that decision up.
Correct.
Yeah.
We can be disappointed. We've got the right to be disappointed, but we don't go around bad talking every, badmouthing everybody who's uh, was on the opposite side. You lost the vote. Move on.
Move on to the next.
We've all been there too. Okay, so we've talked a lot about what the next section is here in private encounters. Um, and it deals with some of the technology issues, although you can sort of tell that it was written a few years ago. Uh, more than ten years ago because some of the technology terms and the different things. Um, but we're gonna start with number six first, continue respectful behavior in private. I have not seen this problem in this council at all, but um, I have seen it in other councils in the past. But we must be respectful when we're not in a public meeting as well. Again, we're human beings. There's emotions involved in what we do. And sometimes we don't feel very respectful towards each other. But yet, we need to behave in a respectful and professional way towards each other. Any comments on this one? All right, let's go to number seven. Be aware of the insecurity or non confidentiality of written notes, voicemail and email. Okay, we discussed this a little bit earlier. Your emails are not confidential. Okay, written notes, your voicemails, all that kind of stuff, they're not confidential. So if you want it in complete confidentiality, you meet and talk and don't take notes. But other than that, it's not confidential. All of that stuff can be requested in a, a public record search. Um, people have noticed, for example, council members writing notes. Sometimes they write a note to each other. To point something out or whatever. People have requested those notes. Okay, I saw, you know, mayor and counselor Hart, for example, writing a note back and forth. Um, apparently carrying on a conversation via written notes. And um, I want to see that. I want to know what they were talking about. They can put in a request for that. We have to provide it. Okay, maybe less so now because on the Zoom meeting with the camera right there, you can just look down and practically read whatever you're writing. But. Nevertheless, that is all public information as well. Okay, so the thing that it asks here, would you feel comfortable, and this is where it dates this a little bit, having this note faxed to others? Or having it scanned and emailed to others? Okay, is that something that you want out in public? Okay, how would you feel that this voicemail message you, was played on a speakerphone in the full office? What would happen if this email message was forwarded to others? Okay, we saw that happen recently where a counselor's comments in open microphone were played back by a member of the audience. Okay, so we do have to really pay attention to what we say, how it might be interpreted. And this is something that I really struggle with because I'm really good at off the cuff comments. And usually it's an attempt at humor. But I've also learned that a lot of people don't take that as humor. Don't, there's a lot of people who don't appreciate my humor and I think I'm hilarious, but. Sometimes I'm the only one. So I think we have to be very cautious about that, what we write, what we say, um, how we respond.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We want to add a social media on that?
I believe that might not be a bad idea. Any other thoughts from council members on that one?
Think we should.
I agree. If we can put something in there. With social media, because we've all seen where we've posted something on Facebook and it's gone out there. A social media to number seven.
Voicemail, social media and email, something.
Mm-hmm.
I have a question.
Yes.
Going back to, you were mentioning an example of you and Hart passing back, back and forth the paper.
I just made that up.
It was an example. So it just made me think of something that Counselor Frouse said about in regards of whispering. So let's say, like, let's say Ms. Vicky, um, Ripley whispers something to my ear. Couldn't you guys ask what she whispered or what she?
We could, but most of the time as we're observing, let's say you just have a quick comment back and forth. Quite often, the comments between council members are on, what page are we on? I can't find this. Um, and that's, that's just something that they didn't want to disturb the entire council for. They just wanted to be able to find that. And we understand that. Okay, um, if it continues and becomes distracting. Then, yeah, we'll step up and say, is there any way we can help you? Is there a problem that needs to be solved? Um, but. Yeah, I think generally, let's say the two of you are whispering and you can't figure out what page we're on or what paragraph we're on. Um, you know, that happens occasionally as well. James?
So one thing to keep in, in mind in regards to the minutes and public records requests is those side conversations. If Jackie can't, if there's, if there's certain things that are spoken about and Jackie can't get them in the minutes, there could be people that are requesting that information. Is that correct, Jackie? Some of the side conversations, if somebody thinks business or some sort of deal happened.
It wouldn't be a record because how can I capture that audio?
Which is right, which is the point. So if you're, when you're sitting on the dais. You're supposed to be doing business. And so what you are saying should be something that is said for everybody. Understandable what the mayor is saying. If you're just asking for a page number or something, it's usually pretty obvious what you're doing. But if there's some other more in-depth conversation. But if there's some other more in-depth conversation going on that we have no way of recording, it could open up the city to liability of a lawsuit for violation of, of open public meetings.
I think I may have an example of that. So I, I think I remember there was a public comment and, and someone from the public said something about, um, our OPMA training. And then that a decision was made without the, without the rest of the council. I think it was alluding to when the four of us met to discuss Y B cog. And it had happened after. That's what she was getting to. And there was no recording of it because Jacqueline had already stopped recording. So, but there was four, so it was quorum, yeah.
It was, was recorded in the minutes though.
But it was open to the public.
Right, it was, it was after the regular meeting and there's right, and so that's, and that was on me because I, I wanted to get that decision made and I didn't stop and say, okay, there's four of us standing right here and we shouldn't do that, but you're correct, I was called out inappropriately so by a member of the public.
I have another question. So what about like touching? I, like, let's say I'm talking out loud on the microphone and then Miss Subiller touches my arm and kind of distracts me. Should we, should we be avoiding that as well? I think it's very distracting.
Um, you know, everybody's got their own preference on that one. Um, if you don't like somebody putting their hand on your arm, that's something that you need to communicate to the person who's doing that. My, you know, my, my personal background, it doesn't bother me at all, um, but other people it really does. And I have been made more aware of that recently by some of, some people in my life saying, you know, I really hate it when people put their hand on my arms like, you do? You can do that? It didn't even occur to me. So, um, yeah, you need to make that.
And, and just same thing. Sometimes people don't even realize they're doing that. I mean, it's, it's just kind of one of those a reaction to something and, but it is something a person needs to be aware of and control.
But we are all human. And even the last meeting, she leaned over to me. The internet's not working.
Yeah, the internet's not working. My iPad will not connect and I asked, I asked him, is yours working? And then he said it was down. So then he said, just hotspot yourself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and, and that's the thing. We do have, we're going to have a certain amount of communication amongst us. We sit in the same chairs every time we start to get to know each other a little bit and say, hey, did you this and how was that? And then sometimes something comes up during a meeting, but we have had council members who were just note writers back and forth and it did get distracting and you know, we had to bring it up at a, an executive session one time saying, you know, you guys are writing notes back and forth. It's just driving me crazy. Because there's a conversation going on with the rest of us aren't part of and we're in this meeting. And, you know, thankfully that was years ago and they're not part of council any longer, but still it was distracting to us. The audience knew what was going on, that they were writing this stuff back and forth because you could tell it wasn't, I mean, we're not that subtle. And so, um, it had to stop. And so we, we just need to be aware of that. Yes, sir.
Um, my understanding is, uh, if you're taking personal private notes, that's not uh, open to public request.
If I take notes on this document, I assume that anybody can request that document. In fact, as the mayor, I have a slightly different agenda than the rest of you. It says the same things, but I, I mark, marking the votes and who made the motions and that sort of stuff. And I turn that into the clerk at the end of every meeting. I assume that's a public record and anybody who wants to request it can go out and read it. I have to, and I, excuse me, made the assumption when I started on council that any notes I took were public record as well. Somebody could request those. And I kept those for my entire first term. I kept every note from every meeting. I don't have them anymore, so anybody's gonna dig into those. He wants to see those now, they're not pertinent anymore, but, um, yeah, I just assumed somebody's gonna want to read them.
So I checked with MRSC and it's private. For yourself and you didn't pass it along to somebody else, they're not subject to.
Okay. I was probably more cautious than, than I should have been. Um, just didn't want to get myself in trouble. I do the same thing with my computer. I use my computer, the city issued computer for one thing. I check my email. And do city related business on it and then put it away. If I want to do anything else for my own research, if I want to read the news, I don't even do that on this. I get my own computer and do that. So I'm probably way beyond where I should be, but I don't want anybody to dig into my computer and find I've done something inappropriate as well. So you know, if I'm not supposed to read the news on it, I'm not gonna read the news on it. If I go and check out A W C, well, yeah, I'm gonna do this. Use this one, so. Yes, Ms. Haskins.
Deputy mayor just said that. So if I didn't pass my notes along, then it's not open for public.
That's, that's what I understood him to say.
Okay, because I, I know someone requested my notes and I already submitted them to, to Marisela. So, and I never passed those or shared those to anyone.
Interesting.
So if you share with another councillor, then it becomes
Can I add something? I actually spoke to Mr. Riley about this because I was also listed on that public records request. Um, Mr. Riley actually created and drafted the language that's now not MRSC, well, actually his office did. So he, he, he participated in the crafting of said policy, which states that unless any of your notes have been distributed to anyone, anyone of your colleagues, anyone um, in the city or anyone even in the community, um, then that becomes city business. For city business, then it becomes, uh, subject to public record and that's when you are obligated by law to release, to fulfill said public records request. Uh, other than that, you are not required. Um, however, it doesn't mean, I mean, if councillor Vasquez, if you've done it, it doesn't set precedent for any other public record request to come in where you're gonna have to give it if you haven't passed it out to anyone.
I haven't. So is there any way for, for Jackie, if you could let Marisela know that I never shared those with anyone? I actually got a notebook specifically for here and I could just download it on my phone and then erase it and rewrite. That way I can keep track of everything. So it's easier for me at least.
Yeah, and I'm sometimes feeling my age. I do everything by, by ballpoint pen. I take notes on paper and I have stacks of paper all over the place. So I have an entire file drawer just for city council stuff. But yeah, I can go back and look at the meetings. I can go back and look at what we talked about. I don't prefer to do it that way. I prefer to do it electronically. It's just neater, but yet at the same time, my habits just haven't died, so. Okay. Then if there's no more comments on number seven. Even, number eight, even private conversations can have public presence. Elected officials are always on display. I have to tell you that I don't care where I go in this city. Somebody knows I'm the mayor. And always have conversations with me whether I'm at church. I mean, I had somebody pull me aside at church yesterday or, yeah, yesterday. Figure out what day it was and say, why did we do this? And why does he not allow to sell his car on the street? And he was complaining about it. And I said, you know, we have city code that deals with that, trying to keep things neat. Part of our vision, right? And, um, so I had explained that after church yesterday to an individual. I was at a gathering with friends celebrating Saint Patrick's. We were about ready to have a, a great dinner and I got a fifteen, twenty minute phone call from a constituent upset about certain things that were going on in the city and wanted to talk about that. We are always on display. In the mind of the public, we represent the city. In the eyes of the city, we represent the public. We're on this centerpiece here. We're, we kind of all, we're always there in the middle between the public and city staff and, and department heads and, and we're in the middle there and we're always on display. So whatever we say is taken as the city speaking to the public. So why do you guys do this? Why do you guys do that? I'm sure even our most recently elected officials here have heard some of that already. Um, people asking why you're doing what you're doing. If it hasn't happened yet, sooner or later you'll make some of your constituents angry and they're gonna ask you in a different tone of voice. But, um, it's going to happen if it hasn't, trust me. Um, you have a target on your back. And so we are representing the city and we're representing the public and everybody is aware of it in one way or another. So private conversations with individuals can have public presence.
Uh, may I add? And then also those conversations get back to people and, um, even though you think those conversations are private, they are not. So, um, conversations have gotten back to me about colleagues speaking. Uh, you know, alluding to different things about me. Uh, so just so y'all know, I mean, it, conversations get back. Um, sooner or later I, I will know. And I will find out. And it's just like, that's just how like information runs, you know? It is just like, this is just, we live in a very small community. Everybody knows everybody. Um, uh, you know, even though I wasn't living here for some time, I mean, my roots are here. I mean, I grew up here. Um, I know so many different people and eventually they'll say, hey, this is what was said about you. So then I have to come back and discuss it with fellow colleagues and it's just, it's not, it's not, it's not a good thing, but um, but this is, this, cause just to let y'all know, this, this also is evolved from, from quite private, private conversations.
Yeah, um, you know, I have said this for years. I, I used to, uh, teach over at Sunnyside Christian High School. I started the Spanish program over there in the early nineteen nineties. And I would tell my students, I said, you know, one thing you have to remember about this valley is that you guys in the Christian school are in a fishbowl here. Everybody, everybody knows who you are and they're they're aware of you. But you have to remember in this valley, we're all either cousins. Or we dated each other's sisters. Or we played football against each other. Or we know somebody, we know each other in one way or another, all over the valley. So there are no secrets in anywhere in Yakima Valley and especially there are no secrets in Sunnyside. And that is made even more true now with the advent of social media. And some of these Facebook pages that so many of us are on and these things come up. And to the point where I no longer follow certain Facebook pages in town because I just don't want to be involved in those conversations. Unfortunately, my wife does and she tells me what's posted on there. So it's not like I've actually gotten away from this. But yeah, they do come back and sometimes, and we're all human again. And sometimes we just need to vent. When some, some people just, that's just how they relieve pressure and they vent and say some stuff and somebody turns around and brings it right back to a public meeting, for example. And it's interesting how the conversation or what you said can change over that period of time. It morphs into something completely different. But it does harm no matter what. So we have to be careful, every single one of us, and I'm not excusing myself from that at all.
Yeah. Even phone calls. But we've talked about that already.
We have.
Yeah.
All right. So number nine, quick tips. I think these are all just easy to understand. Questions about any of these? Under, number nine, item M is on the top of the next page and I like that one, continuously pursue excellence. That is something that we all need to take seriously. All right, here's another important one. Councilmember conduct with city staff and city attorney. Governance of the city of Sunnyside relies on the cooperation, cooperative efforts of all council members who set policy and city staff who implement and administer the council's policies. Therefore, every effort should be made to be cooperative and show mutual respect for the contributions made by each individual for the good of the community. All right, we make decisions as council, but we don't implement those decisions. We rely on staff to do that. And staff input is incredibly valuable and without staff help, none of the decisions that we make would ever be implemented. We need staff. And therefore we need to be very respectful towards them as well. So number 10, treat all staff as professionals. Questions or comments on that one? Okay, we believe that we are hiring subject matter experts. They're good at what they do. That's why they have the job. Even if they disagree with us. Number 11, direct administrative and operational questions to city management.
That would be the city manager?
Yes.
Should say city manager.
It should say that. I agree with you. Can change that term as well there.
And to put a note on that, they don't individually work for us. We as a council go through the city manager who implements and
Correct.
Gets done. We don't do that.
Yes, city council has one employee. And that is the manager. As individual council members, we don't have any employees. City council as a body has an employee. So we cannot individually direct the manager either. We do that as a body. And we are all very clear minded in our goals and, and take action kind of people. And so it's tough to remember. Um, I know I've had city managers tell me, um, you don't direct me. But I'm right. And if you get started right away, we'll get it going sooner. No, you need to get council to vote. But I'm still right. But you're right. I have to do that. And then council disagreed with me. So, yeah, it happens. All right. Number 12, when possible, keep communication with city staff short, to the point and at the best possible time. Okay, so there's a challenge. Especially the best possible time one, because yeah, we're all occupied as well. We barge into city hall, take up their time. City manager or city staff is very polite. They don't want to chase us out. Questions or comments on this one?
Could we talk about the process of reaching out to, to staff? Uh, because I mean, I for one want to make sure that we are treating respectfully with, with their time. I know that they have a huge workload um, on their shoulders. Um, I think the way that some of us have been going, or I all speak from my own experience and I think maybe once, I think it may, I might have copied you about the whole Mahoney refrigerators. And, um, it was Elizabeth still, so I think I sent it out to both of you and, um, just asking, you know, for a follow-up on that because I had driven by. So wha- how should we approach the situation? Like said, I, say I wanted to have a longer conversation with Trevor, which did not happen, but how would we go about it to ensure that we are respecting time and that we're going through the city manager or the city managers also looked into this conversation?
So in my experience, and I can be corrected here, but in my experience, department heads, as long as they have a free minute, we can, we can meet with them or we can make an appointment to meet with them. But their responsibility and our responsibility also is to make sure the manager is at least aware of that conversation. And they, if they're doing their jobs responsibly, we'll report to the managers, hey, hey, I met with councillor so and so and we talked about this. Um, just to keep the manager in the loop. We can have an appointment to meet with them, but generally our best approach is to contact the manager and say, can we meet and talk about this and allow the manager to direct their staff? I will meet with, oh, let's say Jamison, for example, I will meet with Jamison to talk about budget questions or administrative questions that is in her area of expertise. Um, to save a step, let's say the manager isn't available at that moment. The office is empty. I can't, I, and, but I only have this five minute window of opportunity to talk to somebody. I will talk to her about that area, but I also know that she's gonna tell the manager that I was in. At least I expect that. Jamison.
Um, I just want to make a little comment on that. I think, I think, I think all of this, the department heads leadership are totally fine with exactly what you just described. But I do also think that one of the, one of the areas of conflict between the council and the previous city manager was that she was not comfortable with that. And so I'm wondering like when we get a new city, and, and I know Rob is totally fine with that. You know, with what you just described. And so I think right now we can say, yeah, this is a hundred percent okay, but depending on who we get as a new city manager, that manager may have a different idea. And is it, is it within their purview to change? You, I, I guess I, I want to know what your, your, as council opinion is. If that manager is, is gonna say like, no, I really want this, everything to come through me. You know, how, how does the council feel about that? And then, and then should we have a contingency plan for how to get information?
Very good question, council. What do you think?
I think it says it in, uh, number 11.
First, first thing there. I think it's pretty clear. Questions of city staff and or requests for additional information that should be of interest to all councillors should be directed to the city manager or designate.
Okay, but what about if it's something that, let's say, Miss Frausto was concerned about the, the refrigerators in the alley? That's not, I mean, okay, knowing about it, I guess is, is interesting, but that would be her concern. And this is an example again, this is not.
Yeah.
But can she meet with code enforcement individually and you know, if, you know, under that rule number 11, I mean, is she authorized to do that?
And you know, that's a valid point because with prior, with prior management, I remember that I asked her a question and she actually said, oh, just ask, just ask her. So I didn't want to run it by her though, because I know that's what she was requesting. And then she was just, oh, just ask her. And so I was kind of like, oh, so, so then I would just go ask the, the person. And then she was just, oh, just ask her. And so I was kind of like, oh, so, so then I would just go ask the person because she just. Said, oh, go for it.
Okay.
Um, however, I think um, the response to your question would be, I think that's why we're going to have the whole. Getting to know the, getting to know the managers that we're going to be seeing and, and talking with, and. I think that would be a really good question for them as well before we even sign off the hiring.
Yeah, I think so too.
Chief Lemon has a comment he wanted to make.
Just so you're all aware, while I'm in this current seat, if you want to contact the department head. I have no problem with that at all. I just want you guys to be aware of that. Now line staff should probably go through the department head so that they know what's going on. As far as department head stuff, contact the department heads, all you want. And then they'll just let me know so and so came to talk to me about whatever. So now I will also say I have worked for city managers in this city. Where that was absolutely not allowed, and that was a city manager's direction at the time. Um, about three or four city managers ago, but yeah.
Every, every manager has their own culture. They bring their own culture with them, and you can sense that in city hall shortly after they uh, take office. They. Set up their own protocols. This is how I want things to run. And you can just sense a difference in atmosphere in the place, not necessarily bad, it's just a little different. And so we, we will have to make those adjustments when a permanent city manager is hired. Um, this new individual may not want anybody to, any of us to talk to any department heads individually. They want us to talk to them personally. And that's fine. Yes, sir.
So I know um, Julia Hart mentioned number eleven. With the city staff, is there a way we could distinguish shit, city staff and, and department heads? Is there, or?
Well, we, we interact mostly with department heads at where we are as council.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, you know, as city streets employee, we don't really have a whole lot to say to them. We see something that's wrong. We have the same. Res- resources as any other citizen in town. We'll call the city and say, hey, we've got. A complaint about. An individual doing this. Uh, we can't go up to them and direct them. We can't tell them what to do.
Should we change that then to, to department heads? Instead of city staff?
I was thinking, oh, sorry, not to interrupt. Go ahead.
Also maybe add a, a, like a number eighteen to where we kind of outline, you know, that we can. Talk to, to department heads, just in case the.
I think that's going to depend on your manager. I think so too.
I was thinking like if there could be like a little. Bullet below eleven to say something along the lines of this kind of helps like the Mahoney thing. Like requests for information from a department director that is for your own education, not necessarily because of any council action. I think you should, I think it should be allowed for you to seek out. A department head. You know what I mean? And so I think if we put it in there, then hopefully, then maybe it'll be more likely that that will still be okay.
I agree.
Trevor?
And now, well, I was just going to mention that I think where the, the part where like me and my position gets a little uncomfortable as if we're meeting on with a council member one on one. And they start to push the, like, okay, I want you to send your staff to go look at something. I want you to, to do, to go in this direction. That's where. I think somebody in my position would feel a little bit uncomfortable, and that's where I'll go back to the city manager and let them know this is, this is the request that a council member made. Um, how would you like me to proceed with this? Should I bring it to the next council meeting? Um, that's, that's where that line gets a little bit gray and we're, we're me, well, we'll go back to the city manager.
I completely agree with you. And so if we could make that, and I don't think, I haven't had any interactions with any of you. That has made me feel that way, which is why I don't see any problem with any of the interactions that I've ever had with anyone. You know, it, I want to be able to give people the information and to educate them. Answer their questions, all that stuff. And so if we could put, if it could specify that. It, it would be information, information gathering only, but not to. Give direction or something like that, maybe that would work.
Right, okay.
The whole point of this is we have number eleven here again. Now we're saying, oh, you don't have to do this. We need this to be the rule. Whatever the rule is going to be, and the next city manager, if that city manager doesn't like this, they can change it or bring it to council to change. But this is a rule that we all need to follow, or why have these rules?
Very good, very good point, sir. Ms. Ross?
Um, well, um, I appreciate full transparency and open um, uh. Uh, communications. I really do think that this is where, how we get to a common goal is just by everybody being on the same page. And understanding where we're coming from. Um, so just to kind of go back to, to Ms. Vazquez and, and. Your experience with Elizabeth at the time telling you, just go directly to the staff, that's okay. Well, um. Then I remember getting emails saying y'all need to stop talking to our staff because it's making them. Uncomfortable. I think that was the word in one of the emails. Um, so. I think it's about getting on the same page. This states it, copy the city manager. It, I've always, um, I, you know. I've always made a common practice to copy someone who should at least be aware. Of the situation, which I think, I mean, I agree with this, even though I may go to Ms. Horner or I may go to Mr. Martin. I, it's, I would feel just as personally, I will actually professionally, I would feel more comfortable making sure that Rob is copied. Even though he doesn't have to completely be a part of the conversation, at least you are now aware. Because these conversations might transpire into something different, or they might evolve and develop, and then it leads us to a place where we all have to make a decision on it. As council as a whole. So I want to make sure that that conversation is followed. Just me and my motive, like, you know, with my objective of transparency and open communication and for all of us to be on the same page, and there are no surprises.
Um, I too, I would like to just um, share my, my thoughts on this. So I would agree to disagree with councillor Beeler. Personally, for the reason that I know that when I started, I had a lot of questions with a lot of different things. And I wanted to learn, I wanted to catch up with a lot of the things that were on the agenda, and in order for me to do so, I needed to get in contact with certain. Department heads to ask these questions or to get more clarification on what something was, was speaking of on a certain agenda item. And I recall I wanted to do something and I pretty much wasn't able to, to do. And so it just made me feel like how, how am I supposed to learn or how am I supposed to grow in my position as a new council member? If I'm not allowed to, to ask questions, or if I'm not allowed to have certain conversations. With some of the staff. So it made me feel like my job was almost nearly impossible to do. So. That's a personal experience, and I do believe that we're all council members and we should have the resources to, and the ability to ask questions. You know, oftentimes there's things on agenda items where we want more clarification or where we want to ask. Especially let's say budget. I don't understand this, Ms. Horner. Can I, can I schedule a meeting? Can you just explain this some more for me? That way when city council meeting begins, I'm, I know what's going on. Whereas I show up and I really don't know what's going on because that's the only way that I could do an efficient job. And that's the only way that we could all do a better job. And you know. Council members change and I think it, it's been noticeable that some of, some council members. Are, tend to be a lot more busy in other areas and so am I, right? But we also got to take very, our job serious. And we were, we did sign up to do this willingly, volunteering, volunteering ourselves to do this. So we should dedicate time. To study, we should dedicate time to go through every page in the agenda, and we should take the time to speak to the department heads. And ask these questions and get to know them on a personal level.
And, and I agree with you, and you know, if you ever felt like you were not welcome to talk to a department head, I apologize for that because I. That was never the intention. Um, I have. And, and maybe it's just my personality. I talk to who I want to talk to, and so I never felt unwelcome talking to any of the. Department heads, anybody's arrayed before us today and anybody else in the city. I've never felt like I, my presence was unwelcome. But it's also the case that. If I have a question and my presence was unwelcome, I would either take it as an inconvenient time, or I have a question, so. I mean, if you've got a minute to answer it, answer it. So I, that's just kind of my personality. So, and, and I recognize not everybody else is as. Blind to social cues as I am perhaps, but um.
Yeah. So I.
Nobody disagreed with that. Go ahead, Karen.
I would like to go back to Ms. Horner's point, you know, where she said maybe even incorporating like another bullet and saying, stating. Well, just to ask questions or just for clarification purposes, council can reach out. I would never ever want to direct. I would never want to order anyone to do something. I do just want to have that access to ask questions in order to do my job the best that I can do. And let's say we get a new city, city manager, and they're not really. Wanting it to go this way, or they want me to ask permission for everything. It's just like one more wall that I'm going to have to go through in order to get that information that I want to obtain.
Right, and we can ask the manager, and I've done that before too. Hey, city manager, could you give me some information on this? And the biggest complaint that people have against any city managers, it takes forever to get a response back. Um, because it's just one more thing that they have to deal with. So it is handy if we can go directly to the department head and get the answers to the question, especially if it's just a simple question. And I think generally speaking, we're okay doing that. But yeah, I would be in favor of putting a line in, a bullet point underneath uh, number eleven to.
Or I was just thinking of a different thing. Instead of adding a bullet point, maybe if we clarified number twelve. To say that the type of conversations that you're keeping short and to the point are only for informational purposes. Um, to gather information and to educate yourself on, on issues or something like that. Because then I think you could take the two together and say, okay, well, this one says. That I just have to CC the city manager on, and this one says I'm allowed to get information. So maybe that's a way to make it. Sort of more.
Okay.
Clear.
What she put up there, what do we?
Oh, yeah. I think that the, add the information gathering. Only not to give direction should be with number twelve. Yeah. I don't think that, I think otherwise you're, you're just. Taking away some of the responsibility the city manager has.
Correct. And, and, and there's, there's laws that pertain to that. We want to be careful that we're not breaking the law. So.
I.
We can, we are, we are free to gather information as much as we need to. Um, and I have spoken to any of these department heads to gather the information, to get information, clarify things or whatever, and they've always been incredibly helpful. Um, I'm sure there's a couple of times where there've been a sigh of relief after I've left the office and say, oh, I get back to work. But um. Yeah, we, we can do that. It's, there's no prohibition for that.
I was just thinking if Jackie could put that, every effort should be made to, to limit disruption to the work. Of the city staff, and by that I think making appointments rather than just random calls. You know, see if you can make, you know, send an email to get an appointment or something.
That's a tou- that's a tough one, Ms. Hart. Um, I know.
No, I'm just, I, I, I know, but just if it's a quick question, again, keeping it short. But they have, and the disruption. And I think down there with the um. With the work of the city staff, that I think for informational. Uh, purposes. Cause that's usually what we're doing. You're trying to find out some information with your questions. So if you put that with the staff. The work, you know, council members should avoid making requests. Uh, the staff. Who are in meetings on the phone or, there you go, that already takes care of that. But we are, council members are allowed to ask questions. Of informational nature. Have some, some, something. I think what you wrote before.
So. Leave this?
Yeah.
Okay.
And take that.
Take this. And I think. But then you have. Well, then I can't see. I'm going to move this because I can't see. Okay, let's see. So I'm removing this line, right? This one, I'm removing it?
That's one, I think, isn't it? No, I think you're right on that one too.
Yeah.
And eventually, you know, having all of that material, whenever you ask a question. That's not our job. We're just getting information. No purposes. And.
Work activity, sir?
Yeah.
Just thinking on that, that line there, that doesn't mean that that information that we get can't come back. In conversation with city manager then to say, maybe we want to go that direction, or we want to change something. That's where we have.
Well, there's always very real possibility that's going to come back for all council. I mean, we start getting information, it's, it's something that we want. So, okay. Everybody in agreement with these changes? Obviously, we're not going to vote to approve this today, but it will come back before us to approve later on. All right, I'm going to keep moving. Um, we're still on item two, so we have a lot to cover today. Item thirteen, number thirteen, never publicly criticize an individual employee. I think that's pretty self explanatory, isn't it? We have an individual employee, sometimes council members and individual city employees do not click. I don't know, you may have noticed that among people, there's not always universal love and friendship. Um, but we have to resist the temptation to criticize an individual employee. And the s- members of the community will do that to us. There's an employee we hate, you must get rid of this individual. We, on the other hand, have to practice discipline and use a great deal of care. And. It's not easy to do. But we have to really work at it to not criticize an individual employee. Number fourteen, do not get involved in administrative functions. Council members shall not attempt to influence or coerce the city manager. Okay, individually. We do not individually have an employee, council as a body. Hires the city manager. Number fourteen, do not get involved in, we did that one, check with city staff on correspondence before taking action. Okay, so it's check city manager, see if an official city response has already been sent or is in progress. All right, sometimes the city is taking a role already and we jump in and we confuse the issue if we're not taking, sending a united message. Mr. Deputy Mayor, you had a question?
Yeah, so does this have to do with like, if the press gets a hold, tries to talk to us? Um, who's in charge of, of, of? I guess speaking for the city?
Well, who is our public correspondence officer or our public?
Reacting.
Exactly. We just changed her job description a little bit so that she is that person. So yeah, um, we would talk to the city manager or to city clerk. And. That way we are sending out. One message. Um. I don't know how many of you got phone calls from the press after um, city manager was let go. Um, and most of our comments should have been, no comment. I really don't have a lot to say. Please speak to city staff. Um, keep it as. Bland as possible. Um, you don't really stand for anything. You don't have anything there, you know, it's like. Again, you have the right to be disappointed. You don't have the right to make any further comments on any council members or any council action. This was what council voted. And this is the direction we're moving. And again, the temptation. Is to have a lot to say. Um, sometimes we feel as elected officials, we have to say something. No, we don't.
So I, I mean, a, a great example, I, I just ignored it and I, I think everybody else did and. Um, I think for future, um, would it be better for instead of the mayor also? Doing a statement on, on the particular item to refer to Jackie?
We have, yeah, I mean, when people call, yeah. To tell them, to send them to Jackie. Right away when you get calls from the press. Um. If you're going to respond to something, um, for example, I'll, my emails, I'll get a re, you know, something from a particular organization that is really opposed to something. And they want my response. I won't respond to that. I allow the city to respond to that if the city's going to. Um. Somebody's upset about something we're doing as a city, they're going to come after me and say, hey, we want to know what you have to say about this. Can you respond to us? So. Here's the official city position. Um, please refer to that.
So would Yacaline then work with her city attorney and the city manager?
If she needs to do that, yes, yeah.
And in fact, I think that the, the way that that. The direction on communication for, for city. Uh, communications, that is the process. Um, isn't it, Jackie, how, isn't that how you, you function, you?
Whenever I have to do a press release, um. We ha- I haven't done. We're doing one right now, and so what I do is I draft it. I have the department check and then the city manager check on it. And then if he, he or she approves, then I will.
And then if he he or she approves, then I will publish it. I know, I just thought.
Did I make one small comment?
Yeah.
Sorry, I know, I can't keep my mouth shut. Um, I think, I want to just clarify though, like, I think when we're talking about this. You're talking about active city business, right? Not about your opinions, like, you guys are, as council members, you are elected, you're allowed to have opinions on things, right? But it's just like, if it's, if it's a statement that's being made on behalf of the city, is that, is that the? That's, that's the ones, okay.
Yep. Somebody wants my opinion, they're gonna get it. If they want facts, I'm gonna make sure they go through the city, make sure that we have one message. But I make it very clear, it's my opinion as well.
And I, and I think that number fifteen saying, you know, we should check the city manager.
Good break.
I think that that's to see if there is an official response ready to go. I mean, Jackie will be working on one, you can just about guarantee. But I think you should go through the city manager to say, is. You know, are. Is Jackie working on something to that effect? And uh, I think that we need to keep that line, you know, what is it called, the uh? Oh, there's a. Hierarchy of things.
Chain of command.
Chain, thank you. I couldn't read, that evaded me there for a minute, chain of command, and I think that that's, you know, the chain of procedure. That uh, to to do, and I I like that, that. How Jackie described it. So if she's working on something, she will check with department heads and go through the city manager before it's being issued. I think that pretty much covers as a good procedure.
I I think even going to the attorney, he's a really good resource.
I think under, and I think that under some circumstances, she, I think she knows to do that. Hmm, that's what a good communication director does.
So could we add on here, the city manager and city attorney as needed? I I don't.
I would say with the city manager on this one, because the city manager is is our best point of contact with this, the city, and the manager's responsibility then is to consult with. Anyone who they would think is necessary before issuing a public comment.
I can tell you that most public comments can be made by the manager without consulting the attorney. Anything they have to consult the attorney on, they're probably gonna say no comment because pending legal matter, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's always a defense as well, when you're making, you can always say no comment.
All right. Continuing, number sixteen, do not attend city staff meetings unless requested by staff. We, council members, are not staff. A staff meeting therefore does not involve us unless we are requested, invited, or anything like that. Um, we need to be respectful of that. Questions there? Okay, number seventeen, legal advice, before requesting research or other action by the city attorney, we are encouraged to consider consulting with the manager. Okay? We can ask questions, our attorney has made himself available to answer questions. But um, sometimes it'd be best if we ask the manager first, the manager says, yeah, but we can avoid that step, let me show you how that works.
Also, also, those are billable hours every time we reach out to them, just keep that in mind.
And it's how much an hour?
It isn't cheap.
It ain't cheap. Per hour. Just out of curiosity.
Okay, outside of a council meetings, it says council members should make request of the city attorney through the manager. Okay, exceptions, of course, relating to the performance of the manager and unique sensitive personal. Stuff, um. But, yeah, manager again is our point of contact. And I have in the past requested the manager to speak to the attorney and get some information. And they have done so, but, yeah, I don't. Encourage just going right out and calling the city attorney, cause that, like I said, is billable hours.
Well, I mean, I think I'd like to say that I'd rather get things right than get these wrong and.
And I do understand, I agree with you. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, I just.
No, I was.
A little excited. Um, but um, we do have resources through A W C as well that we can conduct.
I love it.
Sort of research, and that doesn't cost us anything extra.
Or or the uh.
M R C.
M R C. That doesn't cost us anything extra, and they are a wealth of information, so. Um, consider going through those first, and then again, asking the manager to kind, about contacting the attorney, so. Okay, let's move on to uh conduct with the public. Making the public feel welcome is an important part of the democratic process. No signs of partiality, prejudice, or disrespect should be evident on the part of the individual council members toward an individual. Participating in a public forum, every effort should be made to be fair and impartial when listening to public testimony. All right, so often when members of the public come, they are coming with problems aimed at us, and it is difficult to be impartial sometimes when somebody is pointing you out. Naming you by name, pointing their finger at you, but yet we have to be impartial and we have to recognize that they are exercising their free rights. They have every right to be there, and they have every right to their opinion, and so we do have to be respectful. So. Again, we are human beings, that can be a challenge sometimes when we are the target of that. But number eighteen says be welcoming to speakers and treat them with care and gentleness. Okay, as the mayor, most of the time, I'm the one in the meetings who is uh the one most in contact with them, interacting with them. And quite often, I've had speakers stare at me directly in the eye, and we suspended the rules once, and I had one person go off on me for ten solid minutes. Um, that was an exercise in self-control on my part. Managed to stay in my chair, didn't get up and walk out, which was my temptation, but yet. We have to do that, because it is their right to do so, and we have to remember that. Number nineteen, give the appearance of active listening. Have you ever spoken to somebody who wasn't paying attention and didn't look like they cared? Okay. We were elected by these folks to hear them out. So we have to pay attention, if you take notes, that's fine. But um, if it looks like you're doodling on a piece of paper, they're gonna probably pick up on that.
I apologize, I know that was contagious.
Which tells you, Ms. Fraust. Fire chief is actively listening to you and paying attention to you.
Sorry, Mr. Hall.
All right. Uh, number twenty, ask for clarification but avoid debate. Argument with the public, remember when public comments, um, this is not something that we're debating, we're not arguing, we are receiving information from them, you can ask them to clarify something. But um. Yeah, we're not, we're not arguing or debating. Um, I will at the most try to answer a question if it's a fairly simple question, otherwise I will make sure that their phone number's on the paper and we can get back to them. Okay, and here's an important line, only the chair and not individual council members may interrupt a speaker during a presentation. However, a council member may ask the mayor for a point of order if the speaker is off topic or exhibiting behavior or language the council member finds disturbing. Okay? So. I know the temptation, especially if you're the target of the, of this particular speaker, is to jump in and defend yourself. Um. The public comment section is not the place to do that. And again, we are all human beings, but the public sees us as a representation of the city, and the public. Uh, what is that, perception of elected officials right now is that they deserve to be attacked. Um, they're, they're coming after them at every level, city council meetings or state level or or federal level or wherever. Um, we all have a pretty big target on our back, and so the struggle is to remain calm. And. Sometimes not react, I know sometimes we're concerned about overreacting, but. Sometimes it's best not to react at all. Number twenty-one, no personal attacks of any kind under any circumstances. Council members should be aware, body language and tone of voice, as well as the words they use, can appear intimidating or aggressive. Something that was made clear to me uh quite a long time ago, I don't know if anybody's noticed, but I'm six foot four. And those who are not six foot four can easily be intimidated by me, and I do not realize that. I do not feel like I'm. Taller than most people until I see myself in a picture next to people and realize how tall I am. And and part of that is because I am the short one in my family, my brother's quite a bit larger than I am, and all of his sons are larger than I am. Um, one of my nephews married a girl who was taller than me, so I don't feel particularly tall until I see myself in pictures. But I have been warned that I am fairly intimidating in my approach, and I don't intend for that to be the case, so I have to be really careful. So if I sit here sometimes behind this microphone with a sappy smile on my face, it's because I don't want to intimidate people. Um. But yeah, I, yeah, most of the time we're unaware of how the impact that we have on others. I know I'm really careful when I knock on somebody's door, I step down off the step a couple of steps back so that I'm not. You know, scaring the poor person who's gotta answer the door, and also there's this big guy standing there. But my, my wife and four daughters have let me know that I really need to be careful, so. And I think that is something that we must all be aware of as well. Okay? Going on in unofficial meetings, make no promises on behalf of the counselor staff, you do not control how the council is gonna vote. The council will talk about this, the council will vote on it, no, maybe we won't. So be cautious, you could say, I'll bring it up, we'll see what we can do with it, but that's as much as we've got. Twenty-three, speak with one voice. We're asked to explain a council action or give an opinion about an issue, have eaten, talk with constituents, this is what Mr. Beeler brought up earlier. It's appropriate to give a brief overview of the facts, however. We have to support the vote of council. Even if we don't one hundred percent agree, council voted, and this is what we're gonna do. Okay? You could, go ahead.
For counselor Fraust.
We can, I didn't realize she had snuck away. Well, I was gonna try to get down to, we've got a couple of more points on this one, and then done and take a stretch.
We're almost done with this. Oh, you just have been.
See, and I've had my pot of coffee for the day, so I'm.
I'm with with Jameson, I would really like a cup of coffee.
My coffee maker takes on at five fifteen in the morning, and by six fifteen, it's all gone. And it's fourteen cups, and my wife only has one.
I do have a question, are we gonna be able to get through all these subjects?
I am concerned, um. But. You know, these points are all brought up because we feel they're important.
I have a suggestion. I think after this, we should skip ahead of those um twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four council objectives. And do the budget review and revenue expenditure overview, cause I have a a PowerPoint and stuff. And it, and in some of it, I do talk about what the priorities were, which is why the budget is built the the way that it is. So it may be helpful to have that before. And then talk about, you know, we said at the beginning, you were gonna come back to the vision statement. So maybe after that, also you can come back to looking at what the priorities are. And it will make more sense on how you put that into place with the budget.
That might tie together with the vision statement too, so.
Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah.
Any objection to that?
Nope.
Okay, well, at this point, if Ms. Frausto objects to it, she's the only one, so.
Right.
And I think in the past, the budget, the retreats have ended by lunch, so I am ordering lunch now.
Oh.
I'm not, I'm not gonna place checkout yet. But I don't think we're gonna be done by noon.
Well, I don't have to be at work until five today, so. Well, that's why I scheduled to work for five. All right. So we just finished item twenty-three, speak with one voice. Item twenty-four, make no personal comments about other council members. Again, we all debate sometimes with a great deal of. Enthusiasm, commitment to our cause, and sometimes we find ourselves regularly disagreeing with other council members. Myself included, we are all guilty of. Being frustrated with each other. And sometimes the temptation to make a comment about somebody is overwhelming. Um, especially if somebody catches you off guard and says something that you absolutely don't like, um. Yeah, again, all of us as human beings are guilty of that in one way or another. Um, unless somebody's taken a vow of silence, somebody's gonna say something somewhere. And I know none of us has taken a vow of silence, so. We need to be really careful about that, we can disagree with each other. But derogatory comments about other council members, their opinions or their actions is inappropriate. And in bold print, it is a serious and continuous responsibility. This has been an issue throughout council meetings, I don't know, probably from the beginning of time, it will continue to be an issue. Because we continue to elect human beings as council members. So. An item twenty-five, the right to appeal. Any member may appeal to the council for a ruling of the presiding officer, and if the appeal is seconded. The member making the appeal may briefly state his reason for the appeal, and the presiding officer may briefly explain his ruling. But there shall be no debate on the appeal, and no other member shall participate in the discussion. Okay, that's challenging as well, because we've all got opinions. Presiding officer shall then put the question, shall the decision of the chair stand as the decision of the council, and the majority of the members vote aye, the ruling of the chair is sustained, otherwise it's overruled. Okay? So, then you've got principles of proper conduct, keep promises dependable, build a solid reputation, participate and be available. Demonstrate patience, show empathy, hold on to ethical principles under stress, listen attentively, study thoroughly. And that deals to what uh Ms. Vasquez mentioned, keep integrity intact, overcome discouragement. Go above and beyond over and over again, become a professional, model a professional manner and respect one another as individuals, so that's what we're trying to do. And. Questions or comments on this? Oh, it goes on, sorry. Respect the validity of different opinions, respect the democratic process, and respect the community we serve. Okay, sorry, I didn't scroll down far enough on that one. Questions or comments on this document? I encourage us to review it occasionally, Mr. Premier.
So, right now, when the public comments and they're expecting a response of some sort from the city, right? Um, I know earlier you said you would call them, or you'd call them, or somebody calls them. I think, wo- would it be better if if it's done by email and and all the council CC'd on that, so we can know what the question is and what the response is, just because. Sometimes it might, it may come up from somebody else, and we might know what, you know.
That's a very good comment. So, the signup sheet for public comments is a relatively new development, it started up last fall, I believe. And so it hasn't really been modified a whole lot, you know, they have their phone number if they wish to uh receive a response. Um, so that could be changed, please put your email in there so that we can respond. Um. Is there, there's space for that on there, right?
I can make room, it, I can remove the te- the phone part and just add email.
Let's just, okay, is there any objection to that?
For what? I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, so there's, for public comment, there's a form that people sign up that's on the podium.
Okay.
And they put their name, their city of residence, the subject they want to talk about, and then a phone number if they want follow-up response.
Okay.
And what the deputy mayor is suggesting is that would be perhaps be better to do that via email so that we've got a record. And that could also be attached too for all of us to be able to see the response to that particular comment. Um. I, yeah, you can see the form up there. So leave a phone number if you'd like a follow-up call, um, we could change that to an email. And make sure that they get their follow-up via email.
Or email, because a lot of people don't have emails.
Yeah, so we can leave phone or, okay.
Okay.
Everyone. My friend doesn't, he hates emails, and it, yeah.
So, I, when I moved back to the United States in two thousand and three, I had been living in the Dominican Republic, which is not considered a first world country most of the time. We conducted a lot of our meetings via email, we all got reports out to each other via email, so we could read those reports before our our. Our meetings and didn't have to read the entire report. We were doing electronic deposits in the accounts of all of our teachers. In the Dominican Republic, I moved back to the United States and I was a member of the board of Sunny Side Christian School, and not everybody on the board had email, I said, could you just email out these reports, so we don't have, no, we don't have email. This is two thousand and three, so what are you talking about? How do you not have email? We've been doing all of this in the third world, in quotes. So, yeah, we have a number of people who won't have email.
Or they do, and they don't know that they do, because that, that's the problem right there.
Yeah.
You know, I think, I think, excuse me, you were gonna say something.
Who, who, me or Ms. Uh, me?
Yeah.
Oh, no, I was just agreeing, I don't know.
Yeah, well, what I was thinking about too, you know, a lot of times, our our constituents will come to us and say, I never got, I never. I never got an answer back, I never got an answer back, hear that a lot. If we send them an email or send it via uh. Uh, you know, when we had copies of it, each one of the council members also, you, as you're suggesting, that way you can say, well, I'm pretty sure you got an email on it. And I I've, I've had people who get the emails who tell me they never got the email, and I have a copy of it. Well, here, I have a copy of it, why don't I forward it to you? Um, with the answer to your question, but people are. They're like that.
Well, sometimes it goes into their spam pile.
And it might go under their spam, spam mail, giving them the the grace of of that particular. Thing, but I think for us, it co- covers uh. Uh, both the staff and the city manager and us as council members, if we get a copy of that. Something that goes to somebody who had a question.
Mm-hmm.
Or even if the person who's sending out the answer will say, this is, I contacted X Y Z. And and this is the answer to that question on this, I sent it on this date, and just a quick note to the rest of the council. So that we know that when that person comes up to me and say, I never heard from. Say, well.
Okay.
Yeah.
It does, yes. I like it, go ahead, Ms. Frausto.
Um, I have two things. Okay, don't wanna, um, so on here, um. And I don't know if it lives elsewhere, but just the onboarding, one, I think the onboarding of of new council members. And then the second part will tie into this, do we wanna establish like a review cadence of these, of the. The council code of conduct, I guess it goes along with our mission statement. It could be a biannual review, so we're not having to revisit a mission statement that's almost ten years old. Um, uh, ten years later, and it's actually, it's something, it's a living document, because what I see as a mission statement, it's a living. It's, it's a living communication speech that's forever evolving, especially with something like this. I mean, we just went through it and made a whole bunch of different updates from adding social media, because this was may have been written during the time where social media wasn't as prevalent as it is now in twenty twenty-four. Um, or a bigger, uh, more expansive form of communication now that we see. So, um, I think it's, I don't know how, what y'all would think about this, but establishing a review cadence, if it's. Annually, I would say biannually at least, um, gives time for even if uh, kind of goes with the election process too. But, um. I wanna, I wanted to make sure I added that before.
Okay, Mr. Beeler, you had a comment?
Yes, uh, every budget we do, that's the first thing we discuss and we vote on, do we need to change it or need it, so we do it every year. With that, we'll be doing it in August when we do budgets again.
Yeah.
We, we review the council code of conduct.
Not the council code of conduct, but our mission statement, our mission statement.
Oh, the mission statement, y'all review it every year?
They're in our budget retreat.
And it hasn't been changed, even though y'all.
We just voted the same, yes.
Yeah, they said, is there any changes that anybody wants to make to it, is it, is it still relevant to where we are, and up until now, it's like, no, this still. This is still where we wanted to be now. We have. A lot more newer members on council than we've had all at one time before, so we've got a different vision, and that's one of the reasons for this retreat as well, because. You guys are coming on and you haven't been a part of council before, and so you bring a new vision. With you, and we want to get on board with that and see how we can make everything work. So if you've got different things about our vision statement and things that need to be changed, well, by all means, bring it up, but we will see it again in August. And it's gonna be the first thing that we talk about in our budget, because it really impacts how our budget. Is prepared, well, not prepared, but what it looks like. Because it needs to be in line with our vision. And so. We do, we see that every year.
Something else we might need to look at, you guys being new this year. Uh, I was here six months. Before I knew that we had internet. So I get here, get my iPad, hook it up to my phone, nobody told me we had internet. I was here eight months.
Hmm.
And then I found out, you got a mailbox at City Hall. Nobody told me that. There's a lot of things that you don't really think of, once you learn it, you know, you you do it, but then you get new people coming in, and I mean, we all did it at one point.
Mm-hmm.
And there's no, there's nothing that said, this is a packet you should get when you're a new council member that just has all that stuff on it.
Yeah, and that's what I was, yeah, thank you for that.
I was on several months before, city manager complains, says, you know, councillor Burisma never comes to visit me. Yeah, we never have had a meeting, it's like, I can do that?
Uh, yeah, I think onboarding, I mean, I didn't know I needed a card key until Ms. Vasca, councillor Vasquez, mentioned to me that she had gone, and I was like, well, how did I, you know, I didn't know about this.
And I didn't know that I could get one until I found out that all the new members have this, I still don't have one.
I got, I got my key.
Yeah.
I got my key in January.
Yeah, well, and that shouldn't.
Also for over ten years.
Uh-huh. And that shouldn't be normalized, yeah.
This is a new thing, the the door. Codes, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but this is all new this year, so you wouldn't have been told when you got on boarded, because it wasn't in place at the time.
Yeah, and 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 then, you know, when it is just, I think, communication, and this is can go back to onboarding going forward, it's, but going back to councillor Beeler. It's uh, these are the things that you need to make note of. Um, you know, I I know I went to Lucia for, you know, the, you know, to sign some of those documents. Um, later on, I heard about the key, but I mean, it's just a whole bunch of things that come with onboarding. Even with committees, you know, the committee, the subcommittees that we are assigned to the board, I know we were in a conversation with you and and uh. Uh, Elizabeth that one time with councillor Vasquez, and she had a great idea about um, creating an onboarding for any of the boards or commissions or subcommittees that we become a part of, so we know. Who to contact, what is expected of us, right, the whole, you can, you know, try to tread carefully and not, you know, provide too much of your opinion, you know, during these meetings, because you're a liaison. Things like that, right, and it just kind of all falls into. Into the onboarding bucket.
Better orientation.
Yeah.
We do, and I, and I agree, and so. That.
That's, that's a really good point.
Yeah, and that's something that does, and and Elizabeth and I had talked about that, and I know Jackie has taken some um, got information from different cities. Um, that how with your subcommittees and all of that sort of stuff, she's starting to bring some of that stuff together and I've seen of it, so that is something that's going to come up in a discussion. So, and and if you don't hear from us soon enough, keep the pressure on, because I'm starting to get busy at work, and so some of this stuff is gonna slip through my mind, so keep the pressure on me on that one to make sure that it happens. Um, but, yeah, definitely want to make sure that not only we as council members on subcommittees know what we're doing, but we want the subcommittees to know what they're doing as well. So we want to orient them a little bit better than we have been in the past, so that's, that's something to be concerned about as well. So we've been here now for almost two hours and it is time for a break. If there's no objection, can we take a, what do you say, ten minutes is gonna be enough? Let's take a ten minute break, there's munchies in the back room, or. Coffee, I understand, I know Jamison is just aching for a cup of coffee at this point. All right, so we're adjourned for recess for ten minutes, so eleven oh two.
The authority to spend money and provide essential services. The budget should reflect the city council's goals and priorities and because it is the tool that they use in order to enact policy. Staff offers expertise to help guide the process and we ensure that you follow rules and regulations and we put that plan into action. But the budget in itself, it is a document that is we all work on as a team. But it's where council gets to say, these are my priorities. These are the things I want to fund. Go forth staff and do good work. Next slide, please. So currently, this is how we budget. This is our, our current budget philosophy that when I started here, I sat with Elizabeth and we said, this is how we want to budget. So we kind of mix these different things together. So we start with the conservative budgeting style. Which means we are going to go through our expenditures and we are going to prioritize things that we think are essential and things that are considered superfluous, we might kick out. We always want to be the best fiduciary for the funds of the public. So we're usually trying very hard to make sure that we are not wasting a penny in any place. We use real- realistic projections for planning revenues. Which means in some ways, um, we are a little bit pessimistic, but we're really pessimistic with our expenditures. I'll get there in a second. But we try to get it as accurate as possible. And a lot of times we actually do overperform. So we are collecting more revenue in a lot of areas. But because of the idea that we want to build in contingency, we want to keep those as realistic as possible without any, without and, and a chance to overestimate really. And then pessimistic planning for expenditures, which I, I know I don't like the word pessimist, but this is literally like pessimistic budget planning. It's what it's called. We look at the worst case scenario for expenditures. So I, we go back and we look at the past few years. How much have we spent in all of these? Okay, let's take that average of the highest and make sure that we have budgeted sufficiently in order to cover those costs. So that we don't run into an issue where we're in month eleven and we have to replace something in our sewer department or whatever, and we cannot do it. So those are the main principles that we use when, that I have used historically when putting the budget together here.
If I may interrupt here, counsel, this is partly a product of extremely competent finance directors, but it's also a product of a council who went through two thousand eight, two thousand nine, and we had this big old recession thing. And suddenly the city found itself with an awful lot of money that they had committed to spend and not a ton of revenues. I mean, right away in two thousand eight, that didn't happen, but the next few years afterwards. And when I got on council in two thousand thirteen, we were suffering from a huge budget mess. And that was caused partially because everything had been going so well. We had a very optimistic council that committed to spending a lot of money. And they were all things that needed to be updated and improved on, but nobody anticipated the huge economic downturn that was going to happen. And it took from, so I got on in March of two thousand and thirteen. It took until what seventeen or eighteen before we got that corrected to the point where we felt like, okay, now we can project forward and start laying out some contingency plans so that we've got some money left over. We were kind of burned and we've been scarred by that. And so we preferred to keep it very conservative to make sure that the city stayed in the best financial position that it was. And then of course, our financial directors were also in agreement with that, but I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on that.
And I, I don't want to comment that I think because of the ARPA, our American Rescue Plan Act funds, which is also the auditor referred to them as SLFRF, which is state and local fiscal recovery funds. We've had like this little slush fund, if you will call it, I think where we have been able to do some of those expenditures that necessarily were, were not considered essential when in the previous years, the council had been working and the staff had been working so hard to build that financial stability. And so there has been a period of time where I, I see that there's been a little bit of backlash to some of the spending in the last couple of years, but some of that is because we have to spend that money. And we need to use it on things that benefit the entire city. And so you know, that is one of the things where I could see somebody looking from the outside saying, whoa, 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 Jameson, you're telling me that you're conservative budgeting and that you're not spending things on unnecessary things, but we just did all this and this and this and this. Well, this is why. Because we've, we've used a lot of ARPA money to do some of that, some of the things that we haven't been historically doing before. Updating the facade at City Hall, changing out the doors at the community center so that people had easier access when they rented the facility, um, putting cameras in across the city. Increasing technology in our police department significantly. So it, I, I understand how it can feel like, whoa, the city's just pouring money out. But the reason for that is we had that four million dollars that we have to spend and it has to be for the betterment of the entire community. Any questions on any of this from anyone or concerns or comments?
Just the, excuse me, the ARPA money is, um, due to be spent by the end of this year?
It needs to be, it needs to be contracted at least to be spent. So it all needs to be totally tied up by the end of this year, and then the pennies can actually be spent through the end of twenty six.
Okay. So we can designate it is what you're saying?
Yeah. And all, well, I, we have a lot more stuff on ARPA, a little bit down the line, so we'll get back to that.
I just, it seemed like.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Excuse me.
Any, any other questions, comments or concerns here? Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Deputy Mayor.
So, um, realit- uh, realistic projections, right? Going back to the revenue, um, going back twenty, you know, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty one, you know, twenty two, twenty three, it's, it's always been, you know, twelve million, three and a half. But in two thousand twenty four, uh, for the general fund I'm talking about, um, you have a list at twenty million. That, that kind of seems a little bit.
I gotta pull up my spreadsheet. I'm not a hundred percent sure what you're, hold on one second. So you're talking about just the total revenues for the?
The general, the general fund revenues.
Okay, hold on one second.
And granted, in two thousand one and two thousand twenty two, you know, we have ARPA money. I, I'm not including that in there.
Well, and in this year, we also have the expected sale of the Monson property, which is, I think, over four million. How much is that?
Four million, yeah.
So that'll be included in those general fund revenues that would not be something that was typically there.
So you subtract the twenty million, you know, four million, it's sixteen million. So it's, it's just a little bit over.
We'll get there. We'll get there. Yes. I, I see, I, I get what you're saying. You're saying that it looks like the expenditures are far outpacing the revenues specifically in the general fund. Okay, we'll get there. I will show you. And you are right. You are not wrong. And this isn't a new, um, a new known fact either. It's something that as staff, ever since I got here in two thousand twenty one, we've been working on some of the things we need to do for revenue generation that have been lacking and, and slacking behind in order to keep up with expenses. Okay, so these are things that if we want to change our budget philosophy, that we might want to consider. For providing essential services, what do you consider as essential services? You know, what do you as an individual council person and then you as a council body as a whole want to decide are considered essential? Um, some people include recreation and culture in those things and some people don't. That's, that's going to be one of those things that as council, you're going to want to decide that. Um, ensuring affordability, affordability for who? We know that we have a low income population, a high, low income population in our area. But we also have middle income and higher income people in our area that would like to make sure that they have shopping and housing as well. So these are really complex questions. So how do you determine as a council? What, what kind of affordability you're trying to ensure? Encouraging prosperity is, is that a goal for you? Because in the past, it has been considered a goal to encourage business growth, to encourage tourism and to put, and to put resources towards that. Um, are those things a priority for this council now at this point? Um, do we want to continue investing in trying to bring in competitive businesses? Do we want to continue encouraging, like I said, various housing from low income all the way up through the higher level housing for people who work and live in the community? Um, do we want to invest in things like parks and beautification? And making things look nice, things like even like code enforcement and yard sale signs. I mean, to the, at that point. You know, what is the, what is the, what are the things as council that you think are important for investing? And then how should they be prioritized? And then what impacts do those have on our philosophy that we should make changes to? So for instance, if you want to say that you no longer think that culture and recreation is an essential service, then that means that we can reduce what our expected essential expenditures need to be. And maybe that means that we don't need to work so hard to raise revenues, right? But if you decide that that is an essential service and you continue want, wanting that to be an essential service, then we still need to pursue other avenues for revenue. Um, the affordability question, you know, if, if we're wanting to encourage development in middle to upper class jobs and housing and shopping opportunities. Um, that is also going to require a focus on revenue. So on, on increasing some of those revenues in order to fund the city's ability to work on the development of those things. The, you know, and that also goes with the, with the gross, growth and capital investment. And an example of the capital investment is the nine point or nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we just um, gave to the port as part of that, uh, Midvale project. So that is a huge investment from the city. Um, but the point of that investment was in able to put those services in so that we can expand that area down there. So as businesses come into that area, the city will get increased property value. The city will get increased utility users, more jobs, but it takes that initial investment. So determining if you think, if you as a council think that those are important things to continue spending money on or not. And those are the questions that you guys will need to answer because we take our lead from you. Are there any questions or concerns or discussion on this?
Questions or comments?
No, just thank you for the breakdown.
Mr. Deputy Mayor.
That, that money that was given to the board, was, was that part of the general fund revenue or was grant between grant money and?
It was. So initially, when that conversation came up, and Trevor can jump in at any time and correct me if I'm wrong, because this has been a long time in development, I think since like twenty two. Yeah. Um, so the port has wanted to develop that south of the freeway section for a long time. Initially, the discussion was to fund our, uh, the cities, a big portion of the cities with ARPA money, but ARPA money, ARPA money, ARPA money got promised in twenty thousand different directions. And me, I'm just trying to keep lid on and make sure that we are not over allocating any of that. So when the project actually came to be, we no longer had enough ARPA money to allocate that. But we did know that we were, that we had a buyer on the line for the Monson property. So the decision was made to continue pursuing that and using a portion of the sale of the Monson property to pay for that. Now, we did pay for that invoice now because we had a contract with the port. Uh, but we expect the Monson property sale to go through within the next sixty days, I believe.
Yeah, it's supposed to be April, next, this time in April.
Yeah. So we did have to throw that out first, but that money that was allocated was supposed to be out of Monson. However, we could always go back and look at our ARPA and say, do we want this to be designated as ARPA money? Because we still have that ability right now, and that'll be up to you guys as well.
And so the other reason that we targeted, that we've been targeting Alexander Road is because there's no water and sewer services and, and Alexander and our, and the city lines kind of jog around in that area. And one of the big problems with the hospital site right now and that south side of the freeway, uh, freeway exit on sixty nine is that there's no water and sewer, there's no utility services in that area. So as, as we continue to work with the port and their projects, we can continue to strategically bring services, bring utilities further down Alexander Road. Um, I, it was the discussion once upon a time to use the, um, use the Tucker Sellers property as some sort of, um, fire training facility. I don't know. I'm assuming that's still in the works. That's something I'm sure that'll be talked about. But that's not a well. We don't have, um, a water line running to that property. And one of the ideas is to hopefully eventually go down Alexander Road, looping into that site. And then that would contain, create a continuous, a bigger loop within the city, which we need on that side of the hi- of the highway in order to help bring a little bit more development, to help any failing septic systems, to help with water quality control in that area. Um, as we move forward, um, into the city's development. So that's, that was one of, that's part of the strategy and, and improving those, that Alexander Road corridor.
One of the things that is our responsibility as council to, is to look forward into the future as far as we can and try to lay out the infrastructure necessary or whatever projected growth or development we have. And you, you can't say a hundred percent this is going to be strictly business or this is, isn't. But to be able to make sure that there is enough infrastructure to supply any kind of development that's going on. And that's sometimes a challenge because you're trying to look through a crystal ball. But, uh, that's where folks like Trevor come in and try to do planning or planning commission works really hard on that and try to lay out what our zones are and that sort of stuff. And then we try to, uh, get ahead of things by, by making sure the infrastructure is there. One of the things historically that we've had happen in Sunnyside is a development goes in and then it's decided somehow without speaking that that'll be the last development that'll ever happen in that direction. So we build just enough. And there's no room for expansion or, or further development. And that has in the past caused a little bit of a, a, a struggle with certain areas that wow, we kind of have to go back and rebuild the entire thing before we can do anymore. So we're trying to not have that be a problem. Um, that's a little easier, I believe, on our staff and our public works and all of that. We have better stuff in there so that they're not trying to piece things together kind of haphazardly and hoping that it all works. So that's what we're trying to do and all signs indicate that south of Interstate eighty two is an area that where we can expect some growth. And we need to be prepared for that.
And just to, to kind of talk a little bit more about that, just, just really briefly, is that, that, that par portion is a, um, a small contribution in a ten million, I believe it's an overall ten million dollar infrastructure project that's going to be going.
Native of grants and loans and a bunch of other.
And ports investment and that kind of thing in, into that area. So that's, that's our small contribution to that overall right now.
We, and we will have, just for full transparency, we will have some ongoing, um, a portion of loan payments for the seed loans and, um, what other loan did they get? There was two, I think. Yeah, okay. So there was a seed loan and a curb loan that basically we went into on together with the port. So we'll pay our portion of that going forward as well. So there will be some continued debt costs. Um, but this was our big contribution to that development to get that, to get that rolling.
Jamie, Jameson, would you just go ahead and, and, uh, the acronym seed and curb, would you explain what that is? Or would somebody would? Thank you. Isn't it?
Community, it's, it's community economic. Yeah, there you go. Oh, that's curb. Yeah. Community Economic Revitalization Board.
Specific to Yakima County and it's regulated by the county commissioners. So it's, they're, they're separate, whereas curb is regulated by, by the state.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Round up an acronym sometimes. They're new.
Any other questions on this part?
Um, it's just a question that came up, um, kind of going along the lines with budget and kind of what to project for, what would be our priorities? Um, where can we get the trends of just the growing population over time? Is that something that y'all have considered with coming to budget? Of like what's expected? So for example, if there's going to, if we are expecting a high peak of in our population with the next two, three, five years, you know, how could we start planning?
The Office of Financial Management for the State of Washington does, um, population projections each year. And so we, we use those along with, um, like the census and YVCOG helps with some of that. It is, in our area, it is really hard to, um, go off of some of those numbers because we have a large undocumented population and a population of individuals that may be home, not homeless, but houseless or permanent addressless, if you will, that are, we, we should include in our population because they drive on our roads and they shop here, but they don't necessarily show up as a population number. So we look at all of those resources and then we kind of also look at the economic picture and what business is doing to kind of come up with that. But you can go to the Office of Financial Management, um, and you can find a lot of information on population there.
And, and actually I just got the email this morning from OFM on population estimates. So I have to go in there and tell them about our new developments and the number of housing permits that we've issued and, and so that'll be being updated in the next month or so.
Anymore? All right, carry on.
Okay, next slide. Okay, so here is just a where we're at with budget right now. So the budget that we put in place was passed obviously by last year's city council, based on all of the priorities that we've talked about right now. So for, through the month of February, so the, for the first two months of the year, we should be, well, two months is sixteen point seven percent of our full budget. So our expenditures for operations and maintenance, so this is across all city departments on the left is, is right in there, sixteen point six percent. So we're right on target. Um, for where we're, where we were expecting to be. Um, the general fund is that bar on the right. There's a lot of different funds listed or a lot of different departments listed that make up that whole thing. But again, the general fund right now is at fifteen point two percent of the budget for operations and maintenance expenditures. So this doesn't include the capital projects or the extra things that aren't on the regular. This is for the regular things that we need in order to operate our current um, programs that we have. So if you look at the, the general fund one, chief, close your ears. You'll see that big brown bar in the middle there. That is, that's public, that's all police. And that's not even just including corrections or the court or dispatch. That's just police. Police officers and patrol. So the, the largest percentage of our general fund budget is our police department. We've made a lot of investments in our police department because of the importance that the previous council, and I'm sure you will agree, put on public safety and on upgrading some of those technology systems that we have available now to us in order to combat some of the issues that, that we've been facing. But that means that the public safety portion, the police department portion of, of general fund expenditures has ballooned. Um, and so that is the bit, one of the big areas where you'll see our general fund expenditures going up. And we can't really charge for police services. So the way that police are funded is basically through taxes. So what, what do we want to consider? What mechanisms can we use in order to get revenue there? Or can we collect revenue in other places that can still be used from the general fund to support those? So those are just some revenue considerations.
And police, police has almost always been and probably will always be the largest single line item in the general fund. Because like she mentioned, um, we don't charge somebody when we, you know, when they're arrested, we don't charge, I mean, they pay a fine when they're speeding, but um, generally this is funded through taxes and that is the, that is the one revenue source that we've got for the most part. So it's always going to be a huge number. And we've had counselors come back and just really complain about overtime. They've complained about the expenses. They've complained about well, a lot of different things. You can always find something that you're not happy with the way it's going. Um, but yeah, it's not going to change and that's going to be a big part of the general fund.
And I think a huge thing to also consider is, you know, the, the more that we are investing in, in, um, in law enforcement, are we also seeing trends in the decrease of criminal activity or, um, and, and so, and if it's not, then, um, also considering, you know, what is our overall strategy and what are we putting money into in terms of police department, right? I mean, are we? I know we've had conversations about like the, what are the youngins? The explorers and how, you know, building relationships with the community, rebuilding the relationships with the community and the trust and so forth. But there's so much planning to go around that, that will eventually drive our finances. Uh, but I haven't looked at the overall trends of how much more money we're putting in and if we're actually seeing some fruition in that in terms of.
We can let the chief talk. I, I, I can make general statements, but the chief can give you the details. I'm going to let him do that.
So if you, a couple of things to look at. So the first thing I want to talk about is, um, technology. So through the ARPA money, that's where we spent almost, I mean, eighty percent of it probably is technology. So when you talk about the drones, the flock cameras, the body cameras, the in-car, uh, cameras. We're looking right now at a less lethal option that'll give us another tool to use before we have to use significant force. Um, it's going to be about a ten thousand dollar investment, but and then when I give my council reports over, uh, with numbers over the last year, when all that technology went into place, you'll see that our, our stolen vehicles is decreased by over fifty percent. And I attribute that almost directly to the flock camera specifically because one, we're catching them if they steal them. And two, um, they know that the flock cameras are out there. Um, the, you know, we've had several complaints that were taken care of because of, uh, car cams and body cams. Um, those are very useful in prosecutions, um, down the, down the line. We're not seeing those, um, uh, effects right away, but we'll see those down the line when they end up going to court or trial or something like that. So technology is where our investment needs to be and it has shown a, a decrease for us. Um, specifically in, I mean, I think every category was down last year.
Okay.
At the end of the year. Uh, this year it's hard to tell because it's such a small sample size first. And it's also hard to tell, uh, I just want to explain one thing, like vehicle theft, for instance. We don't get a lot of vehicle thefts in the summertime because people go sit in their hot car for two minutes while the air conditioner kicks on. In the winter, when they leave their car running for twenty, twenty minutes outside trying to defrost it, that's when we get all our vehicle thefts. So if I was to pull numbers right now, it looks like vehicle thefts, oh my gosh, they're projected to be just off the charts. Well, that's not necessarily the case because as we move into the warmer months, you're going to see those decrease anyway. So.
Hmm, okay. Uh, do we also, um, consider, uh, what we're paying into the forensic? Um, uh, what is it?
Yeah, the, uh, crime lab.
Also, um, in there, okay.
Yeah, that should be in that overall total. Uh, that's not going to be the, um,
Crime Lab.
Uh, ARPA money. But yeah, so the crime lab SWAT, you know, there's different things where, where if we were to house our own SWAT team, we'd probably be looking at I would probably say with the overtime and the training and equipment, probably a couple of million dollars a year, where right now we're into it, uh, we still pay the overtime and training, but it's only for three officers. And we pay twenty thousand dollars a year, I think. Or eighteen thousand. The crime lab, we paid twenty two thousand or vice versa. They're both about the same actually. And then the crime lab, we're getting all kinds of benefits from. And I went to a meeting last week for the board on Thursday and I asked them to pull numbers specific to Sunnyside. I haven't gotten them yet, but I can tell you how many items we have submitted. I can tell you. Yakima is not a member of the crime lab. Between us and the county, we're pretty competitive on their biggest, uh, user of their services. So we, we send a lot of stuff there. So.
Um, one thing to consider, a lot of what, uh, uh, Chief City Manager just said was that we, we bought a lot of this technology with ARPA funds. But there's always a lot of conversations around using ARPA or using one-time revenues for ongoing costs. And usually people think about that as staff and it always turns into, well, we're adding staff. But in this case, all of those pieces of technology that we purchase, they have long-term costs. Every year, we're going to pay for those flock cameras. I think a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Hundred and two is our contract, but it's only a two-year contract, I think.
Yeah. But that's just for half of them or for both halves?
That's for full amount. Uh, the county ARPA is going to pick up the first year. Our ARPA is budgeted to pick up the second. But then as we go into long-term contracts, I think we signed a five-year to lock that rate in. I think Elizabeth did. And so that's going to, it's going to be a hundred thousand dollars a year. The other one is our
Body cams.
Taser, body cam and vehicle cams are all bought through Axon Company. And that's another thing that's going to come to council here soon, but we outright paid for one of them with ARPA money. And then we put the other ones on a plan through the company. The nice thing about those plans is as those items become obsolete, they replace them. But I think we're on a five-year contract there. Now, as we add vehicles to the fleet, we need to add those to the plan. So I just got a quote back last week. It's going to be twenty thousand dollars a year to add our latest, like seven vehicles to the plan for, for in-car cameras. So.
Yeah. So the, the investments, I believe the chief, myself, anyone sitting here probably can agree have been well worth it, but they do have continued and ongoing costs that aren't going to go away just because we just made the initial per- purchase.
We've, we've always got a subscription cost. It's, um, so we, we get the service, we've got the, the cool stuff, but it's a, a, a subscription to keep us as part of that. And so that sometimes it's hard to explain to people who don't quite grasp that. They think that once we've got the cameras, we've got the cameras and everything should be fine, but quite grasp that. They think that once we've got the cameras, we've got the cameras and everything should be fine, but it's not because those cameras are connected statewide, nationwide, regional wide, however. But we've got to pay a subscription to be part of that. Has that paid off? Yes, it has. We've done really good for other communities. Other communities can do well for us, so.
Where those fees come in is every flock camera has its own uh, cellular line where it's transmitting that signal back to us. So so you have to pay for cellular uh, service to every i- individual flock camera. And then with the um, in-car cameras and body cams, what you're paying for is storage. So we're talking about, I mean, thousands of hours of video compiled throughout the year that we're not going to buy, we'd have to have a whole room of servers to store it. So what we can do is we can upload all that to the cloud and Axon manages it on their system. And their system gives us an opportunity to, when, say, we charge somebody with a crime and we need to send that video to the prosecutor's office, we provide them with a link. And then they have a access to that one specific item in their system. And so it's it's set up. Everybody in the county is using Axon uh, now. Everyone has switched to it as far as I know, so.
And that also uh, increases the uh, IT requirements also because now we're going from, you know, the basic uses that they were using, you know, two and five years ago to now everything is digital. So now you've got a heavier load on the network and everything else going back along with security and everything else. So the trickle-down effect to this is is it's all over the place.
And the, you know, the other option to doing like a subscription would be just to buy it outright. And so some cities have chosen to do that. You you make the investment on the first year to just buy everything, all your tasers, right? And you just think, okay, well, we 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 will, we know we're going to put the money aside in order to to get those all serviced next year and the year after, but it doesn't happen. And so, or that they don't get serviced. And so in reality, while it seems expensive to enter into these long-term contracts, it ensures that we have up-to-date technology and that we keep things usable because they all have an expiration or, you know, a date at which you cannot use it anymore.
And that is very true. We found that with all of the stuff and the money spent in two thousand and eight, that it expired. And all of a sudden, tasers were outdated. We had fire equipment that was outdated. We had breathing apparatus that was outdated. And that required a tremendous amount of expense and we didn't have the money to take care of it all at the same time. And I don't know how you guys feel about firefighters going in with uh, non-certified breathing apparatus into a a smoke-filled building. I wasn't nuts about the idea. And so we had to make some some commitments and some sacrifices to make all of that happen. And it does get expensive. And we figured out, um, we sat down and did some calculations in one meeting and realized that it's probably cheaper long-term to just pay the subscription and get that stuff updated through that subscription from time to time when that was possible, make sure that our our public safety officials, I mean, fire police, that they had the best equipment that they could have at the time. And it was, it was money spent, but it ended up being a better deal, I think, so.
Any other questions on any of this?
Where can we get access to these uh, bar graphs?
I, I'll, I can send you.
Did you send them? Okay.
I can, this, so one of the reasons I I don't, I'm not a big fan of our current financial system and we are actively working on replacing it and we're in the implementation process for a new one is I I have to manually make all of these things through Excel um, by pulling raw data out of our system. And so um, it is quite time-intensive. But I can absolutely share everything with you that I have. And if you have anything in particular that you want to see a certain way, let me know and I can try and pull that for you as well.
Thank you.
Okay, next slide, please, Jackie. Okay, these are the capital purchases based on things like irregular revenues, et cetera, that are budgeted for twenty twenty-four. So there's about thirteen million dollars worth of items that are budgeted out of the various funds. Um, at this point, we've only spent one point one, almost one point two, so about nine percent. Um, but there are things that are coming in and it's just the beginning of the year. There are going to be a couple of projects added to that with our budget, our first quarter budget amendment, which we've already discussed. The Amoresco lighting update project was supposed to happen last year. Um, it started right at the end of the year and so we weren't sure if we were going to have to pay for it out of twenty twenty-three. Um, so we just need to transfer that project expenditures to twenty twenty-four. And then the fire truck interim financing, while we are getting, that we got the loan proceeds to pay for it, it wasn't expected. And we've talked about this before as well. It wasn't expected to hit the budget. So you'll see that number go in there, but it it doesn't really, it has an offsetting revenue. Any questions here?
Questions, comments?
All right, go ahead, Jack. Okay, here is our ARPA. I'm so sorry, this is tiny, and I sent this to you guys all in your email. This is basically where our ARPA money is allocated right now. How much has been spent up through the eleventh and what's left in each of the categories? So this is determined, just like everything else, by council. Some of the things, if we haven't signed a contract for it, councils sitting here can still determine how this money is spent. This is the plan that was that was put into place starting in twenty twenty-two. But actually, in twenty twenty-one, kind of, because we had medical expenses in the utility um, assistance program that had started in twenty twenty-one, but most of this expenditure started in twenty twenty-two. But these are, we can change what we want this money allocated for. And the reason for, one of the reasons for that is because we claimed the money under the revenue replacement form for for ARPA proceeds. So basically, it allows us to use this money for any governmental purpose outside of a few limited things. And so we can allocate, we we, as long as we allocate this money to expenses that have been made for general government services that happened after the beginning of COVID, we will not have to give any of this money back. So this is where, when I'm saying you guys could decide that you want the port contribution, the million-dollar port contribution, to actually, yes, let's put that out of ARPA and and let's remove one of these other things that we haven't spent money on. That is something that you guys can do at this point. But we need to get all of those things really figured out and hammered down, you know, probably by June at the latest, so that we can make sure that we get, so that we're on track to show all of the expenditures accurately. And I'm happy to answer questions on any of these items as well.
Questions or comments here?
Sorry, I know it's so small.
Again, if you look over in the um, how we determined what money was going to go where, I'm sorry. You know, there's community safe, safe community, community improvement, um, staffing for future, of course.
Yeah, those.
Like for health and safety, there's like what, four categories?
There were, there were four that we came up with after uh, the Cinco de Mayo shooting and then the utility billing and the COVID medical before. So there's actually kind of like six different categories that council determined to to put this money to. Um, the community improvement is where we have the dollars for things like recreation and the pool, um, the city hall facade, some of like the landscaping, things like that, that are just kind of for the betterment of the community in general. Um, the health and safety items were for the fire department and specific healthcare costs and things that we have done for specifically health-related issues. Community safety is pretty much everything to do with um, the police department that we've invested in. And then the staffing for the future items are those staff members that we have funded and with ARPA money for the first few years um, of those positions.
Hey, Mr. Cobine, you had questions?
Yeah, so how would you like us to go about, like, if we have any suggestions on changing this, just?
I, if you guys want to have a special meeting to discuss specifically ARPA and what you guys want to do, I think we should do that. Um, something like this, that's a workshop just for ARPA, I think would be really helpful. And I think it would make you guys help you feel like you have some control over this because I know when you start, especially for you guys who are new in council, when you start and all these decisions are made and you don't really, you know, know what they were for, it it does make it feel, I I can see how, wait, what, I I don't have any control over what's going on. You do. We just have to find a way to get together and and set the direction.
Our model for doing this before has been where we'd have a meeting to discuss this, and this has been largely involved in our budget meetings. But we don't have to do this in a budget meeting. We can have a special meeting like this, like she said. And so then Jamison would bring forward a lot of things that have been suggested or perhaps other cities are doing, uh, ideas that staff had brought forward and then bring them for council and we can look at them, we discuss them. And then we have an opportunity to come up with our own ideas as well. And sometimes they fit the categories that um, are under the requirements of ARPA and sometimes they don't. But, you know, it's always good to to try to throw some things out there and and see what will work as something that's near and dear to your heart. There may be a way that we can make that fit the ARPA requirements and and do that. Now, some of these things that she mentioned are already committed and contracted, and so there there may not be something we can do about that. But there are monies available for us to make decisions on yet, and we can, we can change a couple of things. That's not really a problem, so.
That's what I was gonna uh, ask. Um, so I'm just trying to understand it and and this is where I come to to you all just for help on that. It um, it would be good to do that. I I would take you on up on that. Um, I think just a special meeting to discuss ARPA funds um, specifically. And then, you know, we can work around suggestions. So and then, um, so for like youth programs, for example, I I'm just looking at all of these, but I'm going to pick up youth programs. Um, the allocation is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then it says the remaining allocation is a hundred and thirty-four. So like, I would love to understand like what has been committed or contracted and exactly where that's being spent at. So then if we do have suggestions, um, then we be um, make more kind of informed uh, planning and then we can bring that over to you and all of us and we're not just speculating like, where is this going to? I don't know, right?
I completely agree with you. And if you'll look at that log that you also um, received in your email that shows the actual line item, each individual expenditure, um, you'll see that there's the program name next to them and it'll sort of tell you, it it doesn't tell you the specific line item here, but it'll tell you the program, whether it's community improvement, health and safety, whatever, um, where it's coming out of on here. But for example, of recreation, I mean, we knew when the council, when the council allocated that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, there were a couple of things that the council knew they wanted to spend that money on. The summer camp was one of them, adding sports programs if we could, um, updating some of the equipment at the community center and and some of those things in order to make the community cen- center usable for more people. Um, but a lot of them, a lot of that wasn't specified. It's just an amount. And so as we're getting towards the end of our period where we need to use this, I mean, she's going to start, unless we tell her exactly what it needs to be used for, not her, I mean, not that she doesn't listen to council, but we can develop programs that specifically are used for ARPA. But at this time, everything she's doing technically is eligible as long as it has a youth focus. And so if we get to the point where we're at the end of the year and, you know, we need to allocate things, yeah, whatever's youth focused could be allocated.
Right, we we purposely left a lot of stuff um, unallocated because a need can present itself somewhere down the line that we didn't anticipate. Um, but that also works for a changeover in council that has a different priority. We want to see and, you know, since we're talking about youth programs, we want to see these types of programs for our kids. We really feel this need. Um, so yeah, that gives some space. And Trevor, you wanted to make some comments? Okay. Yeah, further questions or comments on this item?
I think it would be really good if we could um, schedule the ARPA meeting either next month or May at the latest. Because I would really like to get those things pinned down because, as I said, we can go back and we can we can allocate the million dollars to the port as an ARPA expenditure. Council just has to do do make action for that to happen. You know, and if that's what we end up doing so that we can have everything allocated, that's fine. But I don't want us to get to the, you know, past halfway through the year and not have a plan for how kind of every dollar and cent is is being spent.
Yeah, I I agree with that. I would aim for April if we can, just so we can give us that, you know, wiggle room in between before we get to June, which is kind of the ballpark. Um, target, yeah. And then if there's anything else lingering, then we can.
Seeing a lot of heads nodding on that one. So I think as council is generally in agreement with that idea, so yeah. Um, you know, we warned you advanced before when we decided to have a study session before our regular meetings that we were still going to be able to have a workshop meetings as well. So that doesn't necessarily free us up from any more meetings, but it does give us time to focus on one specific item on a workshop. And so if we want to do that in April, um, we can certainly do that, yes.
That might be the easiest way to do it. I was thinking of another retreat like this, but if everybody's available on that first Monday of April, like we normally would have been for the study sessions, maybe we could do that. What do you think, Jackie? I don't know. I'm not trying to make decisions for you. Yeah?
Monday is good.
At the normal time, the six-thirty, or do you guys want to change it to five-thirty so we have a little bit more time? Oh, shoot.
It is, it is April Fools and council has uh, has met on April Fools a number of times over the years. I believe one time we had a motion out there to the next Grand View.
Five thirty, I think, I think technically, I think usually, not technically, usually things last a lot longer than what we plan for. So I think if we can start earlier, five or five-thirty, that would be the best.
Yeah, my days available.
Spring break may matter. I mean, I mean, I'm not going anywhere. I don't know if anybody's going over spring break.
I don't have kids. Oh, wait, you do.
I I have a whole bunch, but they're not home anymore.
George has a whole bunch of kids.
If I can get it on my, if I could get something scheduled a month, I I could make it happen.
You don't have any plans with them?
Work around it.
Yeah, I'll work around it.
Let's do it.
Okay, I think five A, I think five, five A M, sorry. I think five P M would be perfect.
Five P M.
Just to get started and then get, and if we can get out early before whatever time, but.
Five P M?
There's plenty of time.
Okay.
Five P M, got it, wrote down.
Excellent.
I'll put it on my calendar.
Yay, one thing accomplished. All right, any other questions on ARPA?
I think we've discussed some.
All right.
Um, I'm looking at the the line items and I'm trying to find anything that has that says for youth programs.
It's not going to say youth programs, it's going to say community improvement, yeah.
Is there a different breakdown for them?
No, but if you, um, so you'll see that there's the account number, it's farther to the right-hand side. Anything that starts with five-seven is typically going to be either for parks, recreation, community center, those kinds of things.
Okay, thank you.
Pool, yeah.
There's a place where that's all.
And that's on that log that actually shows the individual purchases. Sorry to make it difficult. Yeah, I sent it to you, I think just this morning. All right, I think we're ready to move on. Yes? All right, revenues and expenditures, go ahead, next one. Next one, Jackie. Okay, revenues. Okay, I stole this slide out of previous budget presentations. Um, because we've been talking about this, like I said, for the past, you know, I've been here two and a half years since I got here. Um, we've been talking about how we have a need to figure out how we look at revenue. These are the basics that we have are taxes.
Okay, Jamison, I'm going to step out for a second, continue on. I've seen this slide before, so.
Um, taxes, fees for services, permits and licenses, we'll get on to that more, but this is just a reminder, what can taxes be used for? Any governmental thing within reason. Different taxes have different specifications. You can only use it for public safety or whatever else. But when we look at taxes, we have to always think about that whatever use we give to it, it has to be for the good of the entire community. We cannot use tax money that benefits an individual, one individual company, you know, one individual person, a household, not even ourselves. So we have to make sure that when we use tax money, that we are using it in a way that it benefits the entire community. Utility rates and any other fees for services in general, it has to be equitable. So these are the types of things that people are going to pay for their own usage. We can't give special rates to, except for one thing. We can give rates to low-income, disabled and retired people, um, senior citizens and disabled, low-income. Are the, that is by state law, the only thing that we can give any sort of discount to. Otherwise, we have to charge everybody the same, no matter what. It has to make sense. We don't get to negotiate a rate, a different rate for somebody over here than we give to somebody else over here. And then all the other stuff. So there's, there's. And then all the other stuff. So there's, there's the fees for like in the in Trevor's apartment, development fees. Um, building permits, uh detention services in the police department. Those are things that they. Benefit that one person, that one person needs to pay for that service. So it's not something that we're necessarily. Setting a rate for because everybody's paying for it all the time, like utility rates, but it is. It is additional work that is accomplished that is in the benefit of one individual. And that individual needs to pay for the costs of that. We can't offset that with tax money. Does that make sense to everyone? So this is one of the areas that we have historically struggled with um in in certain ways. So. Inspection fees for different projects, um. Charging or not charging different organizations for rental services or whatever, um. We have, I guess, I don't wanna say slacked, but we have, not intentionally. I don't think any of this was like intentionally against the rules. But we have, uh, we have supplemented some of those services that we've provided to other people. With tax money and utility rate money, when it should have been paid for as a. Individual service by the by the person benefiting from it. Are there any questions on that?
Questions or comments, Council? Mr. Deputy Mayor?
What what are we doing? Change the, do we have something in in motion right now to change the fees?
We've been meeting um on the director level, Ral, uh, Trevor, myself. A- all the departments, uh, and we've talked about it extensively. So we're always looking at those rates. It. It is good for us to know whether we have a council that is amenable to increasing those rates. Um, to make them more consistent with the market. You know, or what other people are charging or the actual cost of providing something. Historically. We have had a council that was not necessarily interested in increasing some of those rates because of the. The amount of low income families that we have in our area. So I think I've, I feel based on conversations that we've had that this council is more amenable to getting those fees into the right place. So I think with us knowing that, um, which is part of having this meeting, we can really start looking at those and doing those cost comparisons. More in depth and trying to find um where we can, where we can bring us up to the market.
As Jamison said that, um, you know, for the last five years, for sure, I would say that these questions have been brought forward to council over the years, especially in our budget discussions. And council has been really reluctant to charge. Fees that are similar to what some other cities are charging because of our low income population, as she's mentioned, um, it. Yeah, it it's hard for us to say, yeah, we're gonna charge you guys even more, even though you guys are low income. Um, although legally, it does appear that in some cases we are. Almost gifting of public funds if we don't do it, but yet at the same time, we don't wanna inflict any more financial pain on our community than we absolutely have to. And so that's one of those areas where it's really been. A delicate walk, trying to, you know, make sure the city's getting the revenues and we're conforming to the law appropriately, but at the same time. You know, not overburdening the members of our community. So that has been a struggle. It's really easy to go out and say, well, other cities are charging more, so therefore we should too. But we live here and these are the people we know and these are the people we see and we know what their economic situation is. And they're going to call us, but that's, I I think council has really been good about being concerned about it before somebody calls.
If I could add something.
Yes.
Um, I I I see where you're coming from, you know, we don't wanna. Burden with with more fees, but I think like these uh, you know, future developments, um. You know, it's it's the fee's gonna be coming out of development developers, right? Um, we really need to protect. Our current citizens because if we don't increase these now, then in the future, our current citizens are gonna be the ones having to pay. With extra fees in the water, extra fees in the sewer.
That is a hundred percent correct. I'd love to hear it. That's exactly what I preach. If we don't make. The person responsible for the cost, pay for that cost, then all the rest of our low income population is in it, is unknowingly paying for it. Because those fees are sup- getting supplemented.
But that's, that's the line that we walk and it has been real delicate discussions over time. Because there's that, that is actually true. And then there's the perception. And quite often we deal with the perception, um, if there's backlash, it's the perception that people are upset about less than. The actual truth and it's not always easy to explain. Why the situation benefits them long term, like this one here, you know, the way you explained it, you explained it very well and it makes sense. But it's not always the case where it's that easy to explain it to where they're actually getting a benefit from this. Fee change. So yeah, coun- council's really been concerned about our population. Um, I have to give councils, previous councils credit for that. That has been something that just came right up. There was no enticing or trying to pull that out from anybody. They just threw it right out there right away. We don't have. A population that is wealthy, we need to be very considerate of them. But you're right. I agree with you that sometimes raising these fees is actually in long term gonna save people a lot of money.
I I just wanna state, I think this is probably go- the most difficult part of any elected person's job. Is setting fees and dealing with backlash and. You can look at it all the way up and down government to the federal level where they close down the federal government because they can't decide on a budget like. You know, this is, this is the hard, hard, hard work. And so. You know, being open minded to looking at new things and considering it from all the aspects is gonna be what you guys are gonna have to do and it's gonna be difficult, but. You could do it.
Further questions or comments?
All right, I'm just appreciating the conversations. I mean, this is what. Really will get us to a good spot, right? Considering everything, thanks for the input on that. I know that we spoke about that. During the last council meeting about the development fees and stuff, so.
Yeah.
Something to definitely pay attention to and learn, cuz I'm learning too, y'all. I'm learning with, from all y'all. Um, as well, and we're just gonna take a collective effort to get us to a better place. Yeah.
And I think, I think, I think also, you know, reviewing the the uh, the budget, the way we're doing it today. And why certain things are done is is a real good learning experience and a refresher course for some of us who have been through this. Um, so I really appreciate how you're presenting it so far.
Thank you.
Yes, good job.
Try to make it understandable.
I just wanted to chime in, what, just one more second, I'm thinking about it to to um, I guess further answer uh Deputy Mayor's point. One of the first things I did when I got here was go through our municipal code. And make sure that the way we charged people and the services that we use to charge people like through either with us through our online portal. Or if it's at the counter, that it's all consistent, that everything that we are charging people is at least currently outlined in the municipal code because. It was here and there and everywhere, but I, one of my big focuses was to bring that up to date, make it consistent. That way, anyb- anybody who wanted to find it. Could. So that was, that's one of the thing, big things that Jamie said.
Maybe not the majority of the fees, but a a high amount, we're not being, we're not being charged correctly in accordance with the code. Or or like a lot of the street items weren't being, there, it's in the code that people have to pay for different things. And no one was charging it. And so going through and identifying those things and looking at other cities and figuring out where we. Where are we providing a service that benefits only one person and that person's not paying for it? It's, it's.
Well, then we had other problems with the lag time where we pass a resolution, it would take so long to get it updated in on the city website or in the city books that. Well, somebody comes in there and all of a sudden it switched. And you know, yesterday it said this much, now today it says that, what's going on here? And that's created a little bit of controversy and hardship in in people's minds too. People have been very upset about that, so.
And that's one of the benefits to changing to the resolution style for the fee code or the fee schedule that we did, we can make those changes instantaneously. But there are still fees that are built into the municipal code that we haven't found yet to rewrite that section of the code to indicate that it. Needs to get, you know, or to change the language from putting the fee there to putting it out of the resolution, so.
Mr. Beeler, you had a comment?
Yeah, the other thing that we found quite a bit, especially with the contracts and stuff is. Some of that stuff has been sitting there twenty, thirty years and nobody's looked at it. We're finding more of those too.
Right, and that's one of the things that we talked about um, early on in January of just totally going through S M C. Top to bottom and figuring out what needs to be updated. We figure that's probably a three year process. And the earlier we start on it, the better to bring that thing up to date. And obviously, the last month or so, we've had some things that kind of slowed that process down, but it still needs to be a priority that we need to go through the S M C. Thoroughly and update it, bring it up into the current century. And you know, I say that only halfway tongue in cheek because I think there's a lot of stuff that's still in there that's been hanging out since the seventies and it really needs to be looked at, so. All right, and Jamison, about how far along are you on your?
Uh, Jackie, what slide are we on of how many? I don't know, I don't have it up.
And thank you to our pizza guy.
Thank you.
I don't think there's a ton left. I think we can get through it in just about ten minutes if everybody can win.
Okay, so nobody look at the stack of pizzas over there on the right?
I'll go fast and then we can come back to it after, but at least we can, if we can get through the slides, that would be great.
All right, carry on.
And I'm ready for the next slide once you get it back up there.
Where'd it go?
There we go. Okay, so this is just more on revenue sources. Um, I, that is linked in this, in this. This PowerPoint, so I'll send you guys the PowerPoint afterwards, but M R S C has an excellent revenue guide for all cities and towns. And it basically goes through. Every single kind of revenue that cities can collect. Anything that is a tax is usually has a bunch of stipulations for how you spend it, how much we can collect. And a lot of things we are at the statutory limit for. So like, we can't increase our regular sales tax anymore. Because we're already taxing at the amount that we're allowed to. But there are other little portions of sales tax that we could add. If we do use it for specific things or, you know, do different things, so. There are things that we can review in there and if council has a time, it's a very long document, so I apologize for sending you something so huge. But as you go through it, if you guys see something that you're like, oh, my gosh, we should absolutely do this, this would be a game changer. Call it out to us cuz it's a, it's a huge thing and it was most recently updated. They updated every year, so this, this version is from November of twenty twenty three. Because the laws change constantly and so there will be a new tax added or a new stipulation or a restriction removed. That we don't necessarily know about. Um, so it's a great resource to use. Um, and like I said, it's linked in there, but you can go. To M R S C directly and just in the search button, put revenue guide and you'll find it there as well. Um, so again, the basics are of of the fees and charges are taxes as we talked about. Um, licenses and permits, charges for goods and services, fines and penalties. Intergovernmental, which is basically grants and state shared revenue. And then other things that we may get, donations, interest income, if we, if we take out new debt, um. And then just some random other things that come up from now, from time to time that we don't necessarily think about. Are there any questions on any of these? One of the things I did wanna point out, one of the taxes that we do have, that the council has complete control over. Is the city owned utility tax. So the city council is allowed to set the rate. For the tax on our city owned utilities. So the city owns and taxes water, sewer and garbage. And those are our own utilities that we are allowed to tax by R C W and we can set the tax at any amount we would like. But it's a tax on ourselves, if that makes any sense. So we're basically setting a be- a business and operating tax on ourselves. That we're gonna have to pay to ourselves. But it's, it is, and then it's included in the utility rate to the customers. So right now, our our tax rate is set at twenty nine percent, which I know sounds absolutely huge, but it's already built in as. Part of something that people pay on the regular basis. I will say when I was in Tappanish, it was thirty three percent. Um, this is unfortunately, unfortunately, fortunately an option, but unfortunate that this is how it is. Is one of the most common ways that small communities like ours have had to balance their general fund budgets. Since two thousand eight, when state shared revenues went way, 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 way down. So the state used to share a lot more of their portion of sales tax and property tax and things with individual cities. But when they stopped doing that in two thousand eight, cities had to find ways to still support the general fund expenditures. And this is one of the ways that they did it. And so up and down the valley. Uh, maybe not Union Gap cuz they have so much retail, but I'm pretty sure everybody's utility tax rate is, you know, up there. Close to thirty percent. But that is an option for us when we look at our general fund budget shortfall. This is one of the things that can be done just by council action to increase that rate that can create revenue into the general fund. Go ahead.
Um, so I just had a note and I know, so since we're talking about uh revenue and um bringing in revenue. Um, I I know that I had asked about that grant writing position, the city had a grant writing position, I think it was opened up. I think you and Elizabeth might have mentioned that nobody applied, so then those to it, or maybe nobody was hired and then the funding for that went away.
It was initially funded with um ARPA as one of the staffing for the future positions. And we had it open for, I wanna say, six months and we got no qualified applicants. Um, so Trevor came back and said, you know, there's a different position in my department that I could really use that could help. Operations and that was the planning position. So we basically morphed that into the planning position that we have now. So there is not um a grant writer position that is authorized in the city right now.
Do we think that's essential maybe to reconsider and like bring back again? And maybe we can have that during our ARPA discussion, but like, um, you know, just. There, I know there's so much money out there through the Department of Ecology, I mean, you name it, right? I mean, but like, how could we make sure that we're tapping into these pockets of money?
We are gonna talk about grants later, um, after this.
Okay.
Um, later, it'll probably be this afternoon cuz look what time it is, it's already twelve. So we probably can talk about that at that time, but there are multiple ways to do it with it, either we could have somebody in house. Or we could hire consultants, um, H L A does a lot of grant writing for us. Um, or things like that, but grants, it, you do have to consider that every grant has strings attached in one way or another. And so sometimes taking money actually costs more than it is worth. But that's a discussion I think the chief is gonna lead um when we get there.
I I I also have a lot to say about that, but I will, I will leave that for that discussion.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, I think unless anybody has questions, we can move on. We're almost there, okay? So this is uh expenditures. So this is where we're gonna look at our general fund operations and maintenance shortfall. So our citywide operations and maintenance. And keep in mind that the philosophy we use when budgeting, realistic revenues. And pessimistic expenditures. So we are often going to look like we're operating at a deficit. And it doesn't usually pan out that way. In fact, it hasn't panned out that way any year since I've been budgeting this way. But for the budget purposes of what you put on paper, based on your conservative to realistic. Estimates of revenue and your pessimistic estimations of expenditures. When the budget is initially passed on paper, it looks like it's operating at a deficit for just maintenance and operation. So this is just looking at maintenance and operation costs and those regular revenues that support it. Um, so other funds, citywide, so this is our enterprise funds and our special revenue funds. Of that total amount that we have up there. Their revenue is eighteen point six million and the operations and maintenance costs sixteen point nine. So they are basically supporting that general fund deficit. In one way or another. Um, that money is not being spent by the general fund, so I I don't mean to say that in a, we're using it inappropriately, we're not. But when you look at the budget on paper and you look at the very, very bottom line, where it, it doesn't show that the revenues and expenditures are off when you look at all the funds together. This is one of the reasons why it looks like, oh, it's not that bad. Because our enterprise funds are doing what they're supposed to be doing, which is, well, except for the water fund, but we'll talk about that later. Are, which is making sure that there is enough money built into those rates to cover for future capital and development costs. And so that is, we want that money, we want that on an annual basis because that's what we use for match funds. For grants that we may get or for capital improvements that we absolutely have to make. So it'd be nice if we could do that in the general fund at some point too. At this point, we're pretty far off. As you can see here in the red. So the general fund is fifteen point three for revenue and for operations seventeen point six. And that's a two point three million dollar difference. Now. Keep in mind, we have a ton of open police positions and all of that, but this is being balanced this year. Because we know we have four million dollars from the Monson property coming in. In my opinion, the only way to fix this problem is to either eat, well, three, three options. Either completely cover it with revenues by increasing revenues that much to cover it. Option two, cutting expenditures completely, not increasing revenues. Or option three, finding a way to do both. And I think that that's what we need to do, but it's gonna be very hard work to get there. Um, and as we talked about before, the biggest expense for the general fund, close your ears again, is the police department. Um, you could cut all of the finance, all of the recreation. All of the, I think, and all of the municipal court. And that would cover that thing. But making cuts in a lot of these other departments is not going to get us there. Unfortunately, so these are things to consider as we look at the budget. And as we, as you think about, like we discussed earlier, what do you consider essential? Which things do you need to make sure are funded? You know, what are your priorities as a council to ensure that we get funded? Some of them, we don't have a choice. The municipal court, we don't have a choice. We absolutely have to fund that by law. And it's expensive. Same with the police department really, but you know, the amount of staff we have, those are things that you can consider. The technology, those are things you can consider. But, you know, there's not, there are certain things that we can't cut and there are certain things that we can, but it all involves. A lot of discussion. So I am able for questions if you guys have them.
Questions or comments from Miss Warner? Miss Warner, can you clarify something for me? I know the state in their, in their finance calls water and sewer that calls those enterprise funds. Um, in our city budget, we don't call them enterprise funds, do we?
We do.
We do now? Okay, at one time we didn't.
They are.
We had a different.
Fund is a category, um, for any, any fund that starts with a four hundred. It's basically, an enterprise fund is, is a standalone fund that has to support itself with rates and fees. So it's, it operates like its own little business.
Right, I understand what an enterprise funds is. I just thought we had a different name for it in our.
Well, the state auditor, these, these names are prescribed by the state auditor's office, so they may have called it something different in the past. I feel like maybe there was, but I can't think of anything off the top of my head right now, but yeah.
Okay, just curious about that because I remember one time I didn't see enterprise funds in there. I mean, I saw the four hundred funds, but I, they had, they had a different name. Mr. Beeler?
And I'm just curious, I understand why the city owns, you know, water. We treat the water, pump it out, handle everything and sewer, of course, we collect it and process it. But we don't really own the garbage company, we're just a middle person.
We own the utility and we contract the services. So we own that utility. If we wanted to go and buy garbage trucks and hire staff to do garbage collection ourselves, we could do that. We have the right to do that. Because right now, we just contracted out with professional services. But as far as like, who owns that utility, it's us.
That's, that's something I haven't ever really considered. But that's the one that we can also tax up to the twenty-nine percent.
Right, so we can still, we technically still own that, even though somebody else provides it to us. So we can increase that utility tax rate, just like we could on any of the other city-owned utilities. I'm not suggesting that we go in there and start charging this like forty-five percent. That is not what I'm suggesting. But it is eligible for that because we own it.
Have we ever looked at starting our own garbage company and then contracting out to?
The first year I was here, we actually had quite a few meetings about, um, and we were in con, contract negotiations with Yakima Waste. Um, in tw- twenty twenty-one, I think we passed the new contract in twenty twenty-two where we sort of, it was at the beginning of twenty-three. Where we changed the way the garbage rates work. Um, and there was a lot of discussion. There are grants and loans out there you can get for things like garbage trucks. But it is, it's an expensive undertaking and so it would be a big decision that would wanna be sussed out for, for quite a long time, I think.
If I remember correctly, Grandview, as the city owns their garbage collection, all their trucks have the city of Grandview on the side of it.
And Tappanish does as well.
We, we could do that, but owning and maintaining those trucks would be really expensive.
Yakima does as well. I think those are the only three in the valley that do. Mapton, no, they use Yakima Waste as well.
I have a question. Do, do we know what the difference would be? Like expenditure was like to own it and the current?
For the garbage fund?
Yeah, I mean, why is it that, I mean, obviously Grandview's doing it, Tappanish doing, Yakima's doing, they have to.
I, that, that is, that would take a very in-depth amount of research, um, based on the cost of equipment, staffing. Uh, dumping fees, mileage, gas, there's just so many things. Right now, all of that is encompassed into that contract. So, um, it's not an easy question to answer. It may even be something, if we were really looking at it, that we would hire a consulting firm. To look at for us.
Is there a way to get ahold of like Yakima and ask them, how much do you guys think?
Yeah, I, and we can pull comparables from, from all over the place. But as far as um, doing that work. Uh, we don't have enough staff right now, I don't think to um, do that in-house necessarily.
The, the startup cost, the upfront cost would be huge with the trucks, the garbage cans.
Some grants available.
There are, um, I think it's mostly loan, but there are, there are funding ways available to get that equipment, that initial equipment. Um, that we were looking at. I think one of the, I think what we used for the fire truck was the local loan program through the Department of Revenue. And, and, or sorry, the treasurer's office. And um, that one funds things like garbage trucks as well, so there, there are ways to do it, but. Yeah.
Okay.
All right, next slide please. I know we all wanna eat. I said ten minutes and I lied. Okay, so we talk often about our cash flow, our minimum fund balance requirements. I just wanna provide this to you. There are two different things here. There is the minimum liquid assets. This is actual cash that we need to maintain as spendable in the bank all the time in order to pay our bills. Regardless of if we have a month that we have lower revenue and higher expenses or whatnot. This usually happens in January because we're paying our insurance and a bunch of other things right up front at the beginning of the year. And so we get, you know, it gets a little close and we're like, ah, and actually in February this year, or no, it's the beginning of March this year. I was having a small heart palpitation because we had a, um, we had a bond mature on the eighth. And it's two point five million, which is great, that came back into our bank account, but we had to write that check to the port. And so I was kind of worried like, oh, my God, is one gonna come in before the other does? We're fine. Um, cuz I like over worry, but anyway, so those are just, that's, that's something when I'm talking about what we have liquid, what we have in our cash accounts. That is what that is for. Anything outside of that, we can invest in bonds. And we do that in a way so that it's, we call it a ladder. So basically, we can purchase bonds for a certain amount of years so that they mature every six months or. Uh, you know, every year so that we know we constantly have an inflow of some of this savings cash to come in. Um, and then we can choose to reinvest or to use it, which is what we're doing now because a lot of this is ARPA spending. And things like that, that we don't have a different revenue source coming in, we already receive the revenue, so. And then there's the minimum fund balance. So this is for our operational funds, our operations and maintenance. We wanna make sure that we have at least sixty days of operations in the fund balance. So this isn't about bank accounts. This is about the actual fund having cash and investment money available to pay for its individual expenses. So the numbers are pretty close when it comes to the bottom line. We wanna keep about five point eight. Well, technically, we really only need to keep about two and a half million liquid, but we keep a lot more than that just because I don't like to run that close. Um, I used, I usually try to keep about five point five. And then our minimum fund balance amount is that five point seven. So they seem like the same thing, but they're not. So when we're having conversations and I'm talking about a minimum fund balance, what I'm talking about there is that required operational amount. That we need in each fund. That's where the water fund right now is struggling. So our water fund minimum fund balance should be about five hundred thousand dollars, but I think at the end of twenty twenty-three, it was in the twos. So it was about half of where it needed to be. And then, but, but that doesn't mean that we didn't have cash in the bank to pay for those things. Does that make sense? Sorry, that's, this is a technical slide. Okay, you can move on and we'll go through these really fast. Okay, so this is our fund balance history. So this is not necessarily cash in the bank. This is how much fund balance each fund had for ten years. So this is everything. This is all the funds. That big orange chunk at the bottom, that's the ARPA funds. So if you go to the next slide, Jackie. Oops, next one. Sorry, that's just the numbers. Okay, here's our general fund with that ARPA chunk, right? So. The ARPA was sitting there at the end of twenty-two. That is what made our general fund balance quite a bit higher, but that doesn't mean that we were necessarily below our required general fund balance. But for the end of twenty-three, we are dipping down and a lot of that is because of some of those subscription costs. Those, those operating cost increases that have not been funded for the long term. They have, they were funded like initial costs with ARPA, but the ongoing expenses haven't been funded yet. I don't think this is gonna be a long-term problem. I do think we can solve it and this is just an estimate right now. Um, because I haven't finalized the twenty twenty-three. I have, we have to file that report at the end of April of May each year. Um, so I'm still going through an auditing to make sure I get it as accurate as possible. Uh, any questions on this? You probably have a lot more, but let's just move on. Okay, so the next one, sorry, is our, one more. Yeah, yeah, okay, this is our special revenue debt and capital funds. You can see these got started to get nice and healthy. Um, after about twenty twenty and they're very healthy. So this is our street fund, but our street fund is supported by our general fund. Um, we, we, I think transferred about seven hundred thousand dollars into our street fund this year. So if our street fund wasn't in its own special revenue fund, it may be at, you know, it, it may not look as good, but. Um, it does get supported by the general fund, but the other funds are like our real estate excise tax. Um, our public safety, our crime prevention funds. Um, and those are all doing relatively well. And some of those police costs that we have currently in our general fund. May be able to be offset um, by transferring some of those expenditures to our public safety fund. Or a crime prevention fund, but it would depend on what types of things they were, whether or not they could be spent out of that fund. Any questions on this?
Go ahead, Miss Me.
The money you have in bonds, is that reflected on these numbers too?
Yes, all the money is, that, that's where I'm talking about. These are the fund balances, not anything to do with actual money. Yeah. The general bond fund is, we have that, we have a, it's a debt fund. We have an outstanding bond. Bond just means something alone that we pay on every year. And so that fund is just there to transfer money in and out, honestly, so that we pay that amount. It's funded with property tax. Okay, go ahead. All right, this is our enterprise and internal services fund. So these are the funds that have to be self-supported with the rates and charges. The um, water fund is. The gray one at the very bottom, so you can see it was really healthy for a while. And then in the last couple of years, well, in twenty, we, we did the Sixth Street Project, which was that big dip. Um, the rates probably should have been adjusted back in twenty seventeen because we started to go down there. Um, I didn't work here at the time. I'm not sure if our water system plan didn't call for it or if there were.
No, there was actual discussion about it. We, we talked about it and council resisted raising water rates and so they didn't.
Okay.
But there was a council member who did bring it forward that they could structure our water rates differently, but yeah, it wasn't.
Yeah, so that's kind of where the problem began. And then we maintained a, an okay fund balance, I think just by trying to keep a real tight lid on expenditures. But then we had this capital project um, of about a million dollars self-funded for the Sixth Street mains. And that dropped us down to this piddly little. Two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars is what we're estimated at.
Oh. Um, would a, if we wouldn't have self-funded it, it would have been a healthy?
I would say it would be healthier, long-term, plan-wise, as far as funding capital projects and stuff. I think we still would have needed to um, adjust our rates upwards to make sure that we were maintaining enough for future capital projects. Because a few, a cap, one capital project that we have to self-fund should not drop a fund balance like this. If we had set our rates appropriately. Um, it would have been, we would have been much better off.
So at this point, so at this point, what we need to do then is, as you said, adjust the rate.
For water, absolutely, and that's, uh, the, I was disappointed that HLA did not talk about rates when they gave the water system plan. Um, the other day and they said, well, we'll wait till we get the information back from the Department of Health and then we present the, the thing to you. Because I think they were scared to talk about rates, but I mean, I, I believe it calls for like a ten percent rate increase for the next three years. And it's, it's, it's a lot. It is a lot. So when we get that back from the Department of Health, we'll come and present that to you guys, but.
We ran into this once before with the utility tax rates that we were keeping them as incredibly low as we possibly could and then all of a sudden we had to just make a huge jump. And we had agreed or council had agreed at that time that we were going to do incremental increases in order to keep from having to do a huge jump and hitting people really hard. So now what we're looking at, the same thing with our water rates. We kept our water rates lower than they should be for a long time. And now our jump is gonna be pretty large and painful because it's gonna get it up to where it would have been had we done it right the first time. But it's gonna be huge jumps, it's gonna be very noticeable.
And you can see that actually, um, so you, you guys did not increase the rates in twenty seventeen. And so you started having that down slope, but in twenty nineteen is when they started doing that automatic up to six percent that the city manager can do. And so I believe they've done a small increase every year to, just to try to keep that fund afloat. Um, so we have been increasing rates just to that six percent that the city manager is allowed to do on an annual basis. And I think it was only five percent this last year, just based on what we did across the board, so we don't single it out. Questions on this? I think this might be the last one.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Um, if there's no objection, let's take a recess for a while and enjoy. This pizza that's rapidly cooling over here and uh, be back in session. How long do we need?
How long are we here?
We're done.
So we're done?
I need to be at work in Yakima at five. I will be there.
Okay.
Need to be, I need to go to Yakima too.
Thirty minutes gives us until one.
Well, let's do that.
You wanna go thirty minutes? Objection? All right, we'll be back at one o'clock.
Wow, that's a lot.
We'd like to keep things moving and catch up on a couple of phone calls in the meantime. She called me a jerk earlier. She'll get my revenge now. Okay, we are. We are back in session. Hope everybody enjoyed their pizza. All right, so we've covered our budget review and revenue and expenditure overview. Uh, next item is item G, our grant overview. And we'll ask our interim city manager to start out on that one.
So grants are handled differently throughout the city and there are a number of different types of grants out there. So there are grants that we have to match on and uh, so we select those carefully depending on what the match is. Um, there are grants that don't have a match that look good on the front end, but there is a, a ton of reporting on the back end. Um, and that, sometimes that reporting can extend over a couple of years period depending on the life of the grant. But um, for the police department specifically, we um, have a couple of different grants we go after regularly. And usually those are for equipment. Um, so we've bought, um, ballistic helmets off of grants, ballistic shields. Um, we've put money towards National Night Out pretty much every year um, through grants and. Uh, something else, but I can't, can't think off the top of my head. We've got uh, trap, so we have a lot of times officers will go out and work traffic safety overtime, that'll be on a grant. Um, earlier it was mentioned about uh, tickets and the, actually the city gets a very small portion. If, if you get a speeding ticket in the city, like maybe ten dollars, a lot of that money goes to the state court system, things like that. But a portion goes to the Traffic Safety Commission for traffic safety. And then that's uh, distributed amongst different police departments and sheriff's offices around the state. And so we use a portion of that money for traffic safety overtime, whether it be seatbelt emphasis, speed emphasis, DUI emphasis. Uh, motorcycle safety emphasis where they have a, a couple of week uh, periods set for motorcycle safety. So that's free overtime for us. What we do is the officer goes out, works the overtime, fills out uh. Uh, a sheet on how many contacts they had, what they contacted for, how many tickets they had, that's turned over to the state and they'll reemb- uh, a sheet on how many contacts they had, what they contacted for, how many tickets they had. That's turned over to the state and they'll reimburse their overtime. So um, those are the main grants at the police department. I think every uh, department is going to kind of have something different because everybody goes about them differently currently. So those are the ones that we go after at the police department. So I don't know, Cameron, do you want to talk about grants much or?
Sure. So um, the fire service, again, we have a lot of different grants that we have uh, taken opportunities through um most recently, the ones that we've looked into have been uh, health-based just due to the uh, the recent pandemic. One and two that we found as far as um, Chief Lim had mentioned, a lot of grants come with um, outside stipulations, money matching. And so these most recent grants have been the ones that have required the least amount of either match and or uh, demanded reporting. But some of the more common grants you'll see in the fire service are, one is AFG or Assistance to Firefighters Grant. Um, that is oftentimes used for equipment. Um, they, when you do declare or do, excuse me, apply for the grant, you do have to declare what the intended use of those funds is. It's, it's not a free-for-all at that point. If you say, we're using this grant to purchase hazmat equipment, it has to be used for hazmat equipment. There's no uh, ifs, ands, or buts there. The other one you might hear pretty commonly in the fire service is called a SAFER grant. Um, SAFER is an acronym, but I, it'll lose me at this point in time. Um, but the issue with the SAFER grant there is um, it is for new staffing. A lot of departments have applied for it to kind of help towards ongoing um, staffing costs with that, you know, retention, overtime, so on and so forth. Um, but that grant is not for that, is to add staffing. The kicker with the SAFER grant is that when you, when you agree to the terms of that grant, those terms always include that the department will retain those positions and build it into their budget. So for example, if we received a SAFER grant to hire four firefighters, we would most likely receive full funding for those four firefighters the first two years, half the funding the remaining two years, and then it's up to the city or the department in that case to continue to fund those positions uh, from then on out. So we have been a little hesitant to go that route just because again, you know, there's that long-term cost upfront. So those are the big ones that we see. We did um have a recent meeting with a couple of different groups. One is Greater Health Now. Um, that is a group that works with um, farm workers clinic, uh, neighborhood health and the other entity, lose me, I apologize. Um, but pretty much trying to guild, uh, build the um uh, a liaison between us and our community, especially with those trying to minimize um, emergency visits and also provide healthcare to those who uh, have it, but don't necessarily have the resources to acquire it or at least get pointed in the direction for that. So um, we've used those funds to try and build up some of those programs. So those are the big ones that we see and we've been continuing to look at. Um so unless you guys, yeah, that's what I have as far as fire grants, unless you guys have any questions.
Questions for the chief? Yes, sir.
Do you have any funds right now that you, that you have available to you?
So we actually just wrapped up the use of our funds from our uh, Greater Health Now and Health Commons Project, which are two separate ones. Uh, the Health Commons Project was geared towards COVID testing. Um, we still do have the uh, resources from those funds, but as far as the actual cash funds, if you will, those have been utilized. Um, and same with the uh, the Greater Health Now, uh, we've used those um, as well to help uh, cover the costs of some EMS expenses. So uh, at this point, I do not believe in Jameson, if I'm wrong, I don't believe we have any additional grant funding coming in at this time.
Was there, what was that grant, that FEMA grant? Was that what you guys used to purchase the turnouts and stuff?
Correct, and that was the AFG grant.
And that one's done too?
That is correct, as of the first of this year, to my knowledge, yes.
This one.
And then the other funding that we were getting was the HRSA money, which was part of COVID funding. And so we got the last of that in twenty twenty-two, so I'm still reporting on it, but I think that's all. It's been paying for overtime wages, I think, to a certain amount. I can't remember off the top of my head, but I can get that information for you guys.
And one thing I didn't mention, it's, it's not technically by a grant by any means, it's a reimbursement, but you might have heard of this mention on point, G E M T, which is Ground Emergency Medical Transport. In essence, what it is, it's an application of very, very, did I say very? Lengthy application uh, that we submit every year for um, in essence, it helps cu- uh, cost recovery for the, the loss that we take on Medicare and Medicaid. Um, so we actually hire a consulting company. It is, like I said, it is the most elaborate application I've really ever seen in my lifetime for any sort of funding. But anyways, um, we do put in for that and so far have received that the last at least four or five years, Jameson?
Um, I think we started receiving it in twenty nineteen. Um, or maybe we even received a very small amount in twenty eighteen for fund year twenty eighteen. The, the obnoxious thing about this money is we, it is, we get it after the, after the fiscal year to reimburse us for costs we lost. But then we have to wait for the federal government and the state to audit the funds that we received. And so we may have to return anything that they determine we don't have. And so this is one of the reasons why we have a pretty big fund balance sitting in the ambulance fund because we've received money for these grants. Um, or not grants, but the, we've received this cost recovery. Um, but the been unwilling really to spend it until we know how much. So just uh, I think the most recent year that they've just approved their final for was for twenty twenty. I have just did a um
We actually just wrapped up.
spreadsheet.
One, I think we're.
But did they give us, I don't think they've gotten, oh, did they give us a final?
No, we're going into audit for twenty-one.
Okay, so after this audit, it's usually around this time, they're going to send us a letter with their final determination that will tell us if we have to pay any money back from what we received in twenty twenty-one. For fo- for fund year twenty twenty-one that we received in twenty twenty-two.
Second half of twenty-two, yeah.
Right.
So it sits in.
And so then if, what, after we've paid back anything we owe, then we can spend the rest of that money. So this is money that we've been using to spend on the ambulances that we've purchased now. Because it's been building up as capital resources in that fund um, in order to cover those costs.
As Jameson said, we, we sit it there just because what we do is we don't want to spend it and then have them come back like, oh, we gave you too much, you owe us this money back. And I just be like, ah, so um yeah, so is there a follow-up question on that? I'm sorry, sir.
So I know we city purchased the Tucker Sellers um, for the fire department or for plans, right? Was that purchased with the grant or how was that purchased?
So that was, that acquisition was not something that the fire department was part of. We were part of the conversations for planning with it. But I, I honestly have no information on the acquisition portion.
It's not attached to any grant?
No, sir.
Thank you.
That was purchased with um, a split between the city's general fund because it has the water source that supports the park. Um, the real estate excise tax funds, which are what we get for, for tax when people sell their houses that has to be used on certain types of capital things, including parks, et cetera. And then a portion of the water fund and the fire fund because the intent was at some point to house um, a satellite fire station. So we did use some of the money from the general fund and the ambulance fund to pay for that. So we do need to at some point put a fire station on it or the general fund will have to pay that back to anything, for anything we took out of the annual ambulance fund. Um, but then the water fund also paid for a portion because as Trevor was talking about earlier, there was a plan to sort of loop that water utility back through there to provide redundancy and redundancy and get that looped. So hopefully um, we'll be able to do something through that property.
Okay, I, I have a.
Go ahead, Ms. Proffler.
Okay, okay. Um, and I remember Elizabeth mentioning that, that Tucker Sellers, there was a conversation about it, uh, housing animals or like moving some of it or will the pets that we have here to there, is that something that's still in conversation? You just, you know, you just mentioned that habit, like the, the fire, something has to be attached to it or the fire station or fire operations to be included, but is that something that's still?
So.
Are we still planning?
Go ahead.
I, I would advise against that. I know that that's something that Elizabeth brought up, but the, the building, first off, it would ruin the building. By the time you put dogs in there, they're, you know, using the restroom in there. And then the, the building is nowhere up to speed for animals. It doesn't have the ventilation and all the stuff that's required for animals. So um I know, some people have a big heart for animals. But that's not always, doesn't mean we can just stick them anywhere. I mean, you've seen what we've had to do to makeshift do here. Um I, I would advise against that building. It'll ruin the building, I think, so. Um, and you can see from the conversations how difficult some of these grants are as far as the reporting and everything on them. But they, they look great or you're going to get free money, but that's not necessarily always the case by the time you put all the work in and you're reporting on it, like here's one we may have to pay back for the fire department. Here we are two years later, so.
Um, well, that's kind of what I wanted to talk about a little bit in going out and looking for a qualified grant writer. It's that this, this grant writer has to take into account police services, fire services, development services, financial services, park services, public work services, garbage service. I mean, they got to know everything. And it's very, very difficult to find somebody who is that in tuned with every single department and the way that a city functions. Um, which is, I think, why we went, why I went back and revisited the planning position because then we can work and more or less focus and do a deep dive on because more or less, in my experience working with police and fire departments, they like to handle their own grants. And that's, I don't know if that's but, but typically that's, that's.
He's on.
I appreciate the transparency.
Yeah. No, I, I know, but um, so with the planning position, we can, we can we can work with HLA our partners. We can go after those RCO grants, those park grants when they come up. Um, which we have done, we are doing, we have one right now. I think there's approximately uh, seventy thousand dollars left in it right now that we're spending on park maintenance. Um, we can go after our plant, our planning grants through the Department of um, Commerce, which is, we have a, we have one right now for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And we'll have another one coming up pretty soon for a comprehensive plan. The next year, the following year for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We can we can coordinate those efforts with, with development, with public works, with the building and, and permitting side of things. That's, and that's kind of where I, I kind of thought that planner position might serve the city overall better. Instead of trying to coordinate between police and fire and, you know, so, and sometimes grants aren't available. So um, it, it, it all depends, whereas in the world of planning and permitting, there's always something to do to prepare for the next step. So that was kind of the thought process on, on um, going forward with that at that time.
And that's something Sydney's working on, correct?
I.
Yeah. She posted something about getting something, a grant approved and she was pretty excited about it.
Yeah, yeah. So, so there's some stu-, yeah, there's some stuff that we're working on right now. There's even stuff that she's working on um, as far as record retention goes. Um, she's been working separately with um, IT and um, I don't know if she's made her way over to, to Jackie's office yet, but um, for records retention and just trying to help our, our office get um, better organized with all the you know, the hundred years of permitting history that's just sitting there. Um, so it's, yeah, it's, it's something that we are actively working on.
Okay, that's great. I really like that. She was able to do that. So, so that's exciting.
Other questions?
Any other grants that?
And the, so just to follow up on the G E M T stuff, the Ground Emergency Turnover. We've started receiving money in twenty eighteen. Um, it looks like they didn't send us the final, final decision on that until twenty twenty-two. Where we had to pay back uh, about six thousand dollars, but we received a hundred and sixty-five. So we got to keep about a hundred and sixty thousand. For twenty nineteen, they gave us originally three hundred and seven thousand. In that year, they found that they could actually give us more. So in twenty twenty-two, they sent us an additional six thousand dollars. And then for twenty twenty, they originally sent us four thousand, four hundred, or no, sorry, four hundred and forty-two thousand. And then they determined that we did need to pay them back three thousand five hundred. So the amounts at this point that we're having to pay back are, are miniscule, but until we get that final decision, um, we don't want to spend that money. So the total amount that we have had sitting in there that we are now able to spend, that we're spending on ambulances and stuff, is nine hundred and thirteen thousand. And then we've received money for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two at this point. Um, which totals about nine hundred and eighty thousand that we also have sitting there, but we're not spending that yet until we get those decisions.
Roll, did you want to add anything to the grant stuff?
Yes, I just wanted to share just the way Public Works deals with grants as well. Is that, just like Trevor was mentioning, is that there is a match to, to these grants. And um, depending how many grants you apply for, you also have to have that match, that fund needs to be able to have those funds also to match these, these, these uh, matches. So we have to also be careful how much we're applying for because although there is funds out there, it sounds good, i- i- you know, you apply, you already had three of them already that you applied for. Um, so you have to be careful with that as well. Um at the other end of it too, there is requirements of you to, to, to make sure that you, everything falls into that too. Um we also, like right now, we have an ecology grant that I, last time, I think at the last council meeting it came up. Um, one of the payments that's been going on probably from the last uh, wastewater treatment plan upgrade. Um, so that was typically upgrades uh, for wastewater facilities are done with portion of that is through ecology grants. Um, they invest a lot of money in that because we need wastewater facilities. So uh, right now on this next uh, wastewater upgrade that we're thinking about doing, part of that's going to be loan, part of that is going to be, uh, we applied for an ecology grant, which is going to be for an upgrade of the um, headworks there, a building, uh, some of the, the UV system, a couple lift stations. So there's a lot of components part of with that grant. Um, just like the RCO grant that we're working through right now, we have also a stormwater grant for public outreach or for some equipment. Um, so they also have restrictions what you can use it for. For example, that one, we can't use it for construction, which sometimes that's what we need, but we can't use it for that. So um, but that's, that's just my experience on working some of these grants.
Usually ecology is going to give you half loan, well, half grant and half forgivable, or half loan and half forgivable loan, sorry. So it's like grants, that portion's like grant. Um, and so, yeah, I think the one that we're paying on currently, that was like that three hundred thousand dollar payment. I think that one, like I said, is up in twenty thirty-two. And so we'll take on this new one um, that we'll have as well, but those are incredibly low interest rate grants.
Yeah, they're typically, yeah, like one point some percent.
I think that it's less than one percent on the current one.
Yeah.
Or actually, I think it might be a zero percent.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Roll, do you want to talk about uh, when we determine a project? On, how many projects do you look for grants on and how do you go about that?
Well, it, it kind of depends on what's going on. Sometimes there is an emergency and so that emergency is going to cost us some money. And so the first thing we do is look out there and see if there's a grant out there that's going to help us with that because there may not been a fund for it. We didn't have a budget for that. And so now it's an emergency. But then second is two, is, is going to be the timeframe to get the, the money. Sometimes uh the, the, some middle and the weight and, you know, we're looking at, we wouldn't see nothing anyways for a year and a half for it. So then we have to, that's what kind of, you know, kind of prioritizes what fund we're going to go with. Um, and then of course, what match is going to be required. In some cases, there, there's a zero match, but there might be some end to that that maybe isn't also very pleasing, but uh but that's how we kind of prioritize uh, uh.
How many of your projects do you think you take out to uh, HLA to see what's out, available out there?
Well, when it comes to the grants, they help us with, with pretty much all of them. They, they're, they're good at knowing what's out there already and, and applying for them and they, they have staff that's keeping track of those deadlines. So they're constantly looking at that and, and, and letting us know, hey, there's a grant coming out. This is, you know, this is the deadline. It, it may be good for this project that we have that's coming up, um, especially with our, with our future plants. So again, with anything like that, we have to start way in advance in order to be set for that for the, when the time comes.
When we go through the budget process with HLA for each budget cycle, they present us with a document basically that shows every project that they have that is in process and in development and future projects. And then they also give us usually a list of potential grants that can cover some of those future projects based on our waters or sewer system plans or our streets or whatever. And then we build into the budget the ones that have like the cost for applying for a grant that may match with that so that we have that available and, and they do that work for us.
So the, like six-year plan for streets? HLA knows ahead of time what we're looking at doing for six years into the future. So they can keep an eye on grants and they might say, hey, that year three project, we can fund now because there's a grant available for it. And that's what they, they keep roll upprised on that.
And, and that's how we, we have these projectories going forward is, is we, we have so many state capital projects that we're wanting to do. But we also kind of have them set in a priority. But then also we, we're also looking at the funding, what's going to be out there. And sometimes that will, might move a project from, from third to first just because the funding that came up, something changed and, and made something available and we're going to move it up. Or it could be something in, within the city that has changed uh, in the, you know, in the last two, three years that maybe we're going to switch that around as well. uh in the, you know, in the last two, three years that maybe we're going to switch that around as well.
Well, it was also, yeah, there's, I don't know if there's out any, uh any time that I've ever experienced where we're not on, kind of on the same page as either our, our, um H L A or whoever we're working with um to, to look for grants. I think we're, we're all pretty much aware of what's out there usually at all times. Um there might be some rare instances, but what I also wanted to talk about was um in the world of development and housing and the way some of the, a lot, quite a few of those grants work is um City of Sunnyside is not a, not a, we don't, we're not a housing provider. We work with developers to, to build housing. We work with them in permitting. Um oftentimes, if they want to pursue any grants that are tied to development, um it's going to be on the developer to, to acquire those grants and implement those grants. But there's usually things within those grants. They don't want attached to their development, so they won't pick them up. Even though they're out there, they'll look, they'll be okay. There's, there aren't many of them that unless they specialize in a certain type of housing development, they may not pick them up, they may overlook it, they may tell a partner, like one of their development partners about it, but they may not want it. So it just kind of depends what their, what their goal is, uh what they're trying to achieve, how they want to work with the city. So sometimes we can offer them everything on a silver platter and they go, no, we're not going to touch that right now. So.
Anyone else want to talk about their grants? I think that's what we got.
Okay.
I was wondering.
Go ahead, Ms. Hart.
I was just wondering, are there grants for like I T stuff?
There are some, but a lot of them have to do with what the records retention stuff. Those are the only ones I know about. Dennis might know something else, nothing. There's a lot, there's record retention grants through like the state archives um and the Secretary of State's office for certain things. But as far as like actual technology systems, there's really not much. Unless you can tie like police service to something, there may be a grant.
Yeah, that's, that's the one that um Sydney and, and our office is working on right now is the records retention. I think it's a two-part grant. I don't know what the exact numbers are off the top of my head. But the first, the first part of the grant is like ten thousand dollars for just organizing everything. And then I think there's a second part where you can apply to, which I think is up to twenty thousand. And that goes towards the acquisition of um an online portal for organizing documents and that kind of thing and sharing it with the state and on so on.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to comment, um somebody had brought up the uh Tucker Sellers property that the city purchased. Um and, and the plans that are for that. Now, some of those, those plans are sort of tied to the fire department because we use fire department funds for that. But one of the things that happens when the city acquires property, the city's trying to do some planning, is all sorts of ideas are thrown out there. And I know we've had to take on animal control. And well, when you've got animal control, you've got to house those animals somewhere too. And so we're desperately looking for places to put those animals. Now we got this drive fundraiser, this plans all laid out there for different ways that we could build animal shelter. Um ideas for right here, just off the parking lot over here, things that could be done. But a lot of ideas get thrown out. And you know, you just kind of throw it out and see what sticks and what gets people excited and see what you can go for. So I know the idea for using the building on that property was briefly floated out there and say, okay, we could put dogs in here. I mean, in a desperate attempt to put dogs someplace safe and warm in the winter time when it's cold. But those ideas don't always get acted on because sometimes talking it out, you talk it out with enough people and there's going to be people that are going to say, uh, yeah, I object to that for this reason. And we've got a problem here and this is another problem. And so um you kind of want to take some of those ideas that get thrown out there and just you know, not put too much weight on it until we're actually looking at a proposal. Um there's other properties in town that we've looked at, that we've talked about doing different things with. And it's real easy to get excited until you find out what all the problems are and realize, well, that's not going to work and let's try a different direction. So um yeah, just, I, I found that, yeah, there's an awful lot of ideas that get floated out there before the real idea actually takes root and gets done. And I'm thinking about other properties that cities looking at too. And I think there's been about ten different ideas for use of a particular piece of property that we've been interested in. And still no final conclusion on what we're actually going to do, should that carry all the way through. So um yeah, nothing, just because it's said out loud doesn't necessarily mean it's hard and fast. So. All right. So that does it for grant overview unless somebody has any questions. Go ahead, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Yes, so Ms. uh Frostle shared a, a grant opportunity over the weekend uh with me with, I think it was T Mobile, right?
T Mobile Community Grant.
What, what's the procedure? I guess I don't want to put extra work on, on department heads, but it, it gives elected officials also the opportunity to apply for it. Is, and there's no like matching of funds or whatnot. Is there anything or policy that says that we can't as an elected official or do we need to check with? You know, with you guys, with manager first?
Well, yeah, Ms. Horner can probably answer that one.
I was just going to say, and the chief actually, or the city manager, sorry, does know about some of these because they've gotten, there are private companies, so non-government entities that will provide grants for certain things. Happo, we've gotten quite a bit of money from, who else? Chief?
Um Happo, Geesa.
Yeah.
Uh Legends Casino.
Specific Power is some of the ones that we've done like these power upgrades with. Um those are the ones, to be honest, that a lot of times our engineers may not be familiar with because what they're mostly looking at is the government infrastructure type grants. So right now, there is nobody with the city that I know, aside from the police department with their own specific things, that is pursuing any of those. So if the council wanted to do that, I don't see that as a problem. I don't know that we have staffing available to pursue them. There's a lot of different organizations that do those private grants though. Um and so.
Uh I'm familiar a little bit with, is the T Mobiles the local heroes grant?
Um it, it was a community. I can pull it up.
I think it's one that we looked into at the police department. And for some reason, we weren't, we didn't uh meet the requirements. We didn't apply for it.
It's, I think some of the requirements was just the population on the thousand and.
There's so many out there that they're and, and those, those little stipulations you have to really kind of get into to know whether or not it qualifies. Um that right now it hasn't been profitable or a good, a good use of funds for us to pursue them because of the likelihood that they're going to pan out. But by all means, if, if other people think that there are, are some that are out there that meet the needs of the city, I think it'd be great if you guys want to.
Yeah, th- this is a hometown grants. Um they're investing twenty five million um in five hundred rural towns over five years to jumpstart projects and build stronger communities, helping upgrade tech at your local library, building new hiking trails, historic buildings and um so much more. Also, there's like parks in here, youth services, um um T Mobile awards up to fifty thousand for shovel-ready projects and um applicants proposals was include plans, budget, timeline, anticipated impact and up to five letters of support. And yeah, so who can request it? Elected officials, town managers, employees, tribal leaders or nonprofit community leaders from small towns with population less than fifty thousand.
Perfect. Um I'm really glad that you read through that entire thing. Um because the most important part that is the most difficult, you, you talked about the shovel-ready. So these have to be things that we have developed already. We have some sort of plan for and that we're to the point in the project that we're ready to take it out to bid and do it. So with, when you don't know for sure, the, so like um the previous city manager got those plans together for the animal shelter, right? That might be one that we could consider as shovel-ready if we've picked a set of those plans. Um but anything else, it, it's, it's kind of difficult when they come up with a short time period unless you have a slew of projects that you know are kind of in the, it, sitting in the, in the back burner waiting for a funding mechanism. Um but that's also something that we could invest in if there are plans out there of things you really want to do, but we just don't know if we can fund it right now. Um which is why she did that with the animal shelter and the Tina North Park as well because um of those things, you know, we do have those out there.
Yeah, so shovel-ready projects.
Okay, so yeah, Ms. Frous, if you want to dig into that a little bit more, obviously as an elected official, you've got the authority to do that. And if it works out for the city, that would be phenomenal. If it doesn't, well, we tried, right?
And take a job at it.
And, and these opportunities sometimes present themselves to us as elected officials. You get a slew of emails. I'm sure everybody's, gets the same number of emails I do. And a lot of them are not worth pursuing and several of them are, so.
Yeah, yeah. So it does say shovel-ready. So thanks for clarifying that. I was wondering what that meant.
I was just notified the police foundation is looking at that grant.
Oh, we're going to beat you. Can we use it on two different ones?
Organizations, so the police foundations, they're separate.
Okay, anything further on the grant overview? All right, let's move on to department priorities, item H. He's going to take the lead on that one. Would that be you too?
Yep, Paul's going to go down the line again. So this is one that we wanted to kind of set our department priorities and convey them to you, but we wanted to kind of talk to you this morning about what your uh direction you wanted the city to go. So that kind of gave us some direction on where we'd want to go. Um so I'm going to ask each department head to give maybe three to five highlights or where they see their department going for the future. So if you want to give three to five, Cameron, I'll start with you and we'll move down the line.
Okay, so I kind of broke down our, our uh projects, if you will, kind of in the immediate or ongoing, um what I'm calling ASAP or kind of in the next year or so. And then pretty much everything after that would be in the coming years with, you know, not necessarily definite timeline. So kind of a couple of examples. Um one of which that we're already working on, which you all very well of is our, is our aging fleet of, of apparatus and command vehicles. So that's something that we've um already, I, I would say we're kind of full swing ahead at that or uh full steam ahead, I guess, and then full swing um of that process. So case in point, um the, the new pumper, which we uh have acquired, it is um still undergoing the outfit process. Um it is currently at our station awaiting some equipment, but that's, that was a huge um uh what I'm looking for, uh obviously benefit. I'm sorry, what was that, man?
Priority.
Yeah, oh hugely, thank you. Yes, a huge priority that having that now is, is a um I guess a big, big, big load off of our shoulders with, uh with an impending aging fleet, especially when you talk about apparatus like pumpers that are so complex and there's in essence so much that can go wrong. Um having one that is ten to thirty years old, depending on which unit we're talking about here. Uh obviously the problems and the risk of catastrophic failure in those rigs increases. So having this new pumper is, is huge. Uh the next is the, uh is the ambulance. Um we are waiting delivery and kind of having a little bit of a back and forth with the the rep Owen, but we anticipate the delivery of this uh new ambulance at the end of the month. And then hopefully we'll be coming back to you guys here shortly uh for approval to start purchasing an additional one. Um and the reason why we come at it this quick is a turnaround time. Once we say, yep, we're going to buy it. Um it's twenty four to thirty months before it's delivered. So it's one of those where, hey, we just bought one, we don't need another one for. Well, it's we got, we, we purchased now or we order now, I should say, with knowing that it's a two, two and a half year turnaround before we'll even see the unit. Um so that's a big one. Um staffing is always um going to be a concern in the fire service, especially with, with our department specifically. Um Sunnyside Fire is unique in the sense of, as I mentioned before, we're the only fire department in Yakima County that runs the ambulance, which is actually very surprising. You look at neighboring counties and communities, it is a standard operating practice that the fire department runs EMS. That's, that's the, you know, the trend of, of uh, of the fire service these days. But just kind of give um some statistics on, on where staffing is such a concern for us is um we typically will run what we call calls per capita. So meaning for our number of staff versus the number of calls we want, we run, excuse me, what that looks like. So it's kind of give it, an example of um city of Yakima, largest city in Yakima County. Um they run approximately twelve thousand, twelve thousand, five hundred calls a year. Uh but do so with approximately ninety staff members. So that is a call per capita of a hundred and thirty six calls. Um city of Pasco, um they uh run approximately fifty, one hundred calls a year with a staff of sixty six. Now this is a a year old data, so we don't have anything twenty twenty four yet. Their call per capita is seventy seven. Um city of Sunnyside Fire call per capita is two hundred and forty five. So uh we run uh about forty five hundred calls. This last year we were forty four seventy um with eighteen career staff, about as many volunteers. Um and that's it. So with that and the average uh call we run, the on scene or the time dedicated, that call is an average of three hours. So to give you kind of a little bit of perspective, this last weekend in forty eight hours, uh we ran forty four emergency calls. Uh four of which were working fires. Uh one was a mass casualty incident, was a motor vehicle accident with uh seven critical patients. Um six motor vehicle accidents with injuries and of course arrest being predominantly um emergency medical service calls. So with that, we're trying to balance, obviously, um you know, every, every entity has a budget they're working with and the number of staff. With also, we run into, um okay, we have eighteen line staff, um and uh and again, trying to manage that call volume and that demand, if you will, with the staff numbers that we currently have. So um that is an ongoing um assessment and, and balancing act that we are doing as, as fire administrators to try and you know, keep the rigs going out the door, keep, you know, providing that service to our community, but also trying to keep the expenditure on the city of providing those services at a, at a minimum. Um so that's kind of the more immediate stuff, ongoing within a year. Um one of the big projects, which still falls under ongoing, but more specifically and hopefully in the coming year or so is training. Um as you guys might remember, hopefully you remember, uh each council meeting, I like to present our number of training hours because that is very near and dear to my heart. Um and something I'm very proud of that my agency is stepping up. So with that, the demand um to uh acquire those trainings, bring those trainings in, put those trainings on, record those trainings in the process that comes with it is, is very demanding. And so I'm hoping to look in the near future, come to council, maybe after a couple of study sessions to look into, I'm trying to associate an individual within my department as a, as a designated training officer so that we can facilitate that uh, that ongoing training more regularly, work um and, and have some more consistency within what we're able to provide right now with our current staffing structure. So that's when the next year. And then of course, the coming years, big projects, trying to keep this short and sweet. I apologize. Um as we mentioned before, addition of stations, I mentioned our staffing levels at eighteen with the current um layout of our station, we are actually have difficulty, we've already outgrown it, both in stat and uh number of personnel, but also uh apparatus. So um be growth and potential adding of stations. And then ideally a creation of a training center, which was um obviously parts of the discussion for the uh uh Ray Road property. So hopefully we'll see that come to fruition in the coming years. But that is the fire department's uh anticipated or hopeful future in a nutshell. So if you have any questions, I'll gladly try and answer them. Yes, ma'am.
Didn't quite catch on the training center where you, where you were planning to do that.
So the original conversations, as, as Mr. Mayor had mentioned, there's been a lot of conversations, a lot of ideas that were uh brought up um with the acquisition of some of these properties by the city, but there was hopes and dreams, if you will, uh that one of these acquisitions would result in a, in a training center for, for the fire department. And what that looks like is we have a training room at the firehouse correct now, which is obviously a classroom setting. Um but we have very limited space to be able to go and deploy our apparatus, hose lines, ladders, so on and so forth. And so even just having a piece of land, even if it's just a gravel pit, allows us to go out and do some evolutions and some training that we currently are unable to do due to the uh the location of our station and lack of uh space. So I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Beeler.
Um I've been asked quite a few times and I'm wondering if you are are looking into this, but a lot of the public wants CPR and first aid training. And what used to be done here in Sunnyside and has it, and I know it's expanse, but it helps you when you uh come up to a scene and there's somebody with some training already there.
Absolutely. And so we actually, so take a little bit step back here. Um I'm a CPR instructor, have been for a number of years. Very passionate about community education when it comes to CPR because really immediate intervention is the only thing that is going to improve survival rate for cardiac arrest victims. There's that's a fact. And so uh we've actually even changed our curriculum to simplify it to where it's hands-on only CPR. And I'm not going to give a class right now, don't worry. Um but uh but yeah, simplify it. So um it is an easier process to learn, but of course that requires training. Um but the multifaceted issue is one, uh getting number of, of instructors. The American Heart Association, who is the governing body of pretty much all things CPR is very rigid and very strict on their instructors because their expectation is that if you're an H A instructor, you are a peer, you are, you know, uh the all-knowing being, if, if you will. So it's very hard to get and maintain instructors uh credentially and certification. So right now uh it's myself and one other employee that are the only ones that are certified currently. Um and then on top of that, then the city, we have to, you know, scheduling is one, which that's not too much of an issue, but there's the costs of, of, of the class. So we are paying individual overtime or, or taking away from the regular duties to teach the class, which again, I agree with you hundred percent important and needs to become another priority. Um but also too is we have to decide as a city, is that a service we want to provide free or is that something that we would charge the individuals for? And then what does that look like in a cost recovery standpoint? Um not trying to reinvent the wheel, but the short answer is, sir, it is we need to make, go back to making it a priority. It's trying to get it logistically to where we were before, pre-COVID, when things were all shut down. How is it going to work? What's it going to look like? And how is it going to be beneficial to the community? So hopefully that kind of. answers your question a little bit at least.
Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Is there any type of cause that you can't respond to or you don't have, or you don't have the training to respond to? I mean, one being, there's been mentions that the fire department can't respond to water rescue.
Correct. So there are some things. So now every fire department to a larger, but you'll hear, we're an all hazards fire department. I mean, that that agency responds to all hazards. Uh, I'll use a really poor example, power pole fires. We respond to all power pole fires, but because we are not electricians, we don't really do anything. All we mainly do is we isolate, contain, and if the the sparking pole creates fire on the ground, then we'll address it, but we are not going to put water in the power pole because, you know, we don't want to fry ourselves. Um, but use the example of the, of the water rescue. There's a lot of um, specialty type rescues that if we are to engage in without proper training, we are subject to extensive liability from OSHA, labor and industries, um, the list goes on, the list goes on. So while we have a duty to respond, we have to be careful in how we react, if that makes sense. So one thing, and I'm not sure this is exactly what you're getting at, but a couple of those examples that we are actually addressing as are ongoing, um, are hazardous materials responses and technical rescues and a water rescues might fall under technical rescue depending on what the circumstances are. When you get into swift water rescues, that is an animal all its own. Um, and that is where we can, we have to be very careful how and when we, we respond or react for liability purposes, unfortunately. Um, but with the hazmat and the tech rescue side, um, something that we've been working on and trying to prepare to bring a draft to council to look at is in a local agreement with the city of Yakima, and there are already existing hazardous materials and technical rescue teams. So I won't go down that rabbit hole. I don't want to, you know, spoiler alert from, for upcoming meetings, but we are addressing those issues or those deficits, if you will, and our ability or lack thereof to respond to certain hazards. And we're trying to take care of that in the most efficient, you know, way possible. And this is, this is one of those routes. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Ripley.
If uh, you order an ambulance, okay, so you, you have one coming at the end of this month. Okay, have you've got the loan already and then you're paying on the loan or?
Ambulances, we are not financing, um, due to our, our EMS enterprise fund and Jamie might be able to speak a lot better. We are not um, borrowing against the ambulances. We're, we're paying for them outright.
Those are the ones that were covered with that G E M T money that I went over where we have to wait several years until they approve it. So we have about um, over nine hundred thousand dollars right now, just waiting there that's finally been approved to use that we're going to use to purchase those ambulances.
Thanks. Sorry, was that your question? I didn't mean to catch up. Okay, yep.
All right.
Oh, I have one question. Refresh my memory. Do, do you guys still use the ambulance in Grandview?
Yeah, so uh, currently it is at a how we have it structured with Grandview currently is that when we are able to provide service to Grandview without compromising service to Sunnyside, we are doing so. But if we have to, again, compromise our service to the city of Sunnyside, we're not currently covering. Now, we will cover as in the unit will still respond, but it's, wouldn't be housed at the Grandview station during those times, if that makes sense.
That does make sense. Has there been some complaints from Grandview residents or?
Not that have been received to us because, because really, I mean, full disclosure, the, you know, as you guys probably drive from Sunnyside to Grandview, it's not very far, and especially when you add lights and siren to the mix, it's a, a pretty quick response. So to answer your question, I have not received any negative feedback from the, from the department nor the, nor the citizens.
Okay.
But I do want to say Grandview City Council recently discussed this ambulance agreement that we have with them. And it sounds like, because our contract ends at the end of this year, it sounds like they may be pursuing starting their own ambulance or going with pros or ambulance instead of, um, instead of the continued agreement with us. So basically, that's a, a revenue source that we wouldn't have, but it's also um, some of those calls that we wouldn't necessarily be the first responder to potentially. Um, so it may alleviate some of the I, we probably can't get rid of any staff. We definitely can't get rid of any staff, but it will alleviate some of the over the number of calls per capita that we're struggling with right now so that we don't need to add staff. So it, it's not a bad thing necessarily.
And then if I may too, just to provide some clarification on kind of the, the concerns, at least I had going into this is when we were in full swing with our agreement with Grandview, our, you know, we, we had a contract we had to meet, which means we had to provide at least two individuals in the city of Grandview during these certain hours. And a lot of times what that resulted in was for the entire city of Sunnyside, two individuals at the fire station providing all fire and EMS coverage for the entire city. That is not safe, that is not practical, and that is a huge disservice to our citizens. Um, just to be completely straightforward with you. So we have since kind of pulled back, refocused our, our attention, um, and made it so when we are, we are not going to compromise or diminish our service to the citizens of Sunnyside, provided the services to another, another jurisdiction.
Makes sense.
I like that response. Thank you.
Right, thanks, sir.
Yeah, I have a PowerPoint. If you want to pull it up. It's not very long. It's just, it's just so people, so I can keep on track. Otherwise I tend to go into the weeds.
I have one too. So when you get to me.
Okay.
Everybody wants to go.
Get dinner ordered, don't worry about it.
Did everybody bring their sleeping bags? Because it's looking like.
Not time for my nap yet, so we're all good.
It's looking like we're spending the night.
Okay. Perfect. So I just kind of wanted to give a, oh, yeah. Go to the next slide if you want. Okay, so I just kind of wanted to give a brief o- overview of uh, the department. It's me, the, the Community Economic Development Director, Planner, Permit Coordinator, Building, two building inspectors, um, two code enforcement officers, and then currently we have a pending promotional opportunity um, from a building official to a deputy department director slash fire marshal and a, we have a current oh, unfilled opening right now for a permit technician. Um, next slide.
Development technician.
Or development technician, I'm sorry about that. So um, kind of the, the approach that I was taking, that I'm, that I'm taking and giving this short presentation to you is dividing the department basically into three different factors. One would be proactive, so looking towards the future. What are, what are we doing to address the future? And that's more or less coming from um, the planning side of things. So planning encompassing our comprehensive plan, our current planning, our long-range planning, our, our economic development planning, um, working with our planning commission and working with our Community and Economic Development Commission, um, to really uh, I guess, to, to really take a deep dive into um, where we want the community to go, how we want to, how we want to build them up. Um, you know, the, the messaging that we really want to deliver to city council and where we see Sunnyside going into the future. We really want to to kind of get out in front of it. Um, that's something I think I may have um, brought up once upon a time when I first started, um, was really looking at um, an identity, kind of looking at an identity, looking at somewhat of a, of a marketing strategy, more or less, um, when you're looking at Sunnyside. What do you see? How do we, how do we build upon what we have? How do we bring ourselves? Um, and you know, how do we, how do we get out, get out in front of everything? And the next, moving into the present. So what are we doing today to kind of, to kind of, you know, keep, keep this ship um, going? Um, so we're working on our permitting, business licensing, special events, and our building inspectors. This is mostly our um, our permit, our permit coordinator and our two building inspectors who are mostly doing this work. They're doing their, they're reviewing plans, they're going out and doing construction inspections, commercial development inspections, um, issuing permits at the counter, working with, with different developers, different builders, different homeowners on um, you know, what do they want to do? What sort of tenant improvements do they want to, to bring to their property? Um, the one thing that we have taken on that is a little bit different is special events. So special events um, has been here and there, and I think there's been a lot of there's just been a lot of um, noise around special events in the last year in the city. And here's the short and sweet, the short of it is, is you're not going to have a, a, and a a special event or an event in the city in a public space without having the city involved in one capacity or another. It's, there's no way to, to do it otherwise. If you want to have a private event on a private property, that's great. But if you want to have it on a public street or park, you have to have the city involved in one capacity or, or the, or another. So um, Sydney is kind of handling this right now. It's, it is a, a lot on her plate, but that's okay. We're going to get through it and it'll be better than ever, um, moving into the future. But that's something that we're working on right now. Uh, we just came up with an online form, so we can actually do like, like the form will be fillable online, so that, that's something that uh, we're doing at this point in time. And then our reactive, um, which is our code enforcement. So code enforcement is, it's, it's a reactive, you know, somebody tags a building, we go out there and we address it. Somebody puts garbage in the street, we go out there and address it, park cars, what have you. Um, we have to go out and we have to address it. Um, next slide please. Break them down a little bit further. So yeah, so yeah, I broke these, break these down a little bit further. So yeah, I'm just working on our municipal code, our comprehensive plan for twenty twenty-six, which I think I, I brought up. We will be getting state, we have money allocated from the State Department of Washington, State Department of Commerce to help, help us with this. The last time that we were, the sunny city, city of Sunnyside was tasked to write their comprehensive plan, we sat on it. I think we were seven, seven years late to getting it adopted, which is a big, big no-no. Um, oh, but that's okay. We're going to be proactive this year and, and get it done. Um, we're working on a climate resilience element right now for the Department of Commerce. Um, that's in the works. Um, still working on that a little bit. Um, and then analyzing population trends and, and updating the SMC accordingly. Um, economic development, creating an economic development plan. We've been working on that. I met our last small business resources meeting. We did somewhat of a public SWAT analysis and we're going to be um, going over those findings with the Economic Development Commission uh, tomorrow. And then um, at, working on and kind of promoting any sort of tax incentives and then administering the revolving loan fund. Next slide. And please feel free to stop me anytime and ask me any questions if you have any. Present permitting, um, we moved our, our permitting to be primarily online, which is something that we, um, city hadn't really done in the past. So, but we wanted to make it more accessible. Um, more, more user-friendly. Um, and we've also been working with other city departments to get their permitting needs on, online. We're going to be working with the um, with um, the parks, with Mary at the Parks Department pretty soon here to kind of get some of her stuff and show her how to, how to use um, open gov. We've been working with some uh, of, of the other public works departments to get their things online. Um, especially the, the workflow and the, within the permitting process. Um, building inspector, oh yes, go ahead.
A question on the permitting. Um, you, you said that you recently changed it over to online, right? So is, is there any, I guess, in-between time where uh, these general contractors can go in and, and I've, I've been hearing a lot of complaints where they go in and they just so no, it's now online, you have to figure it out on your own. And some, you know, some of the contractors, they're, they're kind of just used to the paper.
We, we help, we can help people at the counter. We do, we can help them um, go through the process and fill it and fill it out online. We can get things started for them. Um, but then they, they, what will happen is we'll type in their email, their phone number, their name and everything, and then it'll send it, it'll shoot back email to their email address, and then they can upload their plans and, and get them all. So we're, we're really trying to not have so many plans at city hall, because one of the problems that we run into is if we keep, you know, I, if we keep um, roles and plans at city hall, um, all of those become subject to public disclosure. Um, oh. Um, and then we, we have weird requests where I would like, I want records to my house that I submitted ten years ago. It's like, we're not, we're not supposed to keep that stuff on hand. So if we can get it an online database going, it's much easier to maintain. Um, so, but we can help them. Yeah, we can help them get started and, and take the initial steps. Um.
I just, if I've, I've heard otherwise that like, sometimes they've just been reluctant to get to, to like help, like.
Okay.
So I just, you know, kind of wanted to bring that up. Um, but yeah, I mean, I, I love the idea where, where you go online, but just sometimes, you know, from the beginning, they kind of have a, you know, some issues working with it.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll address our staff on that. Yes. Yeah, well, we should be, no, we should be helpful because we can get anything started for anybody. It's pretty simple.
Yeah. Is it pretty lengthy? I actually haven't gone in there to look at it. Is it lengthy? Is it because they just don't know how to, is it the technology transition? Do they give you any feedback?
Yeah, the, the, the transition to technology.
Okay, okay. Is it also in Spanish? Is it?
Um, yeah, the website will trend or.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, it depends what type of application that you're filling out, but it's not any more lengthy than the standard um, tenant improvement application. It's, it should be the same wording, the same checkboxes, the same everything. Yeah. Thank you. Um, and then building inspections. So that's part of this as well as creating an online portal to request inspections. Um, um, creating clear, clear and concise inspection, correction, expectations. And then something that, that uh, the fire chief and I have been working on is creating a fire marshal position and resuming fire inspections. That helps, will help with our insurance ratings and um, really getting our commercial fire inspections back online because we do have some issues that we've been experiencing with commercial and fires, fire inspections. Um, and then business licensing inspections. So every, every new commercial business requires inspection and then special events, as I kind of went over before. And then next slide. And then code enforcement. So um, there's code enforcement, um, nobody's ever nice to the code enforcement officers. This is not a thing. You're not.
Would you ever happy with?
No, nobody's ever, they're always, even, even if they're, yeah, even if they're doing the right thing, somebody's mad at the code enforcement officers. So um, so right now, one of the things we're looking at and developing strategy on is vacant buildings, creating a new, new code to address absentee property owners. That's something that we're dealing with downtown that we deal with. Um, we've done a couple of them, um, typically and we've been successful. So um, we're going to kind of try to replicate what I've been doing to work with the property owners and, and incorporate that into our municipal code. Um, which should be in the next couple of months. Um, been working on that. Um, um, contacting residential properties for violations. Um, so that's, that's something that's like always ongoing and that kind of ties into graffiti and um, towing cars. So um, I kind of want to talk about graffiti a little bit. So um, we're working on putting together a graffiti abatement trailer right now that'll have a sprayer in it with a generator. That way they could just kind of, instead of rattle canning the sides of like squares on the sides of walls, we can take a sprayer and just kind of cover up larger, larger patches out at one time. So graffiti is, it's a moving, it's a moving target. It's, it's more prevalent at certain times of the year compared to others. Um, oftentimes people aren't tagging their own houses, they're tagging other people's houses. So people are often time, more often than not, the victims of graffiti. And so really addressing that can be a little bit tricky. So um, and, and kind of where that graffiti is happening, who, who is, who's, you know, who's tagging versus who is getting, who is experiencing, you know, the, the violation on their property. It's a very tricky thing. So um, me personally, and this is kind of, I, I prefer to work with property owners and getting, and getting the graffiti and their tagging covered up. If, if we need to, if they allow the code enforcement officer to, to cover it up with, with the rattle cans or whatever, we'll do it. Um, currently we don't, and, and I try to not because we can, we can cite people for graffiti, but I try, I try not to cite people for graffiti because oftentimes the people experiencing graffiti don't want to be experiencing graffiti on their property. So it's easier to just work with them to get it covered. The one thing we don't have right now is any sort of like paint matching requirement or anything like that. And I don't know if that's something we want to pursue. Um, I'll leave that kind of in the, in the council's hands at this point in time. But so we have little, little gray and black squares all over town. And then they, they get tagged up and we'll, we'll spray it over again. But do we want to approach the property owner, property owners and say, hey, color match the side of your, your ball, go back to tan, go back to brown or whatever it is. I don't know if you have any, any thoughts on that, and I could certainly be able to come up with something.
Council members' thoughts, questions?
Yeah, I have something. No, I appreciate the new codes for addressing vacant buildings and, and wanna but I also, you know, would like to see more enforcement um, on the current codes that we have. There's one in here, uh, says all vacant building stores with, you know, front windows show install form of art or window dressing. Um, there's a lot of vacant, you know, there's a few vacant buildings in, in downtown. So I think if, if we also start by enforcing some of these codes, um, it would help a lot. I mean, a lot of the, a lot of the cleaning. I know you say you don't like to fine, you know, for, for, for graffiti, but you know, if they're taking their sweet time, then you know, maybe a fine will motivate them.
And I think we did find somebody because they were taking their sweet time recently. But I, yeah. So here's, here's my, and this is, this, this, this will come to me, but it'll also come to you when I say, when I would talk about the window dressings, because I, I know that's in there. Is that hasn't been implemented in the last twenty years. And I'm going to be contacting these property owners, and I'm going to be, I I I I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm a bit forceful. It's, it's, it will come back to you and you will be hearing about it, so if that's, I mean, I'm happy to do it, but that's something I need you to understand that. I'll hear it and you'll hear it as well, so.
Oh, so Trevor, just for your information, prior to you coming on board of the city, Sunny said, we did, um. I think it was over Christmas season one year, we said, we want these empty windows covered up, you put boards behind it, you can put some dressing behind it, something, but not make it look like, you you know, it's just this vacant building. Put something behind that window, put some Christmas holiday paint on the window, do something. And there was a little more compliance than I expected, to be honest with you. Um, and then we sort of stopped talking about it again, and we didn't really make too big of a deal out of it, you came on board and then you know, it really hasn't come up, but yeah, there was a couple of years ago, an effort to try to get that straightened up a little bit, and I think it's worthy of of implementing, and okay, so tell them to respond to the mayor if they're not happy about it, and I'll let them know what I think about it.
All right, I'm happy to do that, okay.
Go for it.
Okay, and then um, structural, structural abatement, um, we know that there are neglected properties in the city. We, I think we got twelve of them down last year, um, either refinished or or demolished last year, which is a really good start. We had two, two beginning in this year, and we have about tw- twelve more pending, give or take. Um, these are just buildings that have fire damage that have been boarded for years, um, buildings. Oh, we have one in town that the person lives in town, they have a, they own a house, I think it's eleventh or thirteenth or something like that, it's been boarded for years and years and years, and um, the boards were were taken off of it, and one of our code enforcement officers contacted this property owner and said, hey, you, um, we we seen that your building's been vacant since about two thousand and nine, we need you to come back. And we just had somebody break into it, and he's like, I hasn't been broke, it's it's been vacant since two thousand and six. It's like, and you're just, you know when it's how long it's been vacant, you've just been sitting on it, and I think that's a problem. It's it's what I'm trying to say is that's a problem, and we we're actively addressing it. Next slide. Okay, so these are just some of, some of the goals, um. For twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five is continue and wrap up the climate resilience grants. Um, get our comprehensive plan going, update the S M C, so with those vacant building policies. Get back to, yeah, with those vacant building policies, um, our economic development plan, uh, developing basically that that marketing strategy, that vision strategy. Um, continuing to update the website, resume fire, fire inspections, and then continue with building abatements, that's.
Have a question, um, so I didn't see anything, um, anything listed around um, animal, so code enforcement. Um, who does the A C O fall under, so I'm trying to figure that out, okay, just to.
Police department.
Okay, and so is Megan trained to enforce any of these site or site?
Yes, she, so she went, so there's an actual academy for animal control officers, it's like three weeks at the police academy, and she went through that. Actually, while she was an employee of the Humane Society, she was sponsored by the Sunnyside Police Department in the city of Grandview, and we both pitched in because she served with both of us. To uh, sponsor her for that class, so she was able to attend.
Okay, okay, so so she, so she does, um, does she file citations?
So, yes, but she has just recently got that access. So we had to get a computer and a printer, because all our tickets are electronic, into her truck when she became a city employee. And so that's not an overnight process, so I think that just got finished two, three weeks ago, just in the, not long ago, that just got finished.
Okay.
And then, then the issue was, she had an electronic ticket account with Grandview. She did not have one with Sunnyside, and we could not create a, um. We had a problem because the system wouldn't let her have two accounts, because she she cites through two different courts. And so um, I think that got resolved literally last week. Um, so that, that was like a month-long progress, uh, project that are we have a person here that's called the Sector Administrator, Sector is the computer ticketing program. So that that went all the way up through Sector to try and get that resolved, and I think it finally got resolved last week, so.
Okay.
And back on the, just to kind of talk about that, so we don't, we don't, code enforcement doesn't do any sort of animal enforcement at all, so we don't do chickens, we don't deal with anything. Um, I did, if you can remember this, maybe eight months ago, I tried to bring something related to um, chickens into the zoning ordinance, um, it didn't, didn't really go anywhere, um.
Remember that.
Yeah, so we, there's no, there's no chicken regulations within the zoning ordinance, I think all of, all of the animal control stuff falls under the police department at this time.
Was there a problem with chickens in town?
Oh, yeah.
Nobody wants to chase them.
Well, so, so, I mean, and I'm happy to bring this up again, because it's, it's kind of fun to talk about. Um, so there, there is a portion of the community that wants, that wants chickens. And so, um, we, and so we, the planning commission explored the idea of allowing, allowing pet chickens either for, for either pets or eggs or, but but no slaughter. Can't, no slaughtering in in the home or the yard or anything like that.
And no roosters.
And no roosters, correct. Just, just hens, just hens, and they had to be kept in a coop.
Girl chicken.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, um, and we, we kind of explored the idea a li- a little bit. I don't, but I don't think there was a consensus on the exact number of chickens that we wanted to allow at that point in time. Um, so it, it just hasn't gone forward, um, the, the code currently says, says poultry is prohibited.
Oh, they included ostriches.
And so that, and that, that kind of reflects the changing dynamic of council, because I, when I first got on council, the question came up. And council was adamantly opposed to keeping a poultry within city limits, and it just was, it landed loud and clear on it, thou shalt not, and that's the way council landed. Then when Trevor brought it up, um, the last time, was like, well, I don't really have a problem with it, but and so nothing really happened, but nobody was really saying no, but you know, the trend, current trends are, I know it one of my daughters has chickens, pet chickens, and that's, that's a thing for her, and my other daughter is getting married shortly, yeah, she's definitely got plans for chickens, and she's going to have pet chickens. And, and so it's a thing.
Does she live within city limits?
She, neither one of them was anywhere near city limits, and neither one of them is actually in the state of Washington, so, um, but you know, it's a thing. Is what I'm saying here, this is, this is something that's, uh, it's, it's a trend for people.
Just kind of a heads up, I come from St. Yakima prior to coming here, and so city limits of Yakima, you're allowed four lane hens.
Or lane.
Or is the maximum, they have to be hens, no roosters, but just an example, there are.
Ellensburg is very similar, I think they might have the same.
Yeah, I mean, listen, with the price of eggs, or have you all seen it, I went to Walmart the other day, I'm like, woo.
I just have one question for you, Trevor, if somebody wanted to hold an event downtown, who would they go talk to, Sydney, right?
Yeah, they're talking to me and Sydney.
I was like, what does this have to do with chickens?
Well, going back. Chicken shoe.
Well, going back to chickens, we may not have a problem with it, but the neighbors do, because, and I say this because a few neighbors have been actually messaging me, telling me that they have roosters and and a lot of chickens running around, and the rooster is so annoying. And some of these neighbors have guns, and they're like, I'm about to shoot it, I'm like, you better not.
Yeah, well, we did have a very famous crime in Sunnyside one time, it was back in the nineties, where somebody shot somebody else's chicken, and then there was violence involved, and somebody fled to Mexico in order to escape prosecution, and it was really messy there for a while. So, yeah, we do have to think about that.
We made national news.
We got to take into consideration the neighbors, you know, we, they might not live next to us, but how would we like it, consideration.
Yeah, I know one of my neighbors has, has a chicken somewhere, you know, because I hear them, you know, but.
Mine have roosters.
Yeah.
Okay.
I got used to. But I said, we revisit that, I, I'm open to to having a conversation. Yeah, for sure.
We'll have to talk more about the graffiti as well.
Yeah.
I have a doctor's appointment, I gotta leave.
Okay, any objection to Ms. Ripley? For a medical appointment, all right, Ms. Ripley is excused. Thank you for being here today, Ms. Ripley. I know we've all got to keep an eye on the time, because there's other things going on as well, so let us carry on.
Well, are you done, Trevor, sorry?
All right, so just to go over a few of the public work priority that I have here. Um, one thing in in public works is capital projects, there's always capital projects going on, some of them are planned, some of them because like we talked earlier, just an emergency came up, and it became a capital project. So that is one of the items on my list, second is, is parks and recreation, that's a big priority for me as well. Um, having parks that are looking good, um, and and recreation for, for the youth and for the adults. Um, is something that I really want to work towards, um, investing in staff. Uh, one of the things that it's been a challenge for us is getting and keeping certified operators. Our wastewater facility here is a, is a class three wastewater plant, that means that our supervisor has to be at least a three. And the uh, operators have to be at least a two. Operators are becoming hard uh, to find, and and so the ones that we do have, we want to keep. And so that's also something that we as a city have to invest in, so that we can retain them. Um, same with water, and even um, down to uh, just spray license. Um, those are things that we have to constantly be working with, uh, employees to make sure that they maintain these certifications. Um, because without that, there's a lot of stuff that has to do with water quality or uh, just the appearance of the city that we can't get done if we don't have the right um, licenses. Um, and then planning for the future, um, just like we were talking earlier, we, we have to talk about it today so that we can get to that point. Um, just uh, a few examples of that is the new well and reservoir that we've been talking about. At some point, we, we have to start the process, because it's going to take a while, but we need to get there. Just a few other future projects, there's more than this, but just, I brought an example of a few, just so you get an idea, is uh South Sixth Street improvements, so we've done everything from Franklin all the way to First. Uh, in the future, we'd like to continue and go from Franklin down to um, Lincoln. And and do everything that we did on the other ones to finish that off that way. Um, Edison Avenue Bridge replacement, that's had some accidents, um, it, we'd like to whiten that and and make it um, a safer place, uh, because it comes out to two forty-one highway there. Um, so we are also looking at funding for that, um, it is challenging, but we, we are in the process. The First Street and Y V H intersection improvements, we've been looking at that too, that is also on our list. And that would be the reconstruct of the intersection to include a travel lane to realignment. Sidewalks, eighty-eight ramps, and storm drain, uh, drainage improvements. Um, so those are just a few of, of many, but um. Other than that, is just keeping the appearance of Sunnyside, the entrances looking good, and uh, just keeping up with the day-to-day stuff.
Questions for Mr. Sanchez, Mr. Biler?
Unlike your uh, water and your sewer, you said they had to be a level one, two, or three. What are those levels, and how do they get the training to be?
So, our wastewater facility is a class three, so in order to become the class three or a two for an operator, you can be a two or a three in order to, to make any. When you're making water quality changes, that means that you can't switch a valve unless you're certified with at least a two. Because any change that you make is going to affect the waters of the state, because that's where we discharge the effluent. So in order to get to that, uh, if we took someone that just applied at wastewater facility with no experience, and they started just at the very bottom, they would first have to put in they could start out with a six months as an O I T, which is an operator in training. In six months, they could apply for their O I T certification, because they had six months of experience in wastewater. At that point, if they, if they pass that exam, they'll be able to work with that exam up until that one year. At that one year, if they're still there, then that would just upgrade to the one. If they didn't do that, then they, after that one year, they would apply to Department of Ecology. Then they would uh, get the notification that they had the minimum qualification. Then they would apply for the one, for the group one wastewater exam, and once they've received that, then they would put in another year, and that would give them the least, the minimum to qualify for their level two. Then after that, then you would not be able to qualify for your three, one, so let me, this kind of gets a little trickier. E- even with degrees, unless you actually work at a wastewater three facility, you cannot get a three wastewater certificate, so therefore or you have so many years, it used to be A, but I think now it's down to four, if you have at least four years of wastewater experience, then you qualify for your group three uh, certificate. So that's how you, you start working your way through that, um. What classifies a wastewater to be a certain certification, it it just depends on the size of the city. Depends on the outfall that you have. Um, for example, take the city of Prosser, it's a way smaller city than Sunnyside, but it's still a three. And and a lot of that is because where it discharges, it discharges on the downside of the dam. So you have less dilution there for, for, for the effluent. So because of that, then that brings that classification up there, because of the treatment that you need to have. Because how you're going to impair the waters of the, of the state there. Sunnyside, because of the size of Sunnyside, and same thing with the kind of treatment that we have, then we're also a three. In other places like Yakima, where there are four, it could be also because they're working twenty-four hours a day. They have a day shift and a night shift, and so there's more sampling that needs to be done. And so then it just gets higher and higher, the highest in the state is a four, and so we're a three.
It's similar for water, as far as the certification is based on time worked in the position and testing through the Department of Health, correct? But you need the years of experience doing it, regardless of either of those two.
Yes, yeah, so, so that's why it is a field that a lot of people don't think about, but it is very important. And and every, there's over three hundred and some wastewater facilities in the state of Washington. And when we think of facilities, sometimes we just think of like a, a city, but I mean, if you think of a resort or a campground, they have a wastewater facility, it's, it's very small, but it's still a form of treatment. And so those are included as well, and same with water systems, uh, you, same with resorts, they have a water system, and they it, it isn't, they, it is harder for them as well, because they don't get the training that we have. We, we have reservoirs, we have, you know, uh, wells, they, they may have just a small distribution, but still it is something that they have to maintain, and so um, that's why it's challenging. And a lot of people don't think about this field, but um, we do, we need uh, certified operators.
And Mr. Deputy Mayor, sorry, Jamie, he's got a.
Um, Sanchez, are the current employees fully trained and and certified? And do we encourage like new employees, once they reach that limit, to get certification and, you know, buy that training?
We, our wastewater faci- uh, department now, um. Not everybody is, is, would be an operator, because we also have what's called collections. In collections, you don't have to be an operator, because they don't, they don't do anything in the plant as far as making those decisions, like we were talking about. They're not going to come in on the weekend and make a change, but they are the ones that are maintaining the lift stations, they're ma- they're they're bringing in everything in, they're cleaning the sewer lines, they're doing the locates, they're making sure that everything from the city gets to the wastewater facility. The operators there will take it at the wastewater facility, and then they do all the sampling, they do all the maintenance there. They, they do all water quality that, before it gets to, to the, to the ditch, uh, so. There's also a requirement by ecology of how many operators we should have, and that's where right now, we have uh, we're, there's two that are working on their certifications, and there's two that have their certifications.
All right, thank you.
For water, where we are, we do not have enough people certified, we have our, our, the supervisor, who's the water three. Which is what we need, but we also don't have anyone else that has gone through any certification, so if we lose that one person, we don't have people in the backup, and I just wanted to say, this is an excellent precursor to the fact that the collective bargaining agreement for public works is going to be coming to you guys, probably within the next month or so. And one of the things that we're trying to do in this contract is provide um, higher pay and incentives for the, those certified positions. Because there are places up and down the valley, Tri-Cities, all the way to Yakima that pay a lot more for those certified positions than we do. And in order to stay competitive in that job market and to retain employees that we put all that training into, we gotta get some of those salaries closer to the market value. So just FYI.
And then there's, there's classes throughout the year that they're also that available that they can go to that helps them either for their certification or just because it keeps them up to date on regulation changes with the state or just uh, things in, in process. Um, that are always also revolving and changing throughout the um, industry. So, there's um, uh, conventions that, the one here in Yakima every year for water and wastewater that provides different classes. And they're always good to go to because you get a refresher on a lot of the stuff too. So, yeah, and so we encourage them to attend to those classes because it helps. Um, on top of that, there's also books and things like that that they also study. And then they, they take the exam.
Alright, moving on.
I have a PowerPoint, Jackie. It's really short. I think it's only six pages.
Can we get the copies of the PowerPoints afterwards?
I'll send them, well, I'll send mine to you, yeah. Okay. So, administrative services covers three functional areas basically. Um, finance, human resources and then aspects of the municipal court. The court eh, operates independently, um, just like any government, there's three bodies, there's the executive, the legislative and the ju- just the judicial, sorry. So, we don't get to tell the judge how to rule on things, he has to maintain that independence. Um, but we do procure the contracts for our prosecuting attorneys and our indigent defense attorneys. And we pay for the court clerk staff, um, and all that. Okay, you can go to the next slide, next, sorry. Alright, so the, for, for finance, I just wanted to go over briefly, I have functions, objectives and priorities for all three of these. Um, our functions of finance are basically broken down into three things similar to Trevor's. There's the daily operation, what's going on right now, there's forecasting and planning for the future. And then there is reporting, which is that accounting and looking back, right? So, the, the way that um, our functions break down in our department, there's six of us in our department right now, myself, finance supervisor and four staff members. Each one of those um, jobs, receipting, accounts payable, utility billing payroll is a whole person's job. Um, the audit, the financial reporting aspect, that internal auditing is done mostly by the finance supervisor and myself. Um, but everything else on there is done by me, uh, because we just don't have a lot of staff, so, um, and I'm really good at asking for staff for other people's departments, but I rarely do it for myself, even though we desperately need it. But that's not in my objectives right now, so I digress. Um, our objectives for providing services is obviously a hundred percent accuracy, which is unrealistic. Um, in the world of finance and transactions, a hundred percent accuracy is, if somebody's a hundred percent accurate, that's a, that's a, a red flag for risk that they are going back in and they are fixing their transactions or doing something wrong because everybody makes mistakes. Um, but we always wanna, we always strive for the absolute best. Um, ensuring compliance with laws and rules and regulations is super important to us and complete transparency. So we are always hoping to have everything presented in a way that is understandable to people. Um, so, the, these are the things that we try for every single day. The priorities going forward are, as we've talked about already, revenue enhancements. So, looking at potential ways statewide that we could create revenue for services that we may not be collecting for right now and moving forward. The procurement controls, um, this is one of the exit items that we received on our audit, which I can go over with you also, um, if you want, but um, procurement is incredibly uh, difficult. You have to follow federal and state rules, your own rules. There are a ton of, there are just a ton of constantly changing things that go into procurement. And right now, the city's departments, each individual department handles their own procurement. Which means we all have to be trained to try to understand and keep up with the things for those that are making purchasing decisions. Which to me, as a control freak, makes me feel a little scared because I don't know for sure that everybody's following all of the rules. So procurement is a priority for us to put training out there for all of staff to make sure that everybody is fully aware of the procurement rules. Um, and then also potentially to assign the role of a procurement reviewer or something for purchases that fall within something that's regulated. Um, long-term outstanding payroll error corrections. So I talked about this a little bit with the finance and administration subcommittee. But, we have had historically a big problem with administering payroll for our staff, which is awful in my opinion. Um, a lot of that has to do with the uh, providing of benefits, correct reporting to things like the IRS. And so we have been working really hard to try to get through these. Some of them are limitations with our software and the way it was set up. So that we aren't even realizing that these errors are being made until we've already made it for a while and we're trying to go back and fix it. So, our payroll process and I'm sure the other department directors can comment on this because, and actually Chief Lehman is the one that pointed out one of the problems to us about a year ago that meant we had to go back and recalculate uh, overtime for a bunch of people and pay it back for the last two years or pay them more that they deserved. So, there's also um, with the IRS, we have a like seventy thousand dollar penalty and interest bill out there that has to do with unfiled W twos from twenty sixteen. So we're trying to get to the bottom of that. We've had um, issues with our pension, the Teamsters Pension Trust that have taken a lot of research to try and get to the bottom of and audits from the companies that provide them, internal audits. Um, it's a bit of a mess. So those are, that is really important to us. If you guys have any specific questions on that, let me know. Um, as we get through these things and we have to, if we have to pay additional penalties, those do have to come to council, so you'll hear about it. But in, for the time being right now, um, we haven't paid any recent penalties. Um, but we're still working on them. Like the, the last time we did was with the Department of Retirement Services, I believe it was at the beginning of twenty twenty-two. We had to pay a pretty big chunk of money, um, that council had to approve so that we could get caught up with some of those reporting issues. And like I said, these actually really stem back from the mid twenty teens. Um, with really, really starting to fall apart like twenty fifteen through twenty seventeen as being really, really messy. And so, we're still trying to clean that up. And correct our procedures going forward because unfortunately, it's the same software that we have that was set up in such a way that sort of allowed for these to happen. Um, utility billing, audit and accuracy is another priority for us. Not to say that we are billing incorrectly, but there are so many changes that happen with people's properties, um, with development and going through and monitoring our four thousand accounts to make sure that all of the billing is handled correctly and to review it constantly to audit to make sure that it's, it's correct. Um, is it, is a big project. It's, it takes a lot of work. So, um, that is one of the systems that's also going into a new financial system in the next year or so. So, um, we'll have a really good opportunity to get through that, but um, did you guys want me to take a second to talk about some of the exit items and the corrections from the audit right now, or do you wanna come back to that later if time allowing? Well, time isn't allowing, but.
My personal opinion on it is, can we come back to it later if time allows? Cuz I'm kinda watching the clock as far, you know, and this is just kind of a personal thing, but I about getting finished at an appropriate time, so.
Yeah.
Unless there's an objection from council.
No objection, Ben, just had a quick question before we move on to this, whenever you're ready?
Yeah.
So with the changes of new system that you're saying with the, you know, is it gonna fix a lot of these priorities for you, do you think?
I certainly hope so. At least um, the payroll, so, I grew up as a workperson eh, doing payroll. It's like near and dear to my heart to make sure it's accurate. So, the nice thing about having, going into a new system is we know that we can set it up correctly. So that going forward, if we do have any errors or issues that are still happening in what the current system is, we will absolutely get them fixed so that that won't be happening anymore. Um, and the same goes for some of the utility billing. Right now, we have some meters that read in gallons and some meters that read in cubic feet. So we're hoping to get everything onto gallons as we transition into that new system that will make things easier. And then from the financial side, like I said, the reporting and the ability to, you know, forecast and our new system will be much, much better. Anything else? Okay, you can go to the next one, Jackie. I'm gonna, and I'll let Lucia say something about this if she wants to, cuz she's been sitting here quietly. Um, so, human resources, our functions, recruitment, employee orientation, benefits administration, internal investigations, personnel file maintenance, training and development, compensation reviews, labor relations, and all of this used to be done by one person. So now we luckily have two and a half, if you count myself. Um, the objectives are obviously to have successful recruitments and employee retention, huge, huge, huge. We want to attract high-quality people who want to work here. And we wanna keep them happy and wanting to work here for a long into the future so that we can maintain an excellent work environment and, and excellent infrastructure systems. Um, legal compliance is always, is always huge in HR, reducing risk and um, making sure that we are ensuring satisfactory performance. So, keeping the work quality up to the standards and making sure that that, we're not allowing uh, long-term employees to have bad habits for a long time. So those are some of our um, objectives. Our priorities right now are filling those vacancies. Um, we have a lot in the police department, but in other places benefits and payroll auditing, again, they're helping. It's kind of a crossover between finance and HR for the, the, that benefits and payroll issue. Um, getting our supervisors trained on things like uh, discrimination and the ADA and hostile work environments and also um, OSHA and L and I training and, and tracking those things in a system and then improved records management. So, um, Lucia, did you wanna comment on anything?
What I, I think Jamie covers most of it, but what I would like to say is um, onboarding has been brought up and I would just like to take the opportunity to say, thank you for bringing those concerns. There are many ways we can improve in several areas and so, um, we don't know what doesn't work until it's brought to our attention. Um, and so I look forward to working with all of you to im- improving our systems so that we can be better moving forward.
I was also thinking when we were talking about the boards and commissions and actual council, you know, that's something that has been typically done through the clerk's office. But I think that's just because it's always been done that way, right? We could transition that to HR for more things if you want, because it is something that is kind of, I mean, we do it with employees, so it might be a, a good fit, I don't know.
Well, it's one of those things that just because we've always done it this way, I mean that we always have to do it that way. So if there's a better way to do it, we certainly wanna improve. And I think there's a perception out there that we're resistant to change and I don't think that's necessarily the case. I think what Lucia just said, we don't know what's not working until somebody says, hey, this really isn't working. So, no, if it can be improved, let's do it. Uh, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
So when you say filling the current vacancies, have we ever considered going like to the the, I know the high schools throwing a, a career fair in the next few weeks, that way you know, our seniors know all the possibilities of, of, of working with the, you know, with the city. You know, if it doesn't work out with college and something else doesn't work out, at least they know the possibilities, they could join, you know, the PD, they could join fire, they could join the city. You know, kinda give them that.
That's an excellent idea. Um, I think it would be fantastic for us to do that. Um, I don't know that we have the staffing time available to do that right now. Um, but there was somebody who came in a few years ago that wanted to start a, like a children's museum here in Sunnyside. And I thought it was like an amazing idea. And um, one of those things would be like teaching kids about these kinds of jobs and the work that goes into them. And so I think there's a lot of ways that the city could work on some of those things, like getting those things to work. So, um, someday.
Oh, ano- another, sorry, just I got comfortable over here. Um, a- another thing to consider also, if we don't have the staffing, um, is uh, Harley, um, Moran from the Career Center at the high schools are really good source. So like if we ever wanted to reach out to the high school, to, to them, have you worked with her? She's amazing. Um, and, and maybe pass on some information and say, hey, we have these openings or do we wanna do, do our students wanna learn more about our, the Explorer Program or whatever's going on at the p- at the fire sta- uh, fire department? Um, she's a really good resource and I'm happy to, to connect if y'all haven't been connected.
I think that's a great idea, maybe not so much for filling the current openings that we have now, but for sort of developing into the future of people knowing what we have. So, yeah, I mean, it would be great to develop.
Send an email out, yeah, and, and she's really great. She's all about the students and she's all about getting information out there, any opportunity that's out there. Um, for, for uh, high school students.
Anything else on this? Alright, next slide, Jackie. Okay, so the court operations, as I talked about briefly a second ago, I mean, the court really operates as its own thing. The judge sits in here with his gavel and we don't have control from a city perspective, aside from the fact that every four years, the city manager gets to appoint the judge on how the operations of the court goes. But I will say that we got a municipal court judge that is, this is in his first term and that things drastically changed in our court a couple of years ago when we appointed him. Um, it is much more efficient. And uh, it is much more, um, I don't, what's the word to say? They, they actually do what they're supposed to do instead of dismissing a bunch of tickets. So I think our court is operating a lot better. Um, the things that I deal with are billing out to the other um, top andish that we deal with and dealing with some of their grant things. Um, and then the contracting services with the prosecuting and defense attorneys. Um, there are a lot of, there's a lot of case law recently that has caused the requirement to provide a specific level of indigent defense. Um, that has increased the cost of, of public defense. So our costs in our court have gone way up, um, because we have to pay our d- public defense attorneys a lot more than we used to. And we have to ensure that they provide a certain level of defense. So, um, this is something we don't have a choice in either. So when we get to budget and we talk about it and you're like, oh my gosh, you spend a million dollars on attorneys, this is one of the reasons.
So the state changes the laws for us to comply, but they just don't help with the financing.
That's correct. Wow, but, but they, they do, they do, we call that an unfunded mandate.
Exactly.
So we do sometimes get funding for some of those things. So like when they change the drug laws, we do have to go back and like vacate um, a bunch of old drug convictions and they are gonna give us money to cover some of those costs. We have been allocated a certain amount of money. And so once we start that process, which our prosecutor's working on, how to go through that process, we'll start requesting that. But in the meantime, we still have to do the work upfront and then request the reimbursement back in.
So there's no implementation support is what I'm seeing.
Yeah, in hearing. Very difficult. Um, so the objectives for the court, always efficient court services. Um, one thing that Vanessa, the court administrator and myself were very passionate about is diversionary programs, um, and potentially having like a drug court or mental health services that are attached more closely to our court programs in order to avoid people necessarily having to go through the legal process. And that there's another avenue um, for them to get help potentially. So those are things that we've been talking about and developing and there's some grants out there for some of those things and um, some of that funding from the opioid money, we're hoping to be able to do some of these programs with. Um, and we've talked about mental health, um, some mental health money that could be out there for certain things, so um, those are important to us. And then retaining quality attorneys for prosecution and defense. I know that everybody probably saw the newspaper article and that actually was in Seattle Times, I think, about public defenders. It's, it's not even statewide, it's, it's across the nation really. There is a shortage of attorneys to provide public defense and indigent defense. Um, one of the things we kind of were lucky in is that we started just getting these new contracts in place, just a little bit before it really, really, really got bad. And the attorneys that we have that provide indigent defense are happy to be here. They like the way our court runs. Our pay is set right where it needs to be, that it's competitive. So, for the time being, we haven't been struggling. So we're gonna just do the best we can to keep it that way. So that we don't end up like the other courts in the area where they just have no public defenders and they can't put cases through their court. Any other questions?
So, mental health programs is listed as a priority. Is there anything established currently?
There's nothing established currently, but that would be um, something, you know, where in order, we would divert people from. in order, we would divert people from going through the municipal court and into maybe mental health services or something like that. So um, Vanessa, I think, if we hadn't gone so long today, she was gonna try and say a few things, but um, she is a great resource. If you guys have ideas or wanna talk to her or wanna hear her ideas, um, send me an email and I can set something up with you guys. But yeah, there's, there's a lot of great ideas for diversionary programs in general through the court system that someday we'd like to get online, cause it is, it's a passion for us as well.
Well, mental health really became a big deal in 2020. We started hearing a lot about it. And it has been a priority for both council and for the court, but it's a challenge because it's a priority for everybody. And we're looking for mental health professionals to help. But uh, we're all looking for the same people and it's a limited pool to choose from. So that's, that's really been our challenge. I consider that we're lucky to have someone like Vanessa who's just very motivated all the time. And always looking for solutions. And like I said, if you wanna talk with her, she will inspire you.
Well, let's have her for uh, one of our workshops, maybe.
Yeah, I, I'm sure she would be happy to. Um, and I know the judge had reached out and he wanted to have, have an opportunity to sort of meet with you guys too. So that um, at least the new council people. So we just need to figure out a time to get that together, but.
Maybe we can do that a, a pre, pre-meeting.
Maybe that, that or the four one workshop as well would be an opportunity.
Yeah.
The judge just wants fifteen, twenty minutes to come in and, and meet the council and, and just talk about his plans for the court, I think, so.
That'd be great. That's a good idea.
Okay.
How about Vanessa? Does she have a workshop she wanted to?
She, well, she and the judge both were wanting to, you know, get to talk to you guys. And like I said, I, I was hoping to have Vanessa here today so she could talk about this, cause she, I'm passionate about it, but she's like way more, I mean, she lives it. So um, but since we ran so late, um, I'd be happy to have her come in and talk about diversionary programs and stuff at another time.
And, and she's the one who brought our coffee in, but do not think of her as a coffee server. He is a very intelligent professional, so don't sell her short at all.
Yeah. Yeah, and she's just very nice. Made the coffee. Um, any other questions on this? I think this is my last slide, Jackie. Oh no, I have one more. Oh gosh, we don't need to do this one. Uh, sorry. This is just like odds and ends. So it's kind of funny, haha, the dust, the dirt and the skeletons, cause you know, Julia thinks that I have skeletons, just kidding, Julia. Um, but these are some things that have taken up a ton of time and resources and with a, with departments that are already really overtaxed, these are some of the issues that take a lot of time away from getting stuff done. So the dust, the budget dust, managing financials with many competing interests. So when we talk about budget dust often, that's just a term for for professional services or some small expenses that may be less than fifty thousand dollars and everybody wants to squabble over it. Those are important things. We wanna make sure that we aren't spending money superfluously. But, but squabbling over fifty thousand dollars is not going to fix our two point five. And so I, I love to answer any questions about any of the particular expenditures that we make. But getting caught, and this isn't aimed at the council, it's even public records requests from people and the public that's got up there and, and questioned expenditures and things. The, the time that we have spent on justifying these small purchases that are, that fall in line with what, what's allowed to happen and what's budgeted takes away from the city's ability to actually solve some of the problems. The dirt, internal investigations, serious disciplinary issues and the culture of complacency here at the city has been a big struggle since I got here. Um, when Elizabeth Alba hired me, she told me HR is crazy, it's a mess, we have a lot of work to do, and she was not wrong. Um, we still have, how many internal investigations going on right now? Three? Anyway, but we've had some really big ones, like that involved our chiefs, our previous chiefs and, and administrative staff, and it has taken a, a ton of time and we're working really, really hard to combat that. And on creating a culture where people want to be here and they want to do things correctly. You know, um, that we just don't accept doing things wrong. That everybody makes mistakes, but when you make a mistake, you correct course and you don't do that anymore, you know? And that wasn't something that was happening before. And then the skeletons, I call the skeletons, the public records requests and transparency. I do know where the skeletons are buried because everything gets paid for in one way or another. So a lot of times when people have questions about things that have happened in the past with the city or a program that was in place for the city, it ends up with finance digging through things that we may have paid for five years, more than five years ago or something, um, to figure out how a, a program was working. And so when we get some of those requests for information, it takes quite a while to dig through some of those old things, because the only record we may have of it still is a six-year-old uh, payment voucher that we made. So um, then bad faith information requests, the reason I put this up there is we all know there's been a lot of public comments about things and we've gotten a ton of records requests about particular types of purchases or you know, supposed FBI investigations or, you know, whatever. And it, it has been a huge time sap. Um, and we are required to respond to those records. But at this point so far, the actors that are out there that are requesting some of these things obviously have an agenda to try to prove that the city has done something wrong. No one has been able to provide anything to us to this point to show that the city has done something wrong. So at, you know, we're, I'm really hoping that now that this audit is over and once we get through the next audit period, that some of these will go away, because it has taken a lot of time for us to address the people who are kind of on the witch hunt to find the thing. Um, I think that every staff member for the city of Sunnyside shows up every day wanting to do the absolute best job that they can. And so all of the rules and regulations and personal policy manual, everything is put in place to support staff in, in doing things correctly. Um, but lately, people have been looking at some of those things from the opposite way as if they think that city staff wake up in the morning and want to defraud people or steal or, or you know, do things poorly or provide awful services or poison people's water or whatever. Um, and so they'll look at some of those things from that angle. Well, what can they get away with? And it takes a lot of time for us to go through and show them that nothing bad actually happened, but that's how they're looking at it. And so that's just, um, it's just time consuming. Any questions?
Go ahead.
Is, is there a way to bring forward what the city has spent in the past with public requests so that way the residents see, hey, this isn't free, you know, it's costing, you know, time from staff and, you know, you know, just bring it up, bring it forward and, and, and providing that information.
I mean, I, yeah, no, I, there's, cause everything that I do is like, if uh, if you look at things like public notices, public hearings, hearing examiner costs. Um, I mean, between two projects, I think I spent ten thousand dollars just in noticing alone. So that's um, noticing and, and a hearing examiner's time. So I, yeah, I'd be happy to show that stuff.
The, you know, Jackie tracks every public record and we, we do try to charge cost recovery for those. But we have to set those amounts within our fee schedule. And so it depends on what kind of records we provide. And it does not capture the true cost of the amount of hours that it takes for people to track down records or to research things or, and, and to provide that information. I wish that we had a way right now to actually track that. Um, we haven't been tracking those exact specific costs outside of maybe Jackie has within her own department. But as far as the other departments that are going and gathering records, like the, for the courts, we had some huge requests that went years back. And I believe Vanessa spent eighty hours working on these two gigantic public records requests.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'll get you in just a second, Miss Frau. So one thing that I noticed was interesting is when people want a record request or they require or demand that the city do something, they honestly don't care about the cost. I had one individual who was complaining about um, cities apparent misuse of funds demanded an investigation. I said, do you understand what this would cost? The investigation into this apparent misuse of funds would cost more than the misuse of funds. He says, I don't care, it would be worth it, it's necessary. So on one hand, he's upset about the use of funds. On the other hand, he doesn't care what it costs. So I've run into that several times where people are contradicting themselves. Um, they're willing to spend a hundred thousand dollars over ten thousand dollars uh, where they don't understand. And yet, yes, I would like to be able to hand them a, you know, this is, this is what it costs for these record requests in this period of time. Ms. Frau, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think uh, that's kind of the first idea that, uh, that came to mind when, when Deputy Mayor um, uh, mentioned um, uh, kinda doing like a cost benefit analysis or not, the non-benefit actually um, in terms of spending. Um, but I, I, I think some, a, a lot of the pushback that I have seen over time, not necessarily here, but in, in, in other, in other workspaces, it's that, you know, people will say, well, it is my right to request and um, you know, going through it, like you just mentioned, um, is going to be worth whatever money we put forth. There are some instances where um, um, uh, and I don't know if, if this would work here, but um, sometimes I have seen like public requests go away or information requests that are tedious, cut, go away when we do invite people for a con- a conversation and an explanation of how things, um, whatever it is they're requesting, whatever those questions are. And I have seen, I have seen many instances of that, you know, of those, of those, of that approach, getting rid of some of these things and not actually having to go through hours and hours and maybe a conversation would, would help. But I don't know if, if.
Jackie does reach out to people when she doesn't have clarification. But one of those, when I say bad faith information requests, there are people out there, which is one of the settlements we recently had that purposely do things to try to get a settlement out of the city. And so Jackie can talk about the example that we had recently. But basically, I, I, I mean, I, I can say it or you can say it, but they requested, she requested more information on what they wanted. And they never got back to her, but they still took us to court.
They did.
And we don't do resolutions for, what was it?
So he was requesting resolutions for the ordinances that were passed to modify our code. But we don't pass resolutions approving ordinances. And so in his request, I provided the ordinances, but he took us to court because we didn't provide the resolutions, but we don't have resolutions that.
And when she attempted to tell him to have that conversation with him, he just didn't respond saying that, oh, okay, I understand you don't have resolutions. And so he was able to take us to court and say that Jackie never said that we don't have resolutions or that we did not provide the document.
When I respond, when I responded to his request, it was, here are the responsive records I have for your request. Which would only be the ordinances.
Right.
I, I didn't.
But she could say the words, we don't have resolutions for that.
And that is.
Oh.
Why, that is why a judge was able to listen to his case.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
I think the problem is, once somebody makes a public records request, we're required to fill it. So even if we have a conversation with them, we would need them to respond in writing, saying that they're recanning that request, but most people don't do that. They're doing it to try and get money.
Yeah.
People are making fraudulent requests.
Yeah, and it would take like that additional step to say, you know, we've had the discussion, I, we both, you know, are in agreeance that this fulfills this public records request and we are gonna be closing it by said day if we don't hear back from you. Do y'all also provide deadlines like to this individual? Like maybe if we had said, you know, we would have added that language and, you know, we, we'll close it by this day if we don't hear back from you. Maybe that also, you know, el- el- eliminate some of the, the liability.
Provide deadlines or, um, I think with this one, I mean, I think it was a few hours after the time that I had told him. Um, and yeah, we always provide deadlines where we communicate with them. I've had pretty good um, history with a lot of the requesters. If it's a big one, I'll say, look, this is what I can do, like, please let me know. Is it, can I? I work with them and they're very helpful most of the time. And we narrow it down and it's a lot less work.
But when they're good faith efforts, especially when it's really information that somebody wants, that's public information. And they want it for the point of having that information, absolutely, they work with us.
Yeah.
We have to keep in mind that there are certain individuals out there, and not all of them live in Sunnyside, in fact, quite a few of them don't, that actually make a living by suing cities.
Period. That's their job.
And so they're not gonna back down on their public information requests. In fact, they hope that we fail at it so that they have another reason to take us to court. And they want these settlements and they're coming after a city. It's not just Sunnyside they're coming at, they're grabbing every opportunity they can. And uh, those individuals exist and we have to deal with them.
And there are softwares that um, I had, Elizabeth and I were working on getting something in place um, for records requests. If someone has already requested a report from chief or something that we've already responded to for one requister, that system would recognize that that report was already requested and they send it to automatically to that requister and say, hey, does this look like the report you're looking for? Or it'll just automatically say that. Um, and a lot of the things um, would, we would be working on is like records management, again, making a lot of the documents, paper copies into digital records. So that these requesters would just be able to get the records themselves. By typing in financial report, twenty twenty, whatever it is, the system would search for what it, the requister, what it thinks the requister is asking for.
I personally think that would be a great investment, but I can't remember what the price point was on some of the ones you guys looked at.
Um, one of them was fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, that was the low one or the high one?
That was the high one. Um, the other one was like nine, yeah.
But which, like budget dust, isn't really that much for the amount of time that it could save if we were actually to put those hours together, so.
And the hard, one of the biggest parts of records requests is redacting or finding exemptions to withhold um, documents if they're not releasable. Um, again, a system like this would redact things it thinks like date of birth, or it would recognize that this is an address, this is a phone number and it would automatically do that for us. So again, that's save us time.
As AI can be our. Just, to put it in perspective, the police department employs about one and a half to, to one and a quarter employees just dedicated public records requests.
We automatically go and fall into that. Um, we are required to report to J-Lark our records requests because there's Vanessa doing records requests. Uh, Vicky, I don't know who else is helping you. You said half.
Evidence, they, they have to redact. So anytime you request body cam footage, we charge about a, a dollar a minute, a dollar, two dollars a minute? I can't remember what the, what it is, but we took the.
It's the schedule I don't remember.
We took the highest wage of our evidence tech, divided that, what their wage was per minute, and you get charged that per minute fee. If you request a twenty-minute video, we take that per minute fee times it by twenty and that's what your cost is gonna be to get that video, because someone has to sit there and watch it the whole time. And if you, and if the officer picks up a driver's license, we have to redact the driver's license. If they say certain things over the air, it has to be, the audio has to be redacted.
But even that amount, the permanent amount, doesn't cover the whole cost, because if somebody requests twenty minutes, it doesn't only take them twenty minutes to do it. They review it, they watch the whole thing, and then they have to redact it. But we also have to be able to justify how much we're charging per state law. And so it's really hard to find a good way to do that.
The easiest way is, it's a twenty-minute video, we charge per minute. So that's how we came up with that number. But yeah, she's right. I mean, it's probably twice that. So.
That's all I had. If anybody has anything else for me, I'll pass to Dennis.
Other questions for Ms. Warner? Ms. Hart?
I, I just appreciate the fact that you explained skeletons. Because I know I caught a lot of, a lot of heat about using the word skeletons, but it's true. There are things that are just there that are painfully.
Unfortunately, finance is usually the department that does know about things, because everything costs money.
Right.
Yeah. Counselor Hart made headlines on CNN. Oh, oh, no, wait, no, they just say, I can my hell.
For saying skeletons? You know, you just don't know the power of words.
As a former reporter, I, you know, you, being a former reporter, I laugh about that one, cause.
It is funny, but it's true. I know where the skeletons are buried too, guys. We could have conversations, man.
Does Dennis have anything to report?
Oh, you don't?
Oh, yeah, I do.
Yeah, you do.
Trying to rush it along, yeah. I will, I will make this as quick as possible.
The mayor's counting.
I'm watching that clock. As you all have kinda heard, IT's been here now, almost two years now. So we kinda picked up a hot potato, grabbed it and, and we've been going. When we first got here, the, the priority was put out the big fires. That's what we've been doing. And over the last year, we've been trying to secure our borders, basically, is what's going on. The firewalls, the internet, the emails, bringing all that stuff up to date and everything else like that. A lot of that stuff was in place, but not kept up to date. So we're kinda driving around with old gear and stuff like that. So we've been doing all that stuff. The priority for this year and going forward is gonna be uh, more of the security and stuff like that. So like security, the, the insurance, the WCIA uh, wants us to do with. They've got a lot of rules and regulations and stuff like that. A lot of suggestions on, you know, everybody does this, 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 and this, and where are you at? So we're trying to get us in line with that. One, to make sure we're more secure, but two, also to help our ratings or our insurance.
One, to make sure we're more secure, but two, also to help our ratings or our insurance, hopefully our insurance uh, costs will drop down a little bit also. Don't believe it, but IT stuff, you know, affects your insurance costs that way too. Uh, we're also looking for the requirements for the CGIS as far as, you know, securing the laptops that the officers use and all that other stuff for security that way, encrypting the drives and making sure it's, it's using the right uh, security that way. We also do uh, security for the end users and y'all. The duo, which is the dual authentication uh, factors and stuff like that. Also for email phishing and stuff, so we try to help educate the users on, hey, it looks like it's coming from the mayor right now and he wants five more, you know, gift certificate.
Okay, and I wanna comment on that, that started a couple of years ago and I was getting calls from council members today, and first it was coming from my city email account address. And so that was corrected, the most recent one came from some made up Gmail account, and I wanna promise everybody here and anybody whoever for posterity sake listens to this, I will under no circumstances at any time send out an email asking for money, gift certificates, or financial help in any way, shape, or form from any of you. So please rest assured, if you see anything like that, it's junk, okay?
I was on my way to Safeway already to get
Where are you now?
Yeah.
No fishing.
You would not believe the tricks that, and everything else that they can use trying to get somebody to do it, and with AI, with what's coming out now, I mean, uh, a computer can generate somebody and make it sound just like you, you know, just like that, and you, you actually think you're talking to somebody, so it, it's scary. A uh, IT's landscape is changing so fast and it's so technical right now, it, it's a scary field to sit in and, and work in, alright? So, one, our security, along with the computers, right, getting us up to Windows eleven and all that other stuff, keeping us that way. We are also working at updating our computers and stuff like that that the end users are using. A lot of them have just been kept in place as long as it was turning on and running, going for it, it's like the end of life, the three to five year old computers, we changed out thirty computers last year, we're looking at doing another round this year to try to get our computers updated, so, you know, you're not sitting around waiting so long for it, it can handle all the new software and everything antivirus and all that other stuff on there. So we're looking at that. Uh, last thing we're starting to work on now is, is now that we've got the perimeter secured, we're looking at how can we better the infrastructure. Alright, as far as the point to points, as far as the network connections, going out to the different wells, going out to the different buildings, the requirements that it got, we mentioned earlier about the police department. Five years ago, they were doing just basic email and spilling and looking at the requests, now they've got everything from the cameras in the cars, the cameras that they're wearing. You know, e- everything's recording it and all that digital information has gotta go somewhere, well, what could handle it five years ago? Really kind of struggling right now to keep that stuff going, so now at this timeframe, we've got to bring all that stuff up to date and get that going right. That's what we're working on. Of course, that's also we're working on that, that's also in a, in conjunction with what we're doing now, doing uh, tickets and everything else to, to help end users and stuff. I mean, I showed up here this morning at uh, eight o'clock. I got four different requests for help just as I walked in the door, I mean, I'm not even going to my office to do anything, yeah, Trevor's asking for help, Jacqueline's asking for help. I got people, uh, jail's asking for help, it's like, oh Dennis, you're here, we can't go anywhere. I mean, there's only two of us, we are, we are struggling so hard, but anywhere we go, it's like, oh, we know you're busy, but can you help me with this, oh, we know you're busy, can you help me with that, or such and such is looking for you. So we do all that stuff, the cell phones, I mean, we're trying to get all that updated, getting us all on a single setup and a single account, so we're all doing the same thing. Projects to get thrown at us, like Trevor was mentioning earlier about trying to get all the planning stuff into one deal, you know, and, and just it's just a gambit of stuff, there, I can go on for hours and hours and hours, but that's what we're doing now, it's like I said, we're trying to make sure our security is up to date, trying to get more of the connectivity locked in and upgraded and stuff like that. And uh, trying to move forward, then we, ah, anything we can. Any questions? Sorry, I speak quick, but I'm a little on the
That's, that's fine, any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
So I, I appreciate uh, Mr. Knight, I, I had a conversation with him a few weeks back and then, and, you know, right now, I know he's, he's trying to rush it, but he, he is doing a good job, he's doing a great job, his department, you know, he explained a lot of stuff that he, they planned and it makes sense now, right? So I just wanna appreciate his, his, his hard work. Thank you.
And without the hard work that he does, we don't wanna hear the word rent somewhere.
No, there's, there's a couple of words like that that I didn't wanna bring, in, in, we can be compromised and not even know it. Li- literally, this computer here could be compromised, taken over everything, and think about what happens that way. Next thing you know, all the records for all the payments that have gone on, all the information, the personal information and everything, they could have all that, and then think about the, the effects of what happens then. Now, you've gotta start doing security, or not security, but the uh, the credit checks and all that other stuff for all these people, if you had to do it for the whole town, oh my gosh, and sending out notices, I mean, you think a ten thousand dollar deal just to do for one building, try to email everybody that's ever lived in Sunnyside that you've had their information on, whether they live here now or don't. Sending out information to that and paying for two years of life lock for them. I mean, there, there's, yeah, when you go down that road.
Or try shutting it off for twenty-four hours.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Please, ouch.
We know how important it is.
And that, that took multiple agencies just to get us back up and running again, it's not, I mean, you, you don't realize how many fingers are involved trying, just to make your phones work, just to make your computers work. It's, it's a lot a lot of moving pieces, a lot of stuff that has to happen, just, and IT is magic, right?
Oh, absolutely.
When it works.
You can just do it a minute too, right?
If it wasn't, if it wasn't for IT, we wouldn't have pizza today.
That's right. So.
Okay, that's, any other questions?
Just thinking of your goals going forward though, you've, you've talked about security, but what other kinds of goals do you have, maybe as far as we've talked a little bit about hiring, there's places where we need to hire and that sort of thing. In your department, I know earlier there was, in the budget, there had been a, a position open, you needed a, an extra person. Are you still in that position?
Yes, we are definitely in that position. Uh, right now, if you look at staffing, just compared to other places, we are at a tenth of what other places are normally, I mean, help desk right now is either fifty to seventy-five persons per one help desk. We have three hundred people here that we support, so that's just four right there. You've got myself and Jafed, two system administrators, you don't have the network administrator, you know, and stuff like that. We, we are very understaffed, and, and again, that's why we can't we can't catch our head above water right now, so yes, staffing is a very big issue that we really do need to address. And I, I was trying to know, everybody said it, so I didn't really wanna beat a dead horse or anything like that, but please, thank you very much for bringing that up, but yes, that is very important.
What it seems like to me is that we uh, need to aggressively figure out ways to increase revenue um, from either traditional and or non-traditional ways. Um, I got thinking about donations as one of the city's sources of income, you know, um, nonprofit organizations are always looking for people to leave them you know, funding in their will. It's really tempting to start thinking along those lines, you know, would you be willing to consider the city of Sunnyside in your, in your will? Very generous donation. Um, but yeah, we, we do need to increase revenues, at the same time, we do not wanna put this huge burden on the members of the community. I know one of the things that really helped us uh, during twenty twenty was the implementation of this destination sales tax on online orders. Um, everybody was shopping online and our revenues were looking pretty good then, because of that, that was unanticipated or unplanned for in, in your real conservative budgeting. Um, that was, that was something I was grateful to see, I wasn't grateful to pay it, but at the same time, I knew that well, my wife and daughter were paying it, I could not believe the amount of money that was spent on Amazon that year. And I, you know, we're just one small family, so imagine the, these trucks that are going around nonstop has really helped our revenue, but we need to look at other ways to increase the city's revenue, cause we do need these people in these positions to do these jobs, because our staff is working really lean and mean and they're getting exhausted, so.
And we have, as far as IT, we have actually tried to look at trying to get help, you guys have mentioned uh, the community colleges and the job, well, for uh, job reach out and stuff like that, we've tried that, we've actually tried to have to come this way, the problem kind of is, is the amount of information that we see and stuff that we see, so it's trying to say, well, you can do this job, but you can't do this, but you can do this, but you can't do this, kind of makes it hard to do. You, you can only do part of it and stuff like that, cause you really don't wanna open them up to too much stuff. And if you do start training somebody within three months, six months, they've got enough stuff, and then somebody's like, well, okay, Yakima's paying this much money for the the, the job that they're doing. There you go, well, I just trained them, I, I spent, you know, our time bringing them up to speed, now they're gone, you know.
Police department has had as well.
Yeah.
Get somebody all online and ready to go and they move to Pasco.
Yeah, the investment in that is, is, it, it costs itself too, so.
Talk about that.
Okay, uh, I think Jackie's got a couple of things she wants to bring up.
We discussed a little bit about records management in the clerk's office, uh, transferring over our paper records into electronic records. That's what we're doing, um, I would like to, in the past, we've hired like part-time work, workers just to scan and file our documents and so towards the end of the year now, since the Secretary of State grants are already closed, um, later this year, we'll look into applying for grants for that. Um, and then we discussed public records, request softwares that would make records requests and just accessing records easier for staff and the public. Also website, updating the website, um, and then hopefully, I don't, I think there's softwares for contracts and tracking that. I also am going to start, I'm, now that I have a little bit more time, I am gonna be working closer with the staff liaisons for the boards and commissions to standardize our agendas, minutes, recordings, and notices that go out, um, and then um the rules subcommittee to discuss putting rules of procedures or bylaws in place for boards and commissions the last time they met. And so if they need any help or need me to draft anything uh, if any of the samples that I've already sent, um, just let me know, but that would be one of the things that I would like to work on with the boards and commissions.
Okay, questions for the clerk?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would love to see something like that, uh, if you could prepare something for the rules committee, um, that'd be awesome.
Okay, so I'll just pick the one that I think would be most fitting for our city and then out of the samples that I already sent, and then if it's not one that you want, just let me know.
Sounds good, we've got, we've got plenty to read over and I think you probably have your favorites by now. So we all need to do, have more to read, right? Alright, so as, go ahead. Chief, did you wanna report? I'm sorry, I just jumped right over you.
I'll, I'll be as quick as I can, I know it's been a long day, I know we were fine on being out of here a couple hours ago, so, um, right now, our, our fleet is something that we've worked hard on, especially once we've gone to the Enterprise Rental Service, in the uh, time that I've worked for this police department, it's always been, uh, oh, our cars are all breaking down and we went out and bought seven at a time. There's been no, okay, let's get four or five a year, long-term plan, so that we're replacing vehicles before they're in the shop all the time, or they're costing more than they're worth to maintain and keep on the road. Um, staffing is a big one, uh, we've got seven openings in the Patrol Division. Six of uh, people are in training, so that's eleven people off the road, however, three of those within the next two months, hopefully will be out on the road. Um, so that'll help, two, uh, one's in the academy, started last week, and one uh, is waiting to go. Uh, we have two openings in the jail and two in dispatch, we're actively working on filling the two dispatch spots and we just need to have a test for uh, the jail, we also have a test coming up for patrol, we have tw- over twenty applicants. About twenty, for those seven positions, so that's
Oh, wow.
Our, our biggest thing that we're trying to do and look forward into the future, because of staffing is an issue, it's an issue in police departments all across the country, is uh, technology. So if we can have really good technology that maybe acts as an officer, or, or takes the place of one, maybe two, um, it just increases our eyes and ears. Um, same thing with building uh, relationships with people in the community so that they aren't afraid to come talk to us, so when there is a crime, that's one of our biggest things, is finding people willing to talk or become witnesses. Uh, that's probably our biggest issue, so we can take that right back to the Cinco de Mayo incident, when you had a hundred and fifty people standing around and no one wanted to talk to us, or, or no one did. So, um, so equipment is a big one, and I just wanna let everybody know, I'm going out of town this weekend, I'll be gone Monday. I, I don't think I'll make it back for council, and Trevor's going to be the acting city manager for the weekend. So, if anything comes up after probably Thursday after work, I'm gonna drive to Seattle, fly out Friday morning, he'll be be the guy. So, that's all I have, sorry, I was quick.
Okay, thank, thank you, sir. I know I got a comment from a member of the public a few years ago as well, was complaining that we didn't have enough police officers on the road, and he says, you know, if I was in charge, we'd have police officers hired tomorrow, I said, you actually have to get them to apply, and that's always been our struggle, we, we, council has approved these, and I would like to say we've always approved these positions, but we haven't. Um, but we have these positions that are approved and budgeted for by council, council's a hundred percent in support of of having these, these new officers hired, and then we sit there and wait for people to apply. And then when they do apply, they need to take a test, because we don't want just anybody and everybody handed a gun and a badge and then turned loose on the streets of Sunnyside. And then, of course, they have to go through the academy and get um, get some on-the-job training as well while they're here, so it takes a while. And members of the public don't always understand that, they want to see these officers hired on the road tomorrow and crime drop, you know, the day after tomorrow at the very latest. And it's not always possible, and that's one of our jobs, to have to try to explain that to people who don't always want to, don't always wanna hear that. But um, it has been an ongoing problem, and I think we're making some progress. Also with the vehicles, yeah, we do have a history of running our vehicles absolutely into dust and then being shocked and disappointed when they spend all the time in the shop. But yeah, when, when we didn't have take-home vehicles, these vehicles were running all the time. One shift would end, the next shift to jump in, and off they'd go again. So that causes extra wear and tear on vehicles, um, you get a car with fifty thousand miles, it's kind of like a normal car with two hundred and fifty thousand miles, cause it's been running so much. So we, in the last couple of years, have changed our approach to emergency vehicles, and we've got a program through Enterprise where we get vehicles a little more frequently and that comes to us equipped and ready to go, and when we're done with it, we give it back, or we decide to keep it, or whatever the case may be. But it has vastly improved our situation, we have a history of not saving up the funds. Obviously, there's always an emergency, right, you get money saved for a car, there's an emergency for something else. And this way, we're absolutely staying on top of getting newer and better vehicles, our officers are in better shape, better equipped. So that's something that I'm pretty pleased to be able to participate in, so. So, council, we've kind of discussed our priorities as we went in our questions. And I don't know if there's any more that anybody wants to bring up. Um, but as I look at over this, of course, I made it very clear this morning already that I have to be out and about here fairly soon and try to earn my keep. And I'm looking at a lot of glassy-eyed stares after these really long meetings. Any objection to absorbing this information and then continuing this meeting at a later date to where we can talk about our vision and council objectives as a result of what we've talked about here today.
I agree.
Okay.
Y'all don't wanna pull a double?
No, not today, um, I graduated college a long time ago.
Could we just add it to the April meeting, because it is going to lead into any changes that we make in the ARPA funding.
Well, and I was gonna suggest that, because when we continue a meeting, and we do need to have a date. Um, that is part of the requirement, so um, is there any objection to adding that to the agenda for the April first meeting?
No.
That is good.
No, the only, the only thing I was gonna say, maybe would we need more time? Do you think? Now we're gonna have, now we're gonna have the
Well, the April the first Correct, the April first meeting.
Okay.
No, okay.
Let's keep in mind too, that the April first meeting is a separate standalone meeting, it's not before the regular meeting, it's not our study session. This is a, a night for that meeting alone, so we're not forced to be finished before six thirty to start the regular uh, council business meeting.
Yeah, correct.
So that does allow us a little bit more, a little more time to move forward, but we may need all three hours that we're allowed for that meeting to uh, cover all the material.
Maybe exchanging the judge and meeting Vanessa out.
But we could do
I think we could get, um, we potentially could get Vanessa at next week's um, meeting. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I'll, I'll touch base with her.
So you mean our next regular council meeting?
Yeah, but at the study session prior, so that she can sort of discuss the priorities with the court. I'm not sure about the judge's availability on such short notice, but I, I can find out.
If, if that's possible, I think it's a good idea.
Alright, well, we'll see if that shows up on the agenda for Monday night or not, and uh, alright, so if there's no objection, council meeting is adjourned, thank you everybody for your patience and your willingness to spend an entire Monday with this group, um, especially for staff, for all of your preparation, um, your reports have all been very helpful, so.